Councilmember Phil Seth.
Here.
Mayor Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah.
Seven present.
Great, thank you so much. We have a couple of items in action tonight, but first we have our agenda changes, oral communications and consent. So on agenda changes, additions and deletions, if you would like to propose anything, please raise your hand. And I have one I'd like to propose. So I'm going to propose that we switch items eight and seven. Eight is 2353 Webster, an individual application. And to put it before number seven, which is the public hearing of an ordinance for EV charging and parking rules. Is there a second for that?
Second, again.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Koo. It seems there's a fair bit of public interest in this, and I think would behoove us to move it up even if just by an hour and a half or so, tentatively to 8:15. Councilmember Koo.
You said it all. Thank you so much for considering that.
Sure. And if there are any comments on this motion, Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you so much, Mayor Fine. I'd just like to state in general, I'm not a fan of moving things around, but in this instance, because we haven't received any public comment that I'm aware of on item seven, I'm comfortable with doing it.
Fair enough. Anything else? Okay, so per our practice, I'm going to start with Councilmember Cormac for the votes, and then we will roll down that list. So voting to move item eight before item seven, Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Phil Seth.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Tanaka, I think you're on mute.
Oh, I said yes, could you not hear me?
Now we did, thank you. Okay, so that passes unanimously. Item number eight will be heard before item number seven. Any other agenda changes, additions or deletions?
I might, Mr. Mayor, just repeat that for, I see Mr. Morton also just joined online, so he may have missed the conversation. Jack, if I could just reiterate that council just voted to move item eight to precede item seven, so it will be heard at 8:15 PM approximately.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, thank you all for that. Let's now move to oral communications, where members of the public may speak to any item not on the agenda. And if a city clerk would please help our members of the public provide their comments.
Any member of the public wish to speak on any item that is not on the agenda? Please raise your hand. If you're using a telephone, hit star nine. We have one speaker, Richard Guinario. Richard, go ahead, you have two minutes. You may have to unmute from your end, Richard.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, first, I want to say, thank you guys for having me. I appreciate the opportunity. I have a, can you guys see me, by the way? No? First, this is a letter to the city council, or a message to the city council. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, Robert and Karen Januario. They own a property in the, in City of Palo Alto. It's a multifamily apartment house. And here it goes. The following pertains to a fire that occurred in the early morning hours today on Matadero Avenue, and to the overall public safety concerns in the City of Palo Alto. We, Robert and Karen Januario, are the owners of a multifamily dwelling and carport affected by the fire. The fire appears to have started on the side of the detached carport, and it is now a total loss. Two of our tenants' cars and all their belongings stored in the carport and storage area were also destroyed by the fire. We want to take this opportunity to thank our local firefighters for their hasty response. The fire crew successfully put out the fire and stopped it from spreading to the homes of our tenants, and thankfully, no one was hurt. We had the opportunity to speak with the fire captain of the first arriving engine company, who informed us that we were lucky that the second arriving engine, Engine 62, was in service last night. Or else his crew would have likely had issues getting water supply from a hydrant in time, allowing the fire to possibly spread out of control into the adjacent apartment structure. When asked why Engine 62 would ever be out of service, the captain informed us that the city has been browning out or taking the engine out of service during many of the hours of the day, and noted that more and more Palo Alto fire companies have been browned out and downstaffed in recent years. As property owners and landlords providing homes for Palo Alto citizens, we find this shocking, upsetting and unacceptable. After further research, we've learned that over the past 10 years, the city has cut two engines, one ambulance, and 33% of its fire department staff, all while call volume has been doubled. We're baffled as to why the government entity who provides itself in providing a safe environment to the citizens willingly make such drastic cuts to public safety. It's unsettling that one of the wealthiest suburban cities in Silicon Valley could be so cheap that it puts its citizens' lives at risk. Members of the city council respectfully ask that you do better. Staff the engines, staff the ambulances, the truck and stations before lives are lost due to budget concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Our next speaker is Rebecca Eisenberg. Rebecca, go ahead, you have two minutes.
Thanks so much. Hey, I wasn't going to speak on this issue, but then the very compelling message that just came up, that was just stated by Richard, made me feel obligated to do so. I just wanted to correct a misunderstanding stated by the mayor to me earlier today. In a conversation, he mentioned that business taxes couldn't be used to fund housing. And I want to clarify that a business tax could be, or the general fund could be used and can be used and is used in every other city that has one, which is every other city that has the amount of businesses that we do can be like housing. And hello, can be used for things of housing and fire and public safety and healthcare and childcare and and public services and art centers and libraries and children's theaters. And all the other budget cuts that were made by the city council could have been saved if we had a business tax on the biggest employers and biggest companies, like commercial developers. And to clarify, a business tax can and should exempt all small businesses, all retail, all restaurants, and if you like, all medium-sized businesses. It can start at something like 500 employees and $500 million of revenue. If it even has a minimum floor of $1 billion in revenue, it could tax Palantir, HP, Tesla, and all the other huge employers that use our services, including the fire department, and don't pay for them. Might be too late for this year, but I hope you'll consider, continue to consider it so that the residents don't have to pay for the full recovery. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any other member of the public who wishes to speak on anything not on the agenda, please raise your hand or hit star nine on your phone. Mayor Fine, there's no other raised hands.
Okay, thank you to you both for your comments, and thank you to Clerk Minor for helping them provide those comments. We next move to the consent calendar, items one through five. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on the consent calendar?
Any members who wish to speak on anything on the consent calendar, please raise your hand or dial star nine. Mayor Fine, there are no raised hands.
Okay, thank you all. We're now open for motions or comments, no votes or pulling items on the consent calendar. So to my colleagues, if you'd please hit your hand in Zoom, and I'll recognize you. Councilmember Koo, I think.
Yes, I'd like to register a no vote on item five, please.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Tanaka?
No on number two.
Thank you. Okay, and I actually should mention, I'll get you in in just a moment, Mr. Vice Mayor. Number five is quasi-judicial, so if you have anything disclosed, please do so. I did speak with members of the school next door who had some issues with the noise levels of the car wash, but nothing that's not in the record. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to move consent.
Thank you. So we have a motion to move consent. Is there a second? By Councilmember Niss. Any other comments on this? Okay, let's please vote on the motion to move the consent calendar. Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Okay, the consent calendar passes unanimously.
Mayor Fine, I will also vote yes.
I'm really sorry, you're at the
No worries.
beginning of the line. Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for the reminder. Now, the consent calendar passes unanimously with Councilmember Koo voting no on five, Councilmember Tanaka voting no on number two. Okay, Mr. Chikata, the floor is yours.
Mayor Fine, I hate to interrupt again, but perhaps Councilmembers Koo and Tanaka would like to speak to their no votes.
You remind me again. Thank you. Councilmembers Koo and Tanaka, sorry for skipping that.
Greg, you want to go first?
Sure. So for number two, we're just coming off one of the roughest budget cycles in probably the city's history. And, you know, this contract's for $1.75 million. And it's for electric cable, underground electric cable. And I understand staff here wants to not edit out, because according to the report, it's the only one that meets our specs, manufacturing and requirements. You know, I did a quick Google search, there's actually a lot of cables out there, maybe not manufactured the same exact way, but if they provide the same kind of quality, to me, it would seem that we should try to, not to sole source it, because right now it seems like we are locked into one supplier. We should at least try to get a couple. And, and I think manufacturing process may be different between different cable providers, but as long as they provide the same kind of quality, I think that should be okay. So for me, I think, given the kind of really tough budget situation that we're in, we really should be trying to use our taxpayer dollars more wisely. I think that I would have liked to seen this bid out to multiple people. And I think as long as they meet the requirements of durability, compatibility, all that, I think that's fine. Making it, making all the vendors have the same exact manufacturing process, to me, seems a little bit extreme. I think, you know, if you do that, you would pretty much lock yourself into just one supplier. So I just think we have to be a little more efficient, a little bit more aggressive on the procurement process. I realize, you know, we're a little bit short-staffed on the city side, so maybe that's another reason, but it's a lot of money, it's $1.75 million. And we have a lot of needs. I mean, the other thing is, you know, we are in a recession right now, and I would have also liked to seen some sort of discount based off of, based off of what we were paying before. And it seemed like we're a pretty big customer for them as well, so. Anyway, so there's multiple reasons why I just couldn't support this.
Thank you. And Councilmember Koo, you're no vote on number five.
It's just that's quasi-judicial, and I think that it should be something that's discussed in public, a hearing to include the public. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, the floor is now yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. See if we can queue up a very brief few slides. Just a few items to share with the community this evening. Next slide, please. Just a quick update, perhaps everything update these days is related to COVID-19 coronavirus. And to highlight this week, upcoming county pop-up testing that will be here in Palo Alto this Friday. So we're now part of a countywide rotation that the county has been implementing throughout different areas around Santa Clara County. And the next couple of opportunities that will be here in town will be this Friday, and then two weeks later, also on Friday. This time, it will be a little different from the last pop-up testing we had in Palo Alto, in that it will be at the Art Center, 1313 Newell Road. And this will be done by appointment only. And as we understand the county's new model, they indicate that they are able to move just as many people through the system with this appointment set up and avoid the need for people to wait in line. And here in Palo Alto, we had some waits over an hour, and I've heard in other parts of the county, well over, and to the point of multiple hours. So given that, this appointment system should be well-received. Now, we also have heard, though, that the appointments are not available until just a few days before the scheduled pop-up itself. So we'll get the word out as soon as that information is available. But definitely for anyone in the community interested in having COVID testing, that this Friday and two weeks later will be great opportunities to do that. Next slide, please. And then, as we look at ongoing community conversations around where we are in working through the pandemic at a community level, really much of the recent discussion has been around the need to wear face coverings. And as the council is well-aware, and I believe the community as well, that we have a local order, as well as countywide order, to wear face coverings at all time in public. And in particular, while we've had some questions around when exercising or cycling around town, certainly encourage it. And so simply like to reinforce with all members of the community, our interest and everyone's interest in wearing face coverings when in public. With that, next slide, please. And again, as council knows, this evening, we'll be discussing our Summer Streets program in more detail. But definitely would like to use this opportunity to ask the community once again to come out and support local restaurants, retail stores, both in person as well as through takeout. The response to date has been really positive. But once again, recognize that these are fractions of pre-COVID levels. And so as a result, certainly encourage our community to support local businesses and businesses to support local businesses as well. And really reinforce that we are all in this together. Next slide, please. And finally, if this does not look familiar to you, don't be embarrassed, because this just went up today. And in fact, this is not a view from our office window, but could have been. In the temporary art installation just put in in King Plaza, I will try to not butcher pronunciation, but I will try nonetheless. The Bukolik Labyrinth by Paz de la Calzada, made of repurposed synthetic turf from Cumberley Soccer Field prior to its last turf renovation. So this is entirely repurposed, and I believe there's a story and some narration guide that will be available to members of the public that happen by and are able to enjoy it. Although, as you can see, social distancing will need to be part of how to navigate the labyrinth. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe that's all I have for our manager's update this week.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. A labyrinth seems like an appropriate use of time when we're trying to social distance. Going to open it up to my colleagues. I saw hands from councilmembers Niss, Cormac and Tanaka.
So, a couple of things, Ed. There've been troubling reports from the county and certainly in the press about testing, about the reported testing, how much testing has actually not been tested. It would be helpful if somebody would let us know with their visits into the city, are people getting their tests returned or not? I know that the person who was responsible for testing spoke to the Board of Supervisors maybe a week and a half ago, indicating that they no longer were going to be tracking the testing. So that was very troubling. Second issue, I was doing the dish on Sunday, which is difficult after not doing it for a while, I must say. And as you probably know, if you've done it, you walk up, and then it's one way, it goes counterclockwise. But as we came back down, we noticed that very few people had masks on. Said something to the guards who were there, and they said masks are not required, according to the county, when you're exercising. So, as I recall, we have said, you don't have to wear a mask when you're walking the dog or something similar, but we do suggest that you have them on at any other time. So you might check for the consistency, because I was kind of surprised when everybody coming up the hill had no mask on, and we did. So if you could find out about that, I'd appreciate it. Or maybe Molly could also look into it, because she was the one who opined before how to interpret it.
Well, thanks. I think I could just generally respond and confirm that exercising is considered non-mandatory activity. But that said, again, encouraged. We certainly want to get the word out that all members of the community are encouraged to wear face coverings even when exercising. It may require you to choose a different type of face covering that works based on the aerobic activity you're at, act. And I will certainly attest to that firsthand, that different types work better when you're exercising than others, but certainly encourage all members of the community to wear face coverings at all time.
Thanks.
Thank you both. And I've certainly heard from a number of residents over the past week worried about non-mask wearing. So if we can put a little more emphasis on that in our communications and anyone listening tonight, the rough rule is, if you're outside, please do wear a mask. It's helpful to all of us. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Still on the testing, I'm happy to see the county is coming back. Thank you for all that helpful detail. For fun, I'm not sure it was for fun, but as a test, I went through to schedule an appointment. And everyone should know, if you haven't tried before, that there are many questions that are asked, and they are all required before you can get to appointment, including who is your healthcare provider, did you try to get a, you know, a test with them? So it's not as simple as like, okay, here, let me just click on the time I want. So I just want to alert people that it takes a little bit of time, and you will need to provide some information, which is different from the way we handled it before. Just, just an alert to everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. And do we have a link for the county's testing this coming Friday?
Not yet. It has not been made available to us, but we will push that out as soon as it's available.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, so I just want to thank the city manager for bringing up the topic about masks. A couple, I guess about a week or so ago, I held office hours on this topic, and several people mentioned that they saw city workers, like utility workers or just city workers in general, who, I guess we're on duty, but we're not wearing masks. And I don't know if the city manager can respond to that, but that would be great.
Well, then certainly, as it is for the rest of the public, that we do require it when they are certainly in contact, but there may be moments at which it's just not possible to keep it on at all times, but we'll reinforce it with our employees.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues here? Okay, seeing none, let's please move on to our action calendar. So our first item is item five, a selection of applicants to interview for one position on the Human Relations Commission and two positions on the Public Art Commission. Does staff have a presentation, or is it just write to us?
It's right to you. Clerk's office doesn't have a presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. So for members of the public, there is a staff report listing the applicants and their applications, as well as the openings. Councilmember Cormac.
Did you want to go to the public, Mr. Mayor?
For the members of the public, and then we'll come back for comments, questions, or motions. So if you'd like to speak on this item, please do raise your hand in Zoom, and the clerk will help you provide comment.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on the board and commission interviews, please raise your hand or dial star nine on your phone. Mayor Fine, there are no hands up.
Okay, so we return to council and Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. My first question is for the clerk. Could you please refresh our memory as to the requirements for both the Human Relations Commission and the Public Art Commission? I believe last time we did this, the packet included the information about whether or not someone had to be a resident or needed to have, you know, some particular skills, experience, interest or expertise.
I'm going to move this over to Jessica Bredle, the Assistant City Clerk, as she's the one who does most of the board and commission recruitments in there.
Great, thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Council, can you hear me okay?
Yeah. A little low.
Little low, okay. Let me adjust my audio one second.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Okay, wonderful. Okay, so for the Parks and Recreation Commission, it's composed of seven members, actually, five, or no, seven members. Five, I'm looking at the wrong board, excuse me, we're looking at the Public Art Commission. I apologize. So, I am looking at. Let's move on to the Human Relations Commission for a moment. This one is composed of now five members. They are for three-year terms, and they are residents of the City of Palo Alto.
Okay, great, thank you.
The Public Art Commission, give me one second, I can look this up for you. Pardon me. So I'm looking at qualifications, and I can read this qualification here. They shall be members of the, let's see, professional visual artists, professional visual arts educators, scholars, arts collectors, who authorities and skills are known and respected in the community and whenever feasible, who have demonstrated an interest in and have participated in the arts program of the city. They are not required to be residents.
Wonderful. Thank you so much to the clerk's office. Is the mayor ready for motions?
Yes.
Certainly. Well, then I move that we interview all seven applicants for the Human Relations Commission. And for the Public Art Commission, I move that we interview the following four applicants. Marilyn Gottlieb Roberts, Sinia Shen, Harriet Stern and Nia Taylor.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor to interview everybody from the HRC. And if I read that correctly, those were numbers two, four, five and seven from the
Yes, from page two of, yes, on the list of the Public Art Commission.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. Councilmember Cormac, if you wish to speak to your motion.
Certainly, thank you. Our recent practice has been to just interview everyone, but I'm not sure that that's the best use of everyone's time. And as we work to improve the application process and work with our board and commission members, I think it's appropriate for us to do a slightly more diligent screen in terms of qualifications. And that's why it was so helpful to have the clerk read that. So I think it's appropriate, given all that's going on with the Human Relations Commission, for everyone to be interviewed. And but with the Public Art Commission, I think there, it's important that they, that they demonstrate the qualifications that the clerk listed, and also that they at least be in the, in the Northern California area. So that was my choice of those four.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss.
That's it. And I agree with that. I might have simply actually voted for the incumbents on the Public Art Commission, because I think they've done well. But I'm glad to see it expanded, and it'll be interesting to hear what the next two have to say. But also to emphasize that we have had public art commissioners who have come from a variety of different cities that are not too far from us, but have made a big difference as they've been on the commission.
Thank you. Any other comments from my council colleagues? Please hit your hand in Zoom. Councilmember Koo.
Actually, I think there's some interesting applicants for the Public Art Commission as well. And so just limiting it to four, I don't get a chance to actually meet some of the others that is listed here. And and certainly I think that there's different art backgrounds from everybody and reading the applications, they were very interesting. So limiting it just kind of takes away our opportunities to see who else is, what other abilities are out there. So I would like to actually make a substitute motion. And that is to interview everyone that has applied for both the Human Relations Commission as well as the Public Art Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Koo. So your motion is to interview everybody who applied for HRC and correct?
Yes, please. If I get a second.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor. Councilmember Koo, if you'd like to speak to us.
I think I already did. Thank you.
And Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, it's a little hard to react on the fly. You've been looking at the fourth left out. I think if we have conditions of applications, we should try to do this upfront before people apply. It has been our practice kind of in good faith if people apply to go ahead and interview them. And I really would want to hear more about why specific people were eliminated. I think, I think again, having really clear criteria and applying those consistently is important. I do think we should interview people and, you know, try to avoid a situation where it's not based on criteria or it was more political, like we would be voting here before we interview people on who we're even going to consider. So, you know, I, I see like one of the applicants looks like they live pretty far away. Interested in why they applied, maybe, maybe they travel here, I don't know. We have people who commute pretty far as well to come to our commission meetings. So just given, given the lack of information, I guess my preference would be if we want to start to eliminate interviews would be to to make the criteria more stringent and have that upfront when people apply.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
Yeah, I'll just say that I don't, I don't think this was on the fly. We, we had this information a week ago and, you know, in comparing it, you know, the applications of the seven public for the Public Art Commission, I think, you know, there's some pretty clear distinction between those who have a professional and scholarly interest in it. And those who may be members of the community who have a more general interest. So I don't think it was. I, I, I think it's consistent with the description we have. I understand that others may prefer to interview everyone. That's fine. As we move forward, I think we'll hopefully be able to make it clear to people through the new application process, how important it is to, you know, be prepared to answer the questions, both written and in person.
Thank you. And Councilmember Ness.
So mine is a reflection on how we've done this through the years. There was a time when we were very individualistic when we chose those who were going to be interviewed. And then as time has gone on, we've usually just interviewed anyone who applied. I think using some some criteria for deciding who we will interview is important. Because as I recall, the last time we spent three or four hours interviewing everyone who applied. So I don't object to us getting more granular in how we choose this. But realize that it's, it's always difficult to select some out and, and leave others behind. So that's not our intention. Our intention was to choose those who seem to be the most interested and have the best background in that particular, in that particular area.
Thank you, Councilmember. I don't see any other hand. There we go, Councilmember Tanaka.
Um, I'm just looking at the staff report. Do we get Catherine's application? Because I'm just doing a search on it. I don't see it in here, but maybe I'm not searching correctly.
We'll have to look in the report. I'm not sure.
Okay. I see everyone else's, but not hers. So, you know, so I would, okay, so in general, I like the idea of, you know, trying to use our time wisely. So I think, I think that's interviewing everyone, I think makes sense. Although, you know, I looked at the three that were eliminated. So Catherine, there's no application, so I don't have a basis. It's kind of hard to know, but if she couldn't turn her application. Now, if it's, we forgot to put the application in the packet, that's one thing. But if she just didn't turn it in, then I think I would agree that she should probably not be considered. The other two. Sorry.
It's in my packet.
Okay, it's not on the online packet. Maybe it's in the paper packet.
It's on the online packet. It's
It's just not in the, I think, quite the
It may not have been one because we had issues there. Where a lot of were duplicated, but it's, it's in the online packet, second to last application. And in case it helps, it seems like some of the names she's not Catherine.
Okay. Okay, well, anyways, I did look at the other two. So I can't really come around Catherine because I haven't seen it, but I did look at the other two and I mean, the other two are actually our residents here in our city. One of them actually looks like they have pretty good experience in art, so I don't, I'm not quite sure why. I guess it's all kind of everyone's judgment call, but I'm inclined to talk to those other two as well. And Catherine, maybe as well. I don't know. I haven't, I haven't. I'm still looking for application. But anyways, that's, that's my feeling. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Tanaka. So agreed with my colleagues, Councilmember Ness and Cormac, a couple thoughts come to mind here. First of all, council does have the ability to pick and choose who it wants to, to interview. And in my time on council, we've generally not exercised that. That said, we've had many meetings of interviews where they go for many, many hours and they are expensive, both for council, for staff, and for the folks who interview and thank them all for, for applying. But looking at the packets, most of the time you can kind of see who's gonna, gonna filter through. And I think it's important for us to be honest with applicants, judicious with our time, and then also apply some of those criteria which are laid out in the municipal code for what kind of qualifications or residency we need in these various boards and commissions. If you kind of relate this to hiring, hiring is hard. And sometimes there are hard discussions to be had. I do want to thank everybody who has applied for a role in the city of Palo Alto. It's all hard work. It's all really important. But to Councilmember Cormac's point on the PAC, in this case, I think there are some applicants who we should not consider because of residency far, far away and others who, who may not have the requisite skills necessary for this commission. So I'll be supporting the motion. Councilmember Koo, I see your hand.
I'm sorry, that might have been from a previous time. Thank you.
Any other comments on the substitute motion before we vote? All right, let's please vote on the substitute motion to interview all applicants for both. Councilmember Philsef.
No.
Council, I'm a no. Councilmember Ness? I think you're on mute.
No.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes, and I'd like to thank all the applicants for applying.
Understood. Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka?
I'm gonna vote no.
Okay. Councilmember Cormac?
No.
Vice Mayor DuBois?
Yes.
So the substitute motion fails on a five to vote with Vice Mayor DuBois and Councilmember Koo voting yes and the other five voting no. Okay, we now return to the main motion. Are there any comments or questions on this one? Or other amendments? Okay, I'm going to suggest that we take our vote. Going with the order, I'm the first vote, so I vote yes on this motion. Councilmember Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
No.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Philsef?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Okay, that passes on a six to one vote with Councilmember Koo dissenting. I believe that concludes item five A. Thank you very much. As Councilmember Koo mentioned, thank you to all of the applicants. Please do keep the city of Palo Alto in mind for future openings. Okay, we're seventeen minutes ahead of schedule, but I think that's okay. Let's please move on to item five B and up discussion on Plan Bay Area 2050 and the regional housing needs allocation process.
Let me ask our Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services, Rachel Turner, Tanner, excuse me, to report for staff.
Great, thank you, Ms. Shata. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. And I'm going to share my screen with the presentation. I have several up tonight, so sorry, while I try to see if I have the right one. And can everyone see that presentation?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Great. Uh oh.
Now you've got presenter screen up.
How about that?
Perfect.
Excellent, wonderful. Thank you all for the time this evening to discuss a very important topic. I know last week when Mr. Lee was here, you guys were able to discuss the Plan Bay Area 2050. And so even though that presentation was fairly short, we did have the motion to have a letter from the city of Palo Alto sent to MTC and ABAG regarding Plan Bay Area, so that was received by staff at MTC ABAG. And again, that deadline for the comments on Plan Bay Area on the comment here currently is on this Wednesday, the 12th. And so tonight's going to focus primarily on the regional housing needs allocation, better known as RENA to many of us. And we have a draft letter, which is attachment A in the packet, about the methodology options that MTC ABAG are considering and how to allocate the regional housing needs to different jurisdictions within the Greater Bay Area, which is about 101 jurisdictions. So that's what we'll focus on this evening. But if you do have questions about Plan Bay Area, we can also cover those. And I do want to note that I have Amy, Amy French, who is our chief planning official, as well as Rebecca Atkinson, one of our planners, who's in our long range planning team, also here and available for questions and want to give them great thanks for the work they did. Tremendous work on preparing the staff report and the analysis and letters for this evening. So what is the regional housing needs allocation? It is the process by which the state of California allocates housing unit production across the state, region by region. And it focuses on total housing production by region as well as housing offered at a variety of income and affordability levels. In the next slide, we'll see the four income categories that are used. And it uses a methodology that's created by regional representatives. For our region, that is made up of the MTC ABAG organization, the Metropolitan Transportation Organization, and the Association of Bay Area Governments. They are required to do Plan Bay Area, which is the long range plan for thirty years, as well as the regional housing needs allocation. So the regional housing needs allocation begins with the regional housing needs determination, or sorry, with the regional housing need determination. And in the most recent determination, which was issued on June ninth of 2020, the Bay Area was allocated 400,000 units, 441,176 units to be exact, but we'll say 440 probably throughout the presentation. And the ABAG Board, the Executive Board, which is the body that can appeal this, declined to appeal that determination. The deadline for their appeal was on July 10th. And you can see in the chart here what our regional allocation, how it shakes out by income category. So you can see 25% is to the very low income category, 14% to low, 16% to moderate, and 42% to above moderate household incomes. And you can see that the extremely low households are included in the very low household percentage. So overall, over the next, next cycle, which lasts from 2022 until 2030, this is the housing that's projected to be needed by, in the Bay Area by income. And this shows Palo Alto's progress in the current RENA cycle. Right now, we're in the fifth cycle and planning for the sixth. The fifth, fifth cycle ends 2023. So the city received allocation of 1,988 housing units. We planned for 2,187 housing units in our housing element. And we have issued to date 554 building permits for housing units by, at the end of 2019. So we can see how much we've done in this part of 2020 to add to that number. But you can see here how the region has done when it comes to performing during the cycle. You can see each cycle going back to 1999 and the total need of that cycle, the permits that were issued. Again, we're measured on how many building permits are issued for housing units, not necessarily if they're built or occupied. Permits issued, and then you can also see how those are broken down by the different income groups. And so in the current cycle, 187,000 housing units. And so far, we're about 65% of the way there as the Bay Area. And you can see the big increase of the 440,000 housing units over the last cycle. This is again Palo Alto's progress specifically towards our cycle. And so you can see at the far right columns, the total and the remaining. So of the total building permits issued, that 554 and remaining 1,434 housing units, building permits for housing units. And you can see how they are distributed across the different income groups, what we were allocated in that RENA allocation column, and then each year, how much we have produced. So we have quite a bit of a ways to go in regards to our production. But one positive note is that we have done sufficient in our above moderate rate housing production such that for the SB 35 streamlining process, a project must have 50% or more affordable housing units to be subject to SB 35 streamlining. And that was just, we, we were under that ruling before from the state, and that was just reissued today, that we remain at that level of affordability needed for SB 35 to apply to a project. So moving on to talk about the RENA methodology, it's going to be a method by which ABAG will distribute that 440,000 housing units amongst 101 Bay Area jurisdictions. It provides the total number of units again, as well as affordability and how we, how it really, one of the other ways that it impacts us is through our housing element. And so in order to have a certified housing element, we have to show where those units in our city could be located. And that means we might have to change our zoning or do other adjustments to allow those units to be built in Palo Alto. So for example, with the 1,900 units that we were assigned in the previous cycle, our housing element was updated to show, well, where could those units go? And as you saw, we had about 21,000 or 2100 that we had provided housing opportunity sites for and had identified those sites. So following the issuance of the RENA, we're going to update our housing element accordingly. So when it comes to the Housing Methodology Committee, this is a committee that has elected officials, staff from cities and stakeholder groups who are convened last fall to really be thinking about, focusing on, well, what is the methodology by which ABAG is going to divide up the housing to the different parts of the, of the region? And they're not likely to use some of the previous methodologies. That's what they're considering. And there has been no final decisions today about what the methodology is going to be, but they're working towards having that released this fall. There are three primary ways that they are thinking about how to allocate housing, three, three primary methodologies. The first methodology is the factor based with income shift. And that's where total units are allocated to a jurisdiction. And then an income shift factor is used to distribute that total among four income categories. And we'll talk about this more in examples in the next slide. And this approach was the one that was used in the previous RENA cycle in the Bay Area. So it's the most like the past cycles. Under the bottom up approach, factors and weights are used to identify the number of units distributed amongst and within income categories. And then the sum of these number of units in each category equals a jurisdiction's allocation. And this is a new approach that was not used previously. And again, I'll go into it in more detail. Took me a while to wrap my head around this one. So if you feel the same, please do. Took me a while to wrap my head around this one. So if you feel the same, um, please do ask questions. And additionally, in the Ju- recent July meeting, the HMC talked about, um, using different, uh, growth projections as the baseline. So how are they gonna start out what they see as the baseline, which could use factors and weights, could use the bottom up, could use Plan Bay Area, and so they're discussing that as well. And then one thing that we just learned this morning, they released the agenda for the Housing Methodology Committee meeting for this week, which is later this week, which is why we'd like to get that letter, um, uh, addressed tonight. Um, is that in their meeting, they're gonna be talking about a couple other ways that they may allocate it. Because we haven't been able to hear that staff report and really dig into that, we will be attending, um, staff will be attending the meeting. They're all online, um, on the thirteenth this week, and we will certainly report back what we learn about the other ways they're thinking of, um, allocating the, the, the housing. Um, so again, a, a constantly changing topic, and we're always learning more, uh, more things. So I'm gonna go a little bit more into those two, first two, the, um, factor-based total allocation with income shift and the bottom-up approach. So with the factor-based approach, there are ten factors that are here on the slide, number one through ten, that the housing methodology looked at as considering, well, might these be the ways that we think about a jurisdiction? Um, the qualities, the, um, characteristics of that jurisdiction, and how we wanna allocate all of these four hundred and forty thousand units, um, across the Bay Area. So you can see, for example, in the Housing Jobs Crescent, um, methodology, fifty percent of those four hundred and forty thousand units would be allocated to areas with access to high opportunity. And that's a definition that the state has helped create. Forty percent would go to areas based on roughly jobs, but that really is four subfactors. The proximity to jobs via transit, jobs housing balance, jobs housing fit, and future jobs, and then ten percent to transit. And these represent three of the top methodologies that were under consideration in the spring and maintain, um, continue to be discussed by the Housing Methodology Committee. And you can see here how that might look. So the first row here, where it says Palo Alto hypothetical baseline allocation, if you just took the percent increase of housing, so four hundred and forty thousand units, that's sixteen percent increase. If we just evenly applied that sixteen percent growth across the entire Bay Area, then Palo Alto would have four thousand four hundred and seventy-five housing units allocated to it through RENA. However, when you look at it with factors and weights, instead of just giving everybody the same, um, percentage, you see that Palo Alto's increase would be a twenty-one percent increase in our housing units, twenty-two percent, and then twenty-four percent. And you can see the corresponding housing units there and the difference from that baseline. So, um, again, the first is a baseline, just saying if the growth was just kind of distributed across the Bay Area, and then if you use the factors and weights, how does that change the allocate units allocated to, um, that jurisdiction? So then income shift. So the income shift is an example of how, um, when you have, let's say, the jobs housing crescent that we just saw in the previous slide, so two slides ago. So if you think about jobs housing crescent, let's say the Housing Methodology Committee selected that as the way that we want to allocate our, um, allocate the housing units, then you can apply what's called an income shift. And so what the income shift does is it essentially takes, um, so zero percent over here on the right would be if you just distributed the different units of housing based on what a jurisdiction currently has. So this hypothetical example is a high-opportunity city like Palo Alto that has high incomes. So you can see most of our housing units would be this yellow color, which is above moderate income units, because that's kind of the makeup, uh, largely of Palo Alto, whereas the affordable housing units are a lesser portion of our allocation. But if you apply a hundred percent income shift here in the middle, that would bring the entire Bay Area closer together. And so again, it kind of says, well, let's try to get everybody, the, the cities that have more low-income population and higher income kind of meet in the middle and have more equity in that regard. And so you can see that our number of units that are in the above moderate goes down, but the number of units in the other income categories goes up. And then as you move further to left, again, it kind of goes in the furthest left, you see that we have most of our housing units would be under very low income units. And so right now, what the housing methodology has been considering is something between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty, um, income shift in order again to try to promote more equity, um, and ensure that folks who are of lower incomes households have access to areas with high opportunity, um, in them, such as Palo Alto and other cities. So now I'm gonna move to a totally other way. So again, that was the, that was one method, and this method is a method that was used previously with the RENA. And so even though, um, there are some different options, it was our way that we had our previous allocation determined. So a di- different approach that other cities have used in the, or other regions rather have used in the state is a multi-factor approach. In this case, it's a three-factor bottom-up approach, is what they call it. And so in the three-factor bottom-up approach, what you have is instead of looking at what are the characteristics, um, of each kind of, you know, the jobs, the equity, access opportunity, instead you break up the affordable units and the market rate units. And so here you have the, um, moderate, um, units, as well as, um, the, the mod- the above moderate and the moderate units are, are under the market rate category. And then you have the affordable units here. And so you say, okay, here's the affordable units. We wanna put, of the affordable units in the entire region, we wanna put forty percent in access to high-opportunity areas, forty percent in jobs housing fit, and twenty percent based on proximity to transit to get to jobs. Of the market rate units, we wanna put half of them in places that have good job proximity via auto, good job proximity via transit would be thirty percent, and twenty percent via jobs housing balance. And so once you divide it up to all those locations that have those characteristics, you add that up, and then you have the allocation for that jurisdiction. So compared to the previous one, where we were able to create tables and say, okay, under each of these three models, here's what it would look like with Palo Alto, this is a little bit less predictable, and they are working on updating their tools to help communities understand more how the three-factor bottom-up would work. But it is not the same again as before, and it's a little less predictable how it would shake out for each community, but we will continue to use that tool as it develops and try to get more information regarding that. The next example is a hypothetical housing unit allocation. And so this really is showing kind of, um, how the baseline that they start with can really, really impact what they, what ends up happening to our RENA allocation. And so this is showing Palo Alto, which right now in two twenty nineteen had twenty-seven thousand housing units and households. And so if they start with an allocation that's based on our twenty nineteen household share, we get about forty-four hundred units. If they use the jobs housing crescent, which we talked about, can, combined with the twenty nineteen housing household baseline, about fifty-seven hundred units. The bottom-up three-factor approach with the twenty nineteen household baseline, again, about fifty-six hundred. So these are somewhat comparable to each other. But as you can see, as we go further to the right, and they use, um, different, uh, baselines. So in this case, it's scaled to the regional housing needs determination. In this case, it's scaled to be aligned with the tw- the twenty fifty blueprint. Um, in this case, on the furthest right, it's, um, twenty nineteen blueprint baseline. And so it's one of the reasons why we as staff are really thinking about, um, the twenty nineteen household baseline, basically starting with where we actually are in terms of households as the point to go, take us into the future. It creates a much stronger bridge between where we are now and where we need to go. Um, and as you can see, the numbers of fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand, eleven thousand housing units would be a tremendous increase to Palo Alto and to other cities as well, and it seems a little bit out of scale with what might be reasonably expected. In terms of the next steps, we're gonna continue to monitor and update you all on the Housing Methodology Committee discussion. Staff, do you attend those? And ABAG and, and the Housing Methodology Committee are gonna have their proposed RENA methodology to HCD this fall. Again, they're using the seasons, because I think the dates continue to change for them, as they do for many, many public processes that are underway. In spring twenty twenty-one, we are looking for the release of the draft RENA to local jurisdictions, which would show what we as Palo Alto might expect for our allocation. And then there's appeals time, finalizing those numbers. And then in twenty twenty-three, we would, well, sorry, so from twenty twenty-one through the January twenty twenty-three, we can work to update our housing element in accordance with that final RENA. So we have recommendations in the draft letter that is attached, which is to support the twenty nineteen existing households as the baseline methodology, and to support the income shift up to one hundred and fifty percent, as we, um, showed in those slides. And then just a smidgen I wanna touch on Plan Bay Area, because I know we didn't maybe have a, a long discussion on that last week. It's a long-range regional plan for the nine-county Bay Area that state law requires. It combines with the regional transportation plan and the sustainable community strategy, which are required in state law. And MTC and ABAG are required to periodic, periodically update that plan. It focuses on four key issues: economy, environment, housing, and transportation, and identifies policies, strategies, investments for the region. It does not change any local land use authority or authorize anything, uh, in particular to happen in those jurisdictions. And again, it's a very long-range plan. This is looking from now until twenty fifty. And the vision for is ensure a more affordable, connected, diverse, healthy, and vibrant Bay Area for everyone. And as you can see, here are some of the key milestones of both Plan Bay Area and RENA. They are parallel processes, but they are distinct processes. Um, but they certainly connect, and depending on what the Methodology Committee decides about how the blueprint and which the draft blueprint is, like, the name for the Plan Bay Area. So if you're like, what's the blueprint? It's, it's synonymous with the Plan Bay Area. Um, so you can see that if we were, for example, to, if the housing methodology were to choose the draft blueprint numbers as the baseline to start out with, with the allocation, that was where that chart had this, the bars being very, very high on the right side in terms of our allocation. Um, so again, intertwined processes, but distinct processes. And final Plan Bay Area is supposed to be published next fall. Um, whereas again, the RENA will be next winter, and then we have until January twenty twenty-three to update our housing elements. So to close, I just wanna share with you the staff recommendation, which is to, um, have discussion on the regional housing needs allocation process, and then submit a comment letter to ABAG and MTC's Housing Methodology Committee reflecting the city council initial comments regarding RENA and the methodology options that are under consideration. Again, um, Jonathan's not here, but I am here this evening, and our staff planner Rebecca Atkinson is here also to help answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna suggest we go to members of the public who wish to speak on this item, and then we'll come back to council.
Any members of the public that wish to speak on this item on the RENA, please raise your hand or dial star nine on your phone. At this time, I have one speaker, Greg Schmidt. Greg, go ahead. You may need to unmute from your side. There you go. You have two minutes.
Very much. There's an important relationship between Plan Bay Area and the RENA allocation process. Both decisions are made by the same organizations working together, using jobs as a key driving factor. Together, they cooperate to calculate the RENA numbers. But there's a notable difference in the recent Plan Bay Area, the sudden appearance of super districts. Look at super district number nine, based in West Santa Clara County. It contains parts of five cities: Palo Alto, Mountain View, Santa Clara, Milpitas, and San Jose. It is projected to be the concentrated center of jobs growth in the Bay Area through twenty fifty. Yet this super district has no direct connection to a single responsible government authority. The impacts of the RENA allocation derived from these jobs numbers can be monumental. Palo Alto, for example, would be responsible for direct and indirect subsidies up to five hundred million dollars. How can citizens engage in discussions about these requirements? Certainly, they have no role in determining super district numbers. Is this just a process used by non-elected regional bodies to make and impose key decisions on local governments? This question would seem to deserve a city legal clarification about how citizens can participate in decisions so important to their future. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Our next speaker is Rebecca Eisenberg. Rebecca, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. Um, city council, we have the wealthiest city in California here. We have the biggest concentration of billionaires on earth. Yet we have the worst record in the state in housing production. And instead of taking this meeting to discuss what emergency measures we can take to increase housing, we know we're obligated to provide morally and legally, no matter what measure you use to count it up. You take this meeting again to, to decide how hard and in which way, what way to fight again against Sacramento. You complain about the concentration of jobs located in Palo Alto and the dysfunctional, extremely high ratio between jobs and residents of four to one, as if your intentional policies had nothing to do with it. We actively encourage, you actively encourage employers to come here to Palo Alto through your system of providing tax subsidies and all sorts of breaks, and definitely zero taxation to these employers and to the commercial developers that make so much money from building the huge offices that exist here. And despite so many, so many opportunities for you to A, put an immediate halt to office space, or B, tax these developers and employers, you decline to do so. This jobs-to-residence ratio is due to your policy decisions, which you or we can change. We can change this with a business tax that will actually make existing tax subsidies and discounts meaningful. We can change this by putting a halt to office space. We could change this by building housing. Thank you for considering.
Thank you, Rebecca. Our next speaker is a phone-in caller with the last three digits on the phone of six zero three. You may have to unmute from your end. There you go.
Hello? Yes, this is, uh, Terry Holzmer. Um, as you know, I'm writing, I'm talking about Plan Bay Area twenty fifty and its associated regional arena allocation. This really truly affects our entire community. I would hope and urge the council to look at two things tonight. Number one, send a comprehensive, detailed analysis letter to MTC's Housing Methodology Committee complaining of the total lack of community involvement and of a public process that involves the cities and their representatives, meaning you, in this methodology process. I'm sure most Palo Altons have never even heard of MTC or ABAG, or how their planning process affects thousands of residents. Number two, I urge you to review and comment tonight on the letter to city council that was just sent to you today and signed by several concerned citizens, including our former vice mayor Greg Schmidt, requesting specifically that our city attorney give her opinion on the validity of the methodology process that's before us today. And if any step should be taken to ensure that a public process is involved. As the letter outlines, questions need to be raised by this council. For example, how do citizens really engage in these, uh, these specifics? Certainly, there is no role right now for us to talk about the super district numbers. Why aren't citizens involved? Are the super districts that they mentioned merely the process for non-elected regional bodies to make and impose decisions on local governments? I hope not, because we should be involved, and citizens need to play an active role. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. And our last speaker is Kelsey Baines. Kelsey, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, city council. My name is Kelsey Baines, and I would like to urge you to, uh, shift the framing of this letter to be not about saying this is unattainable, um, or trying to, uh, reduce our responsibility by making our goals as small as we can, um, and instead take responsibility and start saying yes. Uh, I think one of the, the problems in thinking about whether or not these goals are attainable is whether we are really is whether we are really being ambitious and making peace with the fact that all neighborhoods in Palo Alto need to change. And I know this is a hard thing for politicians to sell to people because change is painful. Even a great development that isn't huge and doesn't change things dramatically, people will think about all the bad things that can happen. So what construction noise is going to be? Who's going to move in there? And we think about all the bad things that are going to happen. And we can sometimes say no effectively and avoid that change and then convince ourselves that that was good, that it didn't change. But what we don't think about is, in addition to the pain of something new coming in and that being hard to deal with, there is also pain associated with the absence of change. And that's what we're experiencing in our community is really the pain of absence of young people who are not able to live here, of older people who can't find affordable housing when they need to leave their house. So, or when they need to downsize. So I'm going off on a bit of a rant, but the point here is just to stop the reflexive saying, we can't, we can't, we can't. And instead do a planning process that admits we need to change and brings the community along for that change. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Yvonne Sadowski. Go ahead, you have two minutes.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Yvonne Sadowski. I am a resident of Palo Alto. I'd like to start by saying that it is absolutely no surprise that Palo Alto has no problem meeting their high income housing goals, seeing as the people that would benefit most from them have paid their way to a seat on the city council. Like Rebecca said, it is sickening that corporations are allowed to exploit our city through tax breaks without giving back their due to the community so that we can help others. And finally, the numbers that ABAG or whatever acronym gives us isn't their fault. It's because of a constant lack of activity and lack of willingness to adapt and change to the needs of the area and the future generation. As a soon-to-be college graduate who will in no way be capable of living in a city I love, I'm deeply concerned about the council's pushback on the possibility of meeting these goals and expanding them even further. And as such, I would like to see more housing in Palo Alto. And I believe we do not need any more, any new mansions, single-family homes, or anything of the sort. I'd like to see affordable, low-income housing for everyone in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. And that's our final speaker.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all the speakers. So we now return to council. I'm going to suggest a round or two of comments and questions before motions. And the first hand I see is council memberness. I think you're on mute.
So, so if I could start out with some very general questions. Rachel, are you there somewhere? There you are. We have had housing allocations for years in Palo Alto. Primarily, they involved permitting certain areas. And the permitting was what got us to our numbers. How do you see where we're headed now is different? So is it meaning that through the years, there are often discussions about the, you know, the carrot and the stick? What was going to happen if you didn't meet your allocation? I know Jonathan and I have talked about this a couple of times in another context. But can you address that? And then I have one other question. But is that clear?
Yes, I think council memberness, you're kind of asking what, what is the, are the consequences of meeting or not meeting the RENA target?
And how that difference from how it has been in the past? Because we've dealt with this kind of requirement before. This is somewhat different.
Yeah, I think RENA goes all the way back, I think to the late 60s, I believe. And some would chart that as the beginning of the state's housing crisis, depending on who you speak with. And so in some regards, one might say RENA has not been very effective in helping to prevent the housing crisis. On the other hand, perhaps to your point, we do see trends with more state bills and state proposed legislation that ties to RENA and uses the RENA allocation kind of as that carrot or as that stick. If you meet it, then this. If you don't meet it, then that. Or other things that we see, different ways that certain housing units may be counted in housing elements. Some of it is perhaps more in line with some things that Palo Alto has been doing, such as ADUs, allowing ADUs to be more prominent parts of housing elements, for example, in ways for jurisdictions to meet their allocation. You think SB 35, which was passed in 2017 or assigned into law, I believe, by the governor in 2017, that is the streamlining bill. And that is where, for example, right now, if a project has 50% or more units as affordable housing, then they're subject to a 90-day permit, 90-day review. They're subject to objective standards versus our subjective review process that we have and essentially are streamlined through the permitting process. If we were to fall behind in our above moderate rate housing, then moderate, then market rate housing could also be subject to the same streamlining provisions. That would be a determination that would be made in the future. Again, recently, we were determined to still be subject only to SB 35 for projects that have 50% or more affordable housing. So that's what we have right now, but there may be more consequential bills coming forward and perhaps passing in this cycle or coming legislative cycles.
So, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is that in the past, if you didn't make your goal, whatever that might have been, it, there may have been a discussion about it, it could have been some kind of warning. But I don't recall any of the consequences that involved a fine or something similar. I think one, something like that may have happened in Menlo Park. And that's the only city I can think of that's close by that actually dealt with that. So is what we're dealing with now, do you think it has more real consequences to it? Or I realize I'm asking for your judgment, but I think it's whether or not this feels like it really needs to be done as how a city will actually approach it.
Yes, I, in my professional opinion and just watching the trends, I do think there, there are more consequences with SB 35 and more like it may come. And another really practical consequence is our housing element, which we would need to update and then we need to get certified by the state. And that requires us to identify housing opportunity sites. Where would these X thousands of units in Palo Alto go? What is the zoning that is on those sites that would allow that housing to come into existence? And so that's a very real tangible change to Palo Alto.
Thanks for your presentation. It indicates just how complicated this actually is, though, and how interpretable it is as well. That's probably my five minutes. Thanks.
Thank you, council memberness. If my colleagues would like to comment or question, please raise your hands. Vice Mayor DeBois. Sorry, was I, was I on mute? I may have been. I said, thank you, council memberness, and next up, I think, Vice Mayor.
You weren't on the, sorry. You weren't on mute. I think I was on mute. So I actually, one thing real quick, I wanted to remind my colleagues that we did have an alternate letter that unfortunately wasn't included in the packet this week. But I think it was just emailed out to everybody. I want to say I've attended some staff presentations at other city council meetings and RENA allocations. And they've been working with these alternate methodologies, the top three, and responding to ABAG with data, what is achievable, what's not achievable. Cupertino has been taking these estimates and sketching out what it would take to actually achieve these numbers. And so it feels like we're pretty far behind on coming up to speed and responses. And we really need our staff to get ahead of the process and I think bring these scenarios to council so that we understand what we're being asked to do down the road. So I think we really need to get much more actively engaged, making sure we understand what allocations are feasible. I mean, if you look at these methodologies, the balanced one, quote balanced one, was about 6,500 units, which would be a 25% increase over our 26, 26, 27,000 units currently. That's a pretty big expansion. The Crescent was 15,000 units for Palo Alto. That was a 57% increase. And so we're going to need to see the final numbers, how they're allocated regionally. But it feels like Palo Alto on a, on a percentage basis is probably going to have the largest allocation in the entire Bay Area. You know, we have a legal housing element that we've been working to satisfy. You saw the progress we're making on that. It's been hard and we're talking about triple or 10x the number of units. Instead of council memberness's question about the consequences, I mean, I think these new numbers, depending where we end up, are going to be pretty unattainable. And I think it represents a clear threat to charter cities. I think failure to meet those numbers is going to mean override of local land use. I mean, to be clear, SB 35 would do that. And control of local land use is one, really one of the reasons we have local governments. It's the idea that local representation can understand the local conditions best. And I think it's important to also go back to what the RENA process was originally for. It was to distribute low-income affordable housing equitably among the regions, not have it concentrated in slums. You know, in the 1980s, the Fed stopped funding affordable housing. And since then, the states have provided funding maybe once every 10 years. And so we're getting a large unfunded mandate. You know, we have streamlined our ordinances to try to increase housing, try to decrease costs for builders. And we've had a strong pro-housing majority on council for the last four years. I mean, some would say maybe just a majority, not a strong majority because of differences of how we think about low-income housing and protecting residents that are here. But any way you slice it, we've had a majority. We've made extensive changes to our housing ordinances. We've streamlined, we've added incentive programs. And we're not seeing the housing production. Office construction remains the highest return on investment. And I, you know, council memberness also mentioned carrots and sticks. It feels like we're running out of sticks. And we really need to have to start looking at, I mean, we're running out of carrots. We're really going to have to start looking at sticks if we really expect to see housing production. And what's really changing here is it's, it's not just the city zoning for production. I mean, cities don't build. We have zoned, we have incentivized. You know, the fallacy is in this process that we're going to be expected to have the construction occur. And I have real questions about whether we should willingly participate in a process where we're set up to fail. And that's leading to us relinquishing our rights as a city. So I strongly believe we need to go into this process with our eyes open. We need to understand a potential legal strategy to kind of combat this no-win scenario. I think we should try to get achievable housing allocation. Some of those other allocations that were shown, the shift income, the balance, other things, those we may be able to handle, but we need to really get engaged in this process.
Thank you. I'll note that the alternate letter was actually your letter, Mr. Vice Mayor. It wasn't from staff and it was sent outside of this public meeting and in my view, potentially skirting the brown act. Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak on this item? Council member Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. I do have some questions. I'll just reiterate again, this was an extraordinarily helpful staff report as we discussed last week. And I thank those of you who worked on trying to make it understandable for those of us who don't do this all day, every day. I do have a few questions. And so does my dog, apparently. When will the current cycle conclude? It's not abundantly clear to me from all of these things. So when does the current cycle conclude?
The current RENA cycle, thank you for that question. It is sometimes confusing and I will say different documents sometimes listed at different dates even. Like, is it the middle? Is it the end of 2023? But the current cycle is from 2015 to 2023, which is why our housing element has until January 2023 to get certified.
Okay, and so that's the point at which these, the, in the event we haven't met the assignment, the allocation for that, there will be a potential for things to be approved that the city would not be able to review. Is that it?
Actually, so that would be nice and simple. My understanding is that essentially we would have four years into the next RENA cycle to be on target or to be meeting our different housing production at the different income levels. And so, for example, again, right now, we're not subject to SB 35 for market rate projects. And so four years in to the next cycle, so 2023 to 2027, roughly, we would have to be on pace.
Sorry. There's also an indication that another jurisdiction can appeal RENA allocation. Could you describe that a little bit for us?
That another jurisdiction could appeal a.
Can appeal RENA allocation.
Of their own or of another?
Of another jurisdiction.
I'm going to ask Rebecca Atkinson if she can provide insight into that question. Rebecca, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Yes, I think it's a relatively new provision where another jurisdiction can appeal another, another jurisdiction's allocation. And the process for doing that has not been clearly outlined yet, but that has been established, that's a possibility for this round.
Okay, thank you. The income shifts that you referenced on slide, I'm not sure I have the numbers right. Are those based on AMI? There wasn't any, you know, and is that county-based AMI? What are those percentages based on?
That is a great question. It is, it is based on the household income. And I think we have a chart, I'm just looking for it, that has that. So I can pull that up. And those numbers are, do come from the state when they distribute the RENA? Rebecca, do you know if it's based on the regions? I believe that the AMI in our MSA or if it is a statewide income?
It's my understanding of Santa Clara County.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the same numbers we're used to seeing. That's helpful. On slide 13 in the three-factor bottom-up version, I confess, I'm not quite sure I understand the distinction between the jobs housing fit and the jobs housing balance. Is, is there a way you could explain that to me?
Yes, Rebecca, can you address that question?
Sure, jobs housing fit is more of an equity related. It's the percentage of, you know, people living, you know, what's the affordability level of your area relative to the jobs and incomes that people have? So it's more of like, you know, do you have housing that's available for low-income workers? And how, and what percentage of your housing is available for your high-income workers? And whether or not there's a mismatch? So it's more about availability at different affordabilities for your jobs composition. And the jobs housing balance is, you know, more or less like what we're told, we're used to talking about is with how many jobs do you have relative to how many housing units do you have?
Okay, so fair to say there's some overlap, but the jobs housing fit then is more about like, if you have X amount, X percent of low-income jobs in the city, you should have X amount of low-income housing available? Correct. Okay, all right. So it's like a lens on the balance. Okay, great. That's very helpful. Thank you. That's all the questions I have for this round. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If my colleagues would like to speak on this, please hit your hand in zone. Council member Koo.
So I just wanted to clarify, the alternate, the alternate letter that council member, I mean, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor DeBois and myself and council member Phil Seff submitted was we had some additions into what the staff had recommended and we did send it to the whole council to be distributed with the packet. So I don't, I don't, I would, I would say I'd challenge that because we did submit it early. I would say I'd challenge that because we did submit it early on in order to, uh, to the entire council to be distributed, which may have or may have not. Um, but I did notice that it wasn't here. Um, so I, I did wanna put that out. Um, then I wanted to also say that my understanding, reading the Department of Finance's, um, demographic report, which they put out to, um, to indicate, uh, population growth. It says that there is, um, the growth is strong in the interior counties of the Central Valley and the inland empire, uh, while it remains modest in the Bay Area and slowing to near zero and even negative in most of the coastal counties. Yet, and then we have our COVID situation where there is a lot of people leaving the state. Uh, yet, they refuse to, um, revisit this. Uh, and support the postponement of the Rena and Plan fifty, uh, twenty-fifty for, for a year. Or to even request legislation to do so. Um, has there been an update from, um, A-BAG or HCD in trying to address revisiting all these numbers that, you know, we may not need to have that much building and that there is a need for job recovery. And our transportation plan, even the regional transportation plan is pretty shot at this time. Uh, I, I think some of those matters need to be addressed and not just rush into, um, developing all these methodologies. And also, um, the allocation of housing.
Certainly, I can, I can say that, um, from the information that we've gotten from the state as well as from the regional planning bodies is to continue on with these processes. And in particular, it would require the state to relieve A-BAG and MTC of their requirements in order to stop the Rena process, to stop, um, the Sustainable Community Strategy and other legislation that requires them to go forward with these things. And so it's certainly something that our legislative delegation might take up, um, to consider, but, um, the bodies are not authorized to, to not go forward with the processes.
And how would we go about requesting for, um, to actually move forward and asking the legis, our lobbyists in order to look into legislation to postpone this process?
I would ask Mr. Schada or not familiar with how we go about, um, agendizing items for our legislative delegation.
Well, I, I think that, uh, essentially, Councilmember, what you're suggesting would be new legislation would be to, um, modify the process that's currently codified in state law. And, uh, so typically what would be involved is, uh, finding a legislator that is willing to carry that forward uh, on behalf of the city and perhaps other cities that are similarly situated.
And, um, you know, we haven't really engaged and opened dialogue with other cities who may be feeling the same. And in my, um, in my interaction with other city council members and mayors, there is the, um, concerns about, um, this, this plan rolling out. And I, I, I would, you know, really look into, um, finding out if there is interest in joining together to push forward legis, legislation and finding a, um, a legislator who's willing to carry this forward. I actually think that there might be more than one that, um, that would be willing to do so. On another note, I wanted to ask with the, uh, income shifts that you showed on slide number twelve, why are we using hundred and fifty percent and not hundred and seventy-five percent?
Um, we could support as a city the hundred and seventy-five percent. We were just tracking the latest, um, Housing Methodology Committee discussions and, and those they had, um, kind of favored the one-twenty to one-fifty. And so that's why the letter was saying, well, if it's between one-twenty and one, or one-twenty-five and one-fifty, we would support, you know, one-fifty. But the letter from the city certainly could recommend a higher income shift.
Okay, I see one need. I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Philsef?
Yeah, uh, let me add, before I start, let me ask you, uh, the, the, the mayor, where are we in the process here? How do you see this? How do you see this unfolding here?
Yeah, I, I think we probably have one or two rounds of comments and questions and then a motion on the second letter since we sent the first one last week. I assume we can edit on the fly. Um, hopefully, you know, more strategic direction rather than wordsmithing.
Well, okay, so, so I actually wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about Plan Bay Area. Cause I think, you know, these things are not really separable, uh, entirely from each other. And I think we're doing ourselves a disservice just to focus on, okay, what's our target? What's our, what's our arena housing target for the next cycle without sort of context on it? And, uh, so I spent some time trying to figure out Plan Bay Area to twenty-fifty. And, uh, I, I think some of the work they did is actually really, really good work, actually. I think, uh, I think it's, uh, in, in, in some ways, it's, it's, it, there, there's some of the best work I've seen from one of these regional bodies. I think there's some gaps there too, right? But, um, I wonder, can I, can I, can I get the screen? For a second here? Let me get rid of my stuff here.
We'll see if we can, um, have you share the screen, Jessica, or Darren, can you guys give him the ability to share?
Can everybody see this?
Yep.
This is one of the A-BAG, this is one of the Plan Bay Area slides. This is the, the five challenges. Um, I, uh, so I, I like this quite a bit, but this stuff is, you know, how do we increase section of, of affordable housing? Um, how do we, uh, uh, better address congestion and transovercutting and stuff like that? This is, to me, I think this is the most important part of it. Okay, this is, you know, they, they kind of put this as the appendix of here's some challenge, some questions we haven't answered yet. I actually think this, this is the center, okay? I mean, this is really government's job here, okay, is to, is to, is to tackle this stuff. Okay, you know, how do we close the greenhouse gas emissions gap in a sustainable manner and so forth? I mean, they, they spent a lot of time talking about sort of GDP and, you know, uh, creation of jobs and stuff like that. And that's kind of like Facebook and Salesforce and Cisco's job, okay? I mean, dealing with this stuff is, is kind of our job. So I wish they'd made this the centerpiece instead of the appendix. But they got, they got the right stuff in there. And I think what they're really trying to deal with is a dilemma here. I mean, we got three knobs to turn, okay? One, where do we put jobs? And we want to put jobs in kind of where they are now, uh, cause people would like to expand where they are, but that turns out to be the existing most job-dense and the highest cost areas in the, in the Bay Area. Okay, but we'd like to do that. Second, we'd like to have new housing uh, at all levels near the new jobs, okay? So in order to minimize commutes, minimize emissions and maximize equity, because the way the valley works right now, it's sort of like the rich people get to live close into the jobs and the poor people get pushed out far away. And, you know, you like to, to, to not that, not to be. And the third thing is, you don't want to spend a lot of money if you don't have to on housing subsidies, because nobody wants to spend money. And the problem that we have here that we're grappling with is that I don't think, given the density and the expense and the congestion in the Bay Area right now, I don't think you can have all those three things at once. Okay, I think you can have any two. Okay, but I don't think you can have three. And I think that's why we as a region are fundamentally trying to, are struggling with all this stuff, okay? And, and I think that's where Plan Bay Area struggles too. And to the extent, I mean, I actually think Plan Bay Area as is and Rena are impossible. Okay, but, and, and I think they do too, right? But I think this is the fundamental reason why. So, some stuff though, that I really like in Plan Bay Area, they've done a couple of really important things, right? One is they've actually started trying to put a price tag on these things. And I think that's, you know, that's really the fundamental thing. They're trying to calculate how much it's gonna cost to, to do all the stuff we want to do. And I haven't seen that in a serious way from anybody before, and they're really trying to do it, okay? The second thing they've done, and I think this is really important, is they've really, and they really haven't pulled punches on it. That in terms of housing, the market rate housing and affordable housing really are different things and need different strategies and they really behave fundamentally differently. But you can look at their, and this is one of the key slides, if you've looked through their presentation, it's dependent on the staff report. What they need in order to hit their plan is about two hundred billion, a little over two hundred billion dollars, uh, that they don't have a, uh, uh, that, that nobody's identified a place for. And they're sort of, well, you know, we could have business tax, you know, we could have sales taxes and stuff like that. They need two hundred billion dollars, okay? And furthermore, when you look at housing, actually, they need a lot more than two hundred billion dollars for, uh, all the affordable stuff. And we'll get to that in a second. So here's what I think they fall short on, right? Um, one is I think their projections, you know, they kind of don't pass the smell test, okay? So here's their projection for population growth in Santa Clara County. And the green, uh, in the top is historical and they're projecting basically we get a massive acceleration in population growth. It's sustained for the next thirty-five years. Uh, higher levels of population growth than we've ever seen before in the Bay Area, just in, in the Santa Clara County, despite the fact that it's so expensive here and so forth. And despite the fact that if you look at how population's been changing in the Santa Clara and also in this Craft San Mateo counties, which is similar, you know, it's the rate of, rate of increase has been declining for a decade now. And actually, population in Santa Clara County isn't growing right now, because you've got as many people leaving as you have arriving. The people that are riding want to be paid a lot more than the people that are leaving. And the organic growth is actually very small. So to turn that around and say, okay, we're gonna turn that into a, an unprecedented, never, unprecedented, never seen before uh, increase in population growth, you kind of scratch your head and go, I just don't see that from here. I mean, I realize they got computer models that they're using for this kind of stuff, but they got stakeholders that have different interests and stuff like that too. And it kind of, it, it's kind of hard to see. And the next one is actually similar to that. They're looking at housing production. So this is housing production in the Bay Area. Again, nothing, none of this is Palo Alto-centric yet, okay? You know, in the last thirty years, okay, we've averaged nineteen thousand housing units produced a year. It's actually been declining the last, uh, the last decade, uh, in terms of, this is increase, okay? Uh, the increase has just been slowing down. It was high in the seventies. Uh, uh, so what the, what the Plan Bay Area forecast is, is overnight, we're gonna more than double that housing growth rate and we're gonna sustain it for the next thirty-five years. And it's gonna be at a level that has never been even in the cities, okay? And by the way, remember that half of this growth needs to be affordable housing, which requires subsidies, which we don't have subsidies for. And there's a lot of stuff different today than there were in the seventies, land costs, construction costs, availability of large parcels of land and so forth. And so you look at this chart and you go, I mean, you, your, your mileage may vary, but I look at this chart and I go, you know, I don't, I don't think it's likely we're gonna be able to do that. Okay, and yet, this is where the Bay Area is and, and in, to some extent, the state's targets are coming from stuff like this. I mean, if your sales manager brought you a forecast like this, uh, the first time they did, you'd chew them out, okay? And if they did it again, you'd probably fire them, okay? So, uh, so I think, I think it's unlikely that this can get hit. So let me do a little more here. Let me just talk about affordable housing. So here's what affordable housing costs for the Bay Area and their plan. And God bless them, they told it straight. They need sixty-eight billion just to subsidize the growth in the lowest income category of affordable housing, okay? They need, if you really wanted to solve the affordable housing problem, they need another four hundred billion after that. I mean, that's a lot of money. And they've been upfront about this. They've said, look, zoning change strategies, that works for market rate housing. It doesn't work for affordable housing. Affordable housing, you actually need, need money. Okay? Rena is similar. The last Rena plan said that we need, I mean, the current Rena plan says we need four hundred and forty-one thousand housing units, which fifty-seven percent need to be below median income, okay? Well, the last plan was sixty-odd percent or something like that. The actual permits we issued in Santa Clara County so far without big subsidies is sixteen percent. Okay? Now, the next cycle's coming back and saying fifty-seven percent. Again, where's the money gonna come from? It costs, for Wilton Court, it cost us three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a unit in city subsidies. So if you multiplied four hundred and forty-one thousand by fifty-one, fifty-seven percent by three hundred and seventy thousand a unit, which is pretty similar to the CASA estimate, by the way, you need almost a hundred billion in subsidies to put to, for the mid peninsula to, uh, or for the Bay Area to reach its goal, if you put it in the middle. Now, note, you get much higher achievement on this in lower-cost housing areas. So yeah, Los Altos is, it's seven percent of their housing is BMI, uh, of growth. But Morgan Hill is thirty, thirty percent, and San Jose is nineteen percent. And so when we start looking at Plan Bay Area, here's what Plan Bay Area, and Plan Bay Area makes a crucial assumption. They make the assumption that job growth is gonna be concentrated in the dense, expensive West Bay, okay? Here's their numbers, okay? Here's their plan. And I sort of reorganized it a little bit because they're sort of creative about per capita this and so forth. But they're saying by twenty-fifty, the average commute distance for low-income workers is gonna increase twenty-five percent. They're gonna drive twenty-five percent farther. The average for all workers, plus eight percent. Number of cars on the road commuting, plus thirteen percent. The amount of greenhouse emissions, plus twenty percent, okay? Uh, affordable housing shortage is gonna be worth by about four hundred and fifty thousand units, okay? Is the overall housing plan realistic? No, okay? What's all this gonna cost us that we haven't found ways to pay for? Two hundred and fourteen billion dollars. Okay, so if you look at what they've come up with, and again, I'm not, this is not a pure criticism, okay, right? You got a plan that says, okay, housing's gonna be less affordable, commutes are gonna be longer, more cars on the road, higher emissions. We gotta find two hundred and fourteen billion to pay for it. And by the way, it probably can't be met either, anyway. The MPC folks, they kind of know this. I got a break in a second here. They kind of know this, okay? So they're saying, well, we need to make progress, okay? That's fair, okay? But you gotta look at how much progress versus what is it gonna cost? And they have pushed back and pushed back and pushed back on this. But I think we ought to ask them for another scenario. And say, what does it cost if we actually distributed the jobs around the valley more equitably? And there were more growth where there were lower-cost housing areas like San Jose and Oakland in the East Bay? I'd like to know what that would cost, okay? Compared and what the results would be compared to their current plan. I think as residents of the Bay Area, we're entitled to ask for that, okay? And, you know, skipping a few steps ahead, which I'm not going to here in terms of the letter and so forth. I think we gotta, we gotta ask Plan Bay Area for another scenario. I mean, that, that would be my dream, okay? Cause you know, the one they got-
Go to the next council-
A bunch of changes, okay? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry to run over.
Okay, Councilmember Tanaka, I think you were next.
I didn't, I didn't raise my hand.
Okay. Um, I have a couple questions and comments, and I think we'll go to another round. Um, so if we go to staff slides, five and six, I just wanted to check some numbers.
Mayor Fine, do you want me to share my screen with the-
Yes, please. If we, we can go back to the staff slides.
I think that Councilmember Philsef may need to, there we go.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so one here, if we look in the above moderate category, twenty-fifteen to twenty-twenty-three, on slide five, it says hundred and twenty-six percent. And on slide six, we're at four-twenty out of, uh, five-eighty-seven. What's up with that, I guess?
So this slide five is showing the entire region? So at the very top is the city's number that we have in this cycle, the nineteen eighty-eight. Um, and this is showing for the, the need that's for the entire region in that column.
The city of Palo Alto in the above moderate is doing four hundred and twenty out of five-eighty-seven, which is like seventy-one percent, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, I thought those were comparing the same, same units. Um, do we track permits versus actual building? I mean, one thing that troubles me here is this is tracking permits. And if you followed anything in Palo Alto or other cities, you'll know a lot of stuff is permitted and entitled, but potentially not built or occupied. And so how do our, uh, progress in terms of permitting compare to what's actually built? You know, like in twenty-fifteen, uh, the total was two hundred and eighty-six permitted units. Do we know how many of those were actually built?
I could get those numbers for you. We do track our building permits. We track it through the permit, the building permit being issued, um, as well as through the sign-offs of the inspections, uh, to complete the inspections for the building being complete.
Okay, that, that would be extraordinarily useful. I think, um, I understand permits is kind of the, the unit of measure for some of these processes, but in terms of honesty to ourselves, I, I think we should display that every time. Um, is that possible tonight for these bottom categories for the two-eighty-six to one-oh-seven numbers or is that not-
Ask staff if they can help look that up, um, it'd be- Parse them that way that we need it to be clear, but the other incentive that developers do have as well is that. Um, their permits, their entitlements will expire if they don't begin construction. So there is a built in incentive once. Someone goes through the time and effort to get a permit to actually see it through.
If permits expire, do we deduct those from our Rena reports?
Uh, it's very rare for them to expire. There are extension provisions as well, um, up to one year extension. Um, ask Amy French if she's available, if she's aware of many permits expiring and projects just going away, but we, we would probably have to deduct them from our Rena.
Um, and then I guess just like two, two more broad questions. So one, um, looking at this next Rena cycle. And given some of the new state laws, how will our housing element strategy change? One thing I've been frustrated with, sorry for my funding. Um, one thing I've been frustrated with is, is we do a housing element cycle every couple of years. And it doesn't seem like our housing production actually aligns to that. And. I wonder if that's like accidental, purposeful or mismanaged. I, I mean that with respect. Like what does it mean that, you know, housing element after housing element, we choose sites that don't get developed?
That's certainly a great question. Um, I think one that we will certainly be wrestling with as we look to the future. Um, and the coming housing element development, which will begin really, I mean, we have to get going very soon, actually, um, working with a, a team to do that. One of the thoughts around that, and everyone doesn't subscribe to this school of thought. Is that there is a misalignment between the sites and the zoning that is allowed and the costs and benefits of building housing on that site. And so, um, that the market incentives aren't there for that land owner to either sell the land to someone who wants to build housing. Or to build that housing themselves and to recoup the, the benefits that they would have from that investment. Um, so some might say, well, we would need to change our zoning, um, change different requirements, change different development standards so that there's alignment between. The costs and benefits of developing the housing and what is allowed to be on that site.
So just to re-explain that, what you're potentially saying is. The city may choose a number of sites for the housing element that are submitted to the state and the region, saying, we expect housing to be built here. Um, but the zoning standards for that area. Uh, or the willingness in terms of a political sense of a council to change it to make it actionable and actually developable, developable, uh, just aren't there.
Well, I will put a finer point on it, which is to say, so just practically speaking, and what we will see as we develop our housing element is. You know, we have to identify all the sites where the housing can go and we need to make alignment there. But even if, let's say, it was four thousand housing units that we needed to find spaces for, and we. Followed all the rules that the state set out regarding, you know, what counts and does it count as a housing opportunity site? The amount of money that it requires to turn that parcel into housing and the zoning that's there may still be misaligned. The cost could just be too great. And so it could still not come to fruition.
Okay, thank you. I see this, uh, the assistant city manager, I have one last brief question and. Maybe it's to planning, maybe it's to the city manager, maybe it's to my colleagues. Um, but like, what is an achievable housing goal if we can't even hit three hundred a year, which is in our comp plan? Um, I mean, like compel it to do better than we're doing today, or is this just like, we gave it our best and like, we failed and. Now we're going complaining about it. Like, is, is that our best or what, what's, what's realizable here?
Um, I think it's certainly a question that the other council members might opine on what's doable, but staff are certainly happy to work with the council and others to figure out, you know, ways that we can. Get closer and closer to achieving that, that three hundred a year or whatever the goal may be in terms of housing production.
Okay, I would just say that, that's the question for me for the night, folks. Um, okay, I'm, I'm going to suggest we go for another round. I know my time was up. Um, so I'd suggest we have another round of, of comments and questions because I, I know a few of us, uh, bumped up against that time limit. Uh, council member Koo and then Phil Seth.
Um, so I also, I, I just want to point out that. You know, in, even in reaching the number that you had mentioned, uh, mayor, about, you know, three hundred or so. Uh, in a year, the, the point of this is that. In addition to the three hundred housing units, oftentimes there's office space that is also being proposed. And so it just continues to put us in a, uh, impossible situation in catching up. So, um, I mean, I would say, you know, this whole plan talks about housing and how we're going to achieve housing. Yet, you know, there is the job growth for a portion of it. Uh, for example, Brisbane had, had approved, had, um, seven million square feet of office space that was proposed. And they were forced to, they had to approve it. And they were also forced to put in housing. And that actually came from a top down kind of way in, in, uh, in terms of, uh, as. Uh, legislator kind of pushing it forward and having threats in place. So, you know, I mean, these kinds of things. You, to, to, to go forward and still continually approve office space and say that we have to build housing with no funding. These are all unfunded, no funding, as, um, council member Phil Seth had mentioned through his, uh, presentation there. It's, it's not a, it, even if we wanted to be ambitious, we can't, you know? So I think that, you know, and along the way, um, the democratic process is also being circumvented. Because there are laws that are coming in place, legislation that are being proposed and has been proposed, which weaponizes this plan and takes away our. Uh, local jurisdictions' control over our land use and zoning. But I do have one question. So we as a city are paying towards this, uh, MTC and A-BAG. Uh, I don't know, is it a membership or dues or how much is it? And I, I would really like to find out, you know, we're paying in order to have this plan made in. And, you know, it's, it's, uh, we're not even getting heard. We're not even being, they're not even coming here to present to us. So what is the payment that we're paying as a city?
As council member, I know you've raised that question previously and so I have to look into it. There is a membership dues, uh, that is applicable. I have, uh. Yet to get more information on that, but I will certainly share with the council as soon as I've got that. Don't know, presumably it's a discretionary payment. And, uh, as such, uh, certainly, uh, like to come back to council with what options you have.
I'd really appreciate that. And then as we, uh, since you're at it, you know, maybe we can also find out what is it that we are paying to the league of cities? You know, what are the membership fees that we're paying for representation yet, you know? I have yet to hear a report back on much of any of this, um, top down kind of governance. Um, then, uh, you know, I do want to push through that. We do have to question the, the figures that they're giving and the projections that they're coming out with, you know? Their, their projections of the one point four million increase in jobs, the two point seven million increase in population. A one point three million increase in households, one point six million increase in housing units between two thousand fifteen and two thousand fifty. Yet they're, they are higher than even the Plan Bay Area twenty forty that was approved in two thousand seventeen. And, you know. And these projections are even higher than the ones that were given by the Department of, um, Finance, California's Department of Finance. So we need to question these kind of projections and especially with what we knew, what we know now with what happened during COVID. Uh, and I said some of the other things in terms of collaborating, uh, with other cities, and I think that we need to do that at this point. There are nine counties, there should be dispersion of these jobs. Uh, and when we, uh, make, uh, jobs concentrated in an area. It means that the affordability factor goes down because it becomes much more expensive to live in those areas and to operate. In those areas as we have seen in the past few years when, um, uh, commercial rental spaces, office spaces, all of those prices went up. Even housing prices. So there has to be question in terms of how we can, how this regional planning group needs to look at dispersion and looking at. Uh, some of the communities that do have the housing that can be more affordable. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Phil Seth.
All right, I'm back and I promise this time will be much briefer than before. Can I have the screen again? Everybody see that? Thanks. So, um, so coming back to what does that have to do with Rena and Palo Alto and so forth? Um, again, I think way to look at the Plan Bay Area, the regional dilemma is, you know. There are a lot of good reasons to concentrate new jobs in the existing high cost areas. A lot of good reasons to put housing, including, uh, including all ranges, including, uh, affordable housing near the new jobs. And nobody wants to spend money. And actually there, the state, you know, Sacramento has, has never been willing to spend money on the kind of scale it's going to take to do this. Right? So we can't have all three. We can have any two. And so, but I think what's coming from Plan Bay Area and Rena, and again, I, I, I respect a lot of the work that Plan Bay Area has done on this. I think they, some of it, they did a very, very good job, right? But they're giving us an impossible task and I don't mean us Palo Alto. I think they're giving basically almost all the region an impossible task. Okay? They're sort of telling everybody, here's a round room, go sit in the corner. And so the question is, what happens when you fail the impossible task? And, uh, oops, I didn't go full screen. There we go. Question is, what happens when you fail the impossible task? Okay? And the fallback is SB thirty five and a spider web of other bills coming out of Sacramento that basically imposes, uh, zoning framework on the states. Now SB thirty five was sold as a boost to affordable housing without requiring any investment. But even, even MTC Plan Bay Area is saying, look, you can't get affordable housing without investment. Zoning will cut it. Right? The actual result of SB thirty five, and again, we're still learning because there haven't been that many projects on it. But it appears that SB thirty five, what it really does is enable big mixed use projects like Valco. That actually add more demand for housing than they actually supply. Okay? Both below market and above market. And, and that's a mess. And there's other state bills coming along with it that do things like invalidate voter initiatives and ban local parking codes and a bunch of stuff like that. And so if you put those two things together, an impossible pla- uh, plan that can't be executed. Plus this sort of quagmire coming out of, uh, Sacramento. I think it's a formula that's going to get nothing done. It's going to be the status quo. Okay? Only more of it. So more tax acter wealth, because I think it will goose, it will goose the economy if you don't have to pay for affordable housing. But it'll come with more inequality, more fall behind of housing for non-high income earners, more displacement, more congestion, more pollution, more stress on social services. Basically all the current woes, only more. And in the future, if the South Bay is any indication, we may hit the point where we can't even find, fill those high wage jobs. Okay? Because people aren't willing to live here. Okay? And again, you go back, you know, the first part concentrating the new jobs in existing high cost areas, that's a corporate commercial thing. Putting the new housing near the new jobs, that's a social thing. Okay? And so, you know, that's, that's where, that's where we should be going, right? But. It's expensive. Okay? And, and it costs money and nobody wants to spend the money and that's the dilemma. Okay? The alternative to all this, okay? So if you don't like the, the, the round, the round room with, with, uh, with no corners to sit in, okay? Go back, we ought to go back and revisit the fundamental axiom that Plan Bay Area wasn't willing to consider this round, which is. What happens if you shift not the jobs, but the job growth into lower cost areas, better served by transportation? Do we have a chance of getting out of the maze if we do that? Okay? And I think that's, that's important for us as a region. Okay? Now I talk about Palo Alto. So what I think we should do is, uh, I think we ought to ask, uh, Plan Bay Area, I know it's late, uh, maybe they won't take any input from us. We ought to ask them for an alternate scenario, uh, for Plan Bay Area that has different job growth, uh, distribution and more equitable. And, uh, and what does that do to all the numbers? The second, I think A-BAG allocations ought to consider commercial growth. Okay? Which is. And, you know, that's something that we have been going down a path in Palo Alto of, as I think people know. And it's one step towards A, getting out of the impossible problem. And B, sort of helping encourage job growth in other parts of the region. Now, Plan Bay Area, the folks have come back and said, well, look, we can't tell people, we can't tell people, you know, they, they can't attract jobs, right? And, 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 you know, maybe that's fair. Okay? But MTC and A-BAG shouldn't get in the way of cities that choose to do that themselves in an effort. You know, to balance their own jobs and housing growth and to help, you know, encourage the formation of that stuff elsewhere in the Bay Area, because it's going to benefit everybody. Right? So, and it's actually doable. Right? Um, I think A-BAG actually ought to consider is a little bit radical, but dynamic allocation, which is only allocate part of, uh, of the target. And as cities approve commercial cross square footage, adjust the housing targets. Plan Bay Area calls for one housing unit for each new job. So if you say two hundred and fifty square feet per job, you could actually do that. That's a radical idea, but I think they ought to consider stuff like that. Okay? And, uh, and then finally, you know, obviously we have AMI targets, we have our comp plan and so forth that we're all committed to execute to. Just a reminder, Palo Alto's pressing need is actually for below market income housing. Okay? Not just, uh, not just, you know, you know, whatever, whatever somebody wants to put up that makes a lot of money. And that's what I think we should do on the letter. And that's why I like the letter that, uh, uh, Tom and Lydia and I, uh, worked on, which is. It does the second of those two things. It sort of moves in the direction of, you know, let's consider the job growth. Element of this because it's relevant and, uh, in terms of the, uh, income shifting Palo Alto's real need, most important need for our community is BMI housing. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Boys.
Yeah. So actually you asked, mayor asked, uh, what's achievable? And I think that's actually the right question. Um, I really think we should have sessions soon to review some scenario planning from staff. And really see what it would take to get to some of these numbers. And just quickly sketch out, identify sites and numbers. See what it would take to get to sixty five hundred new housing units. See what it would take to get to fifteen thousand new housing units. Like really look at some of these scenarios that are being thrown about. And, um, I think that's exactly what we need to understand. Um, if I could share my screen, can I just hit the share screen button?
Yes, you should be able to.
Okay, are you guys seeing, uh? Are you seeing the letter or you see my notes?
We see your face. We see you.
Okay, how about now?
You're halfway there. There you go. The letter.
Great. Okay, so I just wanted to highlight kind of what we did here. So what we, what we're suggesting is in bold. Uh, in bold blue, uh, the rest of it is the staff letter. And so again, if we take these as concepts, I don't think we should try to wordsmith it. Uh, but maybe give direction to staff to add these concepts into their letter. The, the first paragraph here in blue, um, which you can read is to ask for acknowledgement of, um. And ask for a model which explicitly balances jobs and housing growth. Uh, and ask them to consider upper limits based on, uh, attainable growth rates. And to consider communities which have put, um, job limits in place. So Palo Alto and San Francisco have done that. Uh, it's, so it's just another factor. And as Eric has kind of gone through his presentation, it's really the main suggestion here is we try to push for an alternative. That looks at, uh, balancing job growth through the Bay Area. Um, the other changes here really just kind of making some of the language a little stronger. Realize this is a, a political letter to, uh, to another group. Uh, but again, I think, I think they realize it. I think pointing out some of these things. And staff had some wording here, we, we strengthened it slightly. Uh, that, you know, many communities are going to fail, uh, at these allocations. Uh, and again, this is in your email box. And again, these last couple of comments are really about underlining that. You know, what is a reasonable expectation of growth over eight years? Uh, making sure that they're considering, you know, the size of our city. Actually, this number is wrong. This is an old letter. So I just wanted to, to make sure everybody saw that. Stop sharing. You know, I, I don't know if we want to go to motions right now. Um, but when it comes time for motions, I think we would ask that we would include some of these concepts in the letter. Uh, really a new scenario that recognizes job limits. Um, and secondly, uh, I started to mention the first time. And secondly, I started to mention the first time I talked, I really think we should ask staff to come back to council with some strategic options on steps we can take to influence this process as we go along. Again, recognizing that we may get in a no-win situation. I think, I think we need to be careful about committing to things that we don't really think we can deliver on and really understanding what our options are if we get put in that position. So would you, would you like an option now or would you like to finish up another round?
No, I think we should finish up this round and I have some comments and I know a few other colleagues haven't spoken yet.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. If you haven't spoken yet in this round and would like to, please hit your hand. Okay, I'll jump in. I have a range of comments. So, you know, fundamentally Palo Alto is not doing well in housing. We have a comp plan goal of 300 units per year and we miss it year after year. In short, I think our community and specifically this council has never missed an opportunity to miss an opportunity on housing. We have shown an unwillingness to solve this problem locally, using the local control that we have to actually build new market rate housing and affordable housing. And of course, we as a city don't build it, but we create the conditions by which home builders do it. And we failed at that. And in my opinion, that's why we actually need regional and state guidance on planning. Otherwise, communities like ours are going to wilt on the vine. On the letter, I'm willing to accept the staff letter, not the alternate letter, which I still have issues with from multiple reasons. I, I don't like that the letter implies that the goals are impossible, given how much of our housing work plan is unfinished and still underway. And furthermore, when we have discussed the housing work plan in years past, we heard pretty clearly from housing advocates that it was not going to be enough at the time. And we pulled back on a number of things because folks weren't comfortable with heights or parking or stuff like that. And the result is you don't get the housing. And yet tonight, we've heard umpteen reasons why we should oppose the regional housing planning process and we want to pass B. This is a self-inflicted problem. When you oppose the housing, there's victims. And the state has social and economic reasons for stepping in. I mean, the vice mayor mentioned, we have a housing element we've been working hard on. Sometimes I feel like on this council, we live in different realities. Somebody else mentioned that this is a no-win scenario. It's like not doing any of your homework and then complaining to the teacher that the class is too hard. You know, Palo Alto is not trying hard on this problem and we're failing our community. And we're failing regional partners, we're failing neighbors, we're failing young families, we're failing senior long-term residents. With regards to SB 35, it's produced dozens of new housing projects and tens of thousands, or thousands of new units, including many which are 100% housing. And even if you don't like SB 35, a few months ago, we had a project at 3,300 El Camino with 20% affordable requirements and a couple hundred housing units, which outweighed any office component, which was by right, for the record. You all poo-pooed that project. I mean, so when you say like, let's stop the jobs and build the housing, I don't believe you anymore. Congratulations. The proof is in the pudding. We're not seeing extensive office construction in the city, nor are we seeing housing production. Councilmember Phil Seth mentioned the need for subsidies, absolutely agreed. The state has not been a great partner in that and I look forward to some funding sources for affordable housing, that's important. But the $68 billion is not just a direct subsidy. We can stretch dollars through incremental density. It's through imputed land and density. I.e. the $50 million in the land we spent on the California Avenue parking garage could have gone towards affordable housing. A couple other comments. Our county's population is not growing. The population fails to grow when housing isn't created. Those are almost self-fulfilling and cyclical. But we have seen increases in overcrowding and that's actually one of the mitigating factors that Plan Bay Area and Rena is looking at, overcrowding and trying to alleviate that. I think they've been working on that before COVID, but I think it's especially relevant now. Seems like we all have fun sharing our screens tonight. If the city clerk would help me share my screen for a moment. And do I hit share screen?
Yeah, you should be able to hit share screen.
Okay, let me do that. Show my whole desktop and let me know. Great, thank you. Okay, I wanted to go to a nearby community, Redwood City. They have this thing called the gatekeeper process. It's somewhat similar to our planned community zoning that we used to have, but more on a district level. And they have a big hearing tonight, August 10th. And if you go and dig in, these are the housing projects they're looking at, four housing projects, one of them two units, not so much. This one, 60 units with nine affordable units. This one, 300 units with 68 affordable. This one, 430 with 70 affordable. That's more, this tonight, which Redwood City is considering, is more housing than we have done in five years. And so, I continue to believe, you know, this is totally within our control. We can do this in our own Palo Alto way. But the Rena metrics and the increase in cost of housing, the loss of long-term community members, I think continues to show we're not meeting that. I agree with councilmember Phil Seth, the increases on below-market housing, which is a different beast from market rate housing. But one of the best ways to get that affordable housing is through cross-subsidy of market rate housing. So I think that's something we need to consider. Just wrapping up, another example, next week Sam Mateo will be considering over 1,000 homes in a new project, including 225 units affordable. So that's, that's that. Before we move on to the next round, a few more comments. With regards to the methodologies, in terms of the factor-based one, I think I prefer the housing crescent jobs approach. I think it makes logical sense. I agree with some of my colleagues about the income shift being 100 to 150%. Again, the rub is how we actually achieve that mix. So far, we've obviously skewed towards the market rate mix. On the bottom-up process, focus on jobs proximity makes sense to me for a number of reasons. And I'd be interested in learning more about how we incorporate the Plan Bay Area numbers for that third approach. I know staff said it was really nascent, so looking forward to that. I think those are my comments. I just think fundamentally, you know, we have these, these powers within our control. If you look up and down the peninsula, there are other communities doing this, building affordable and market rate housing, or creating the conditions to do so, and we're not doing that. And there's a lot of reasons for it. But I think as a council, this council and future councils have the ability to do that with the right will. Okay, I think those are my comments. I see councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. I think a few of us were on the A-BAG two-hour session last week that walked through all of this. And one of the things I was struck by, and I appreciate councilmember Phil Seth's comments on this, was the strong connections across our county and across county borders. It was just impossible to sit through that and not think about what we're experiencing right now. And, and remember that Palo Alto is not an island. I think I said this a couple of weeks ago on a completely different topic. We rely on people and people moving around. And so, tonight's discussion has been about numbers and units and jobs, but we're really talking about people and where people live and the overcrowding that the mayor was talking about. You know, epidemiologists are starting to think that's what's driving a lot of this pandemic. So, I think it's a really instructive time for us to remember that while we all live here and we were elected to serve these people, that we cannot, we have to think, we have to think and actually operate beyond our borders in ways that perhaps we haven't had to before. Funding is critical, of course it is. It's part of why I think we're still waiting for the finance committee to come back with a proposal for how to fund affordable housing here in our own city. We do have some responsibility for this and we do have the means somehow, some way, confident we can sort it out, that we do, we do have a responsibility to provide some of the funding. It can't all come from elsewhere, especially now. Scenario planning, yeah, I mentioned that last week, I think, was when we discussed the letter. I think with respect to the impact of COVID, scenario planning makes a ton of sense. You know, should we do a hockey stick from, you know, projection from jobs on last year's actuals? No, that's, that's pretty unreasonable. So it sounds like the three of you are trying to, to focus on the overall number as opposed to the methodology. I'll just say that I, I have found some of the language used this evening to be awfully strong with threats and weapons and slums and legal strategies. So, I've found that a bit concerning. The letter, I think, is polite. We are trying to influence people. And, and usually it's better to do that with language that appreciates the work that they've done. So I was particularly disappointed to see the removal of that one sentence in the alternate proposal.
Thank you, councilmember Cormac. Councilmember Niss, did you wish to speak on this or in the next round when we can go to motions? You're, you're on mute.
So, I'll wait and glad to make a motion when the time is right. But I, I want to add one thing to this. Aside from the fact that we have the Palo Alto Housing Corporation, which has been in effect now since, I think, 1972. The second part of this is, if we really are talking about funding affordable housing, which has been one of my just angst numbers for a very long time, we have to find a different way to do that. The way most cities fund their affordable housing is through building offices, some kind of businesses. That is the way it is. Unless we find another way in our city of raising money to go for affordable housing, business tax, whatever it may be, we are going to be stuck where we are right now. Eric brought it up and we brought it up several other times. That one affordable housing project that we have is using up all of our affordable housing money. I think we have $3 million left if Joe Semidion gets his teacher project up and moving at some point. But I, I feel that if we don't address that kind of need as to what, how do you build? How do you do that? I mean, we look at Mountain View and it's very clear how they got the amount of affordable housing they did and why the Palo Alto Housing Corporation has been doing three projects there in the last year. And we, as far as I know, haven't broken ground on our one project yet, which will be the first one, I think, in about 10 years. Okay, done for the moment.
Thank you. Okay, let's finish up our comments and questions and open it up to comments, questions, and motions. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I appreciate the comments of everybody. I would like to go ahead and try to make a motion, open to tweaking. I don't know if the, I sent it to the city clerk, but I'd like to ask the staff in corporate, incorporate some of the new concepts from the council alternate letter and to the comment letter to A-BAG MTC, asking that there's evaluation of a new scenario that focuses on the job spread to the Bay Area. Does, does the clerk have the motion? Could they put that up on the board? The
We will have it up there shortly.
Okay, so there's three parts. That was the first part. The second part would be to ask staff to return to council with some scenario planning based on the anticipated allocations. And the third, third point would be to ask staff to return to council with some strategic options for us to influence our Rena allocations and to respond effectively throughout the process. Yep, so there's the motion. I don't know if there's a second.
Okay, so there's a motion by the vice mayor here. So, letter A is roughly the letter that you proposed. Letter B is scenario planning. Letter C is strategic options to influence Rena allocations. I'll second. Second for this?
I'll second.
Thank you. Do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, just to clarify. So again, A is not meant to say adopt the alternate letter word-for-word. It's really to have staff incorporate those concepts into the letter. Happy to have the wordsmith that smoothed it out a bit, if you will. Again, I think some scenario planning, again, we already know in the ballpark what our anticipated allocations would be under different allocation methods. I think we should look at some scenarios under the two or three most likely allocations. And then the third one, this is really, you know, looking at the dates for the staff presented for the rest of the plan, would be to have staff come back with basically a strategy for council, how they can touch base with us and kind of what the process is going to be as we go through those dates.
Thank you. And councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, I don't have too much comment other than councilmember Cormac said that, that a line was excised that affected the tone of the letter and I'm happy to put that one back in. I didn't realize we'd actually taken one out like that, so. On number C, let me ask the maker of the motion. Given what you just said, that's not exactly what I read here on number C. Do you think number C as written captures, captures adequately what you mean?
How would you improve it?
Well, you were sort of talking about milestones and communication and updates or something like that.
Um, yeah, I mean, happy to make it clear. I guess if they came back with us for some options, you know, to respond effectively through the process, I think that process is spread out over a pretty long period of time.
Okay, well.
But I'm happy to tweak it.
I'm just trying to make sure that, make sure that I understand it and it's clear that everybody else understands it. Okay. Right?
Thank you very much. Councilmember Niss.
So, let's make sure that I'm, I'm not on mute. So, I instead am going to suggest that we go back to, back to the, to the, the report from tonight, which recommends the following. So I'd like to make this as substitute motion, which is to discuss and provide direction to staff as appropriate on two regional planning efforts, which are the Plan Bay Area 2050 and the regional, then the Rena process. And then submit a comment letter to the A-BAG MTC's Housing Methodology Committee reflecting city council initial comments and et cetera. So, if I get a second to that, I will continue.
I'll be happy to second.
Okay, thank you. So councilmember Niss has moved what I believe is the original staff proposal, so inclusive of the staff letter in the packet, seconded by councilmember Cormac. Councilmember Niss, the floor is yours.
So, I, I think I've also, we've done a lot of ranting tonight. Housing is one of those areas that just, just, we cannot seem to get a handle on in Palo Alto. And the mayor has reflected on this tonight. We can't even seem to get our numbers. Unless we go in another direction in order to, to make that happen, I think I won't be, but you all will be sitting here five years from now and saying, gosh, we just can't seem to make the numbers. I think we need a boost and I think that's where this is heading. So, that's why I have put that motion forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you so much. I wonder if councilmember Niss would consider a minor modification to A.
Depends what it is.
Okay, well, I like the idea of staff doing the scenario planning based on anticipated allocations. And I think that will help us as we begin the work on the housing element. So I wonder if in A, direct staff to continue working on the two regional planning efforts and return to council with scenario planning based on anticipated allocations. I'll pause.
Yes, I
In anticipation of preparing the new housing element.
Yes, I, I think that essentially captures it as it is and gives it a little more oomph. Yes, let's do that.
Okay, so with that then, again, I feel that the staff actually did an excellent job of predicting the fact that the council would want to go with the lowest possible number, which is the methodology that is the baseline. which is the methodology that is the baseline. And maybe not everyone on the council would want that, but, and I think that they have remained appropriately engaged, as we have heard, and I'm confident they will continue to do so.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Mr. City Manager, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to note that since this is perhaps carried forward in both motion and the substitute motion, that this concept of scenario planning is one that may involve some resources that are not currently in place. Certainly have to discuss this with planning staff, but I do want to just flag that upfront, and obtaining the necessary resources may have a bit of a conflict with the timeliness that we're looking for in influencing the RINA process. So I just want to flag that. It's not a fatal flaw, but would be a bit of a yellow flag to call to your attention.
Well, I'll note that the, actually, the clerk didn't include that part, so currently the motion doesn't include scenario planning. You know, with scenarios, I guess we could say, return to council with scenarios in anticipation of preparing the new housing element.
And if staff interprets that as perhaps briefing the council on cost and resources to do so, would that be acceptable to staff and the maker and seconder?
Back, I think actually that, that's suggested.
Can I ask, Mayor Fine, when the council members hear scenario planning and think of that, are you thinking of, let's say, 5,000 units, where those would go, how they would look? What is the scenario? You know, if it's 10,000, what kind of scenarios are council members imagining?
As the seconder, Councilmember Niss, may I?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So what I heard the vice mayor describing was work that is being done in other cities that's sort of like, well, here's what it would look like if we did 5,000 units. Here are some of the places it might go. I certainly don't intend to ask for what units look like, but just sort of a ballpark, help us understand what portions of the city, what things might need to change. I realize that's not very specific, but no, it would not, I would not be envisioning a super, something super detailed, but something that would give people an idea of, oh, my goodness, a 40% increase, which is what, you know, the third column suggests. What would that look like?
Thank you.
And that may help us as we move forward, you know, continuing to work with our partners.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Niss, does that concur with your understanding?
Yes, and I appreciate that. I, this is a difficult kind of direction to give, so I'm sympathetic with staff, and I certainly did hear what the city manager said.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a substitute speaking to the substitute motion, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I think my ear was still up from before, but I'll go ahead and speak to the substitute motion. So on staffing, I think this is probably one of the most important things on our plate, so I think we need to find a way to do this. Yes, I think what I meant by scenario planning was really a rough sketch where we put these units. Enough of a, kind of enough of an idea of how we would start to approach an actual housing element. Again, not, I think Councilmember Cormac summed it up pretty well, not what it would look like necessarily, but the least kind of, how we would try to achieve it, where in the city we think we could put it. I think the difference between the two motions boils down to this request to consider our efforts to limit job growth and to consider other ways to spread jobs around the Bay Area. So I just want to make it clear that voting for this substitute motion is really rejecting the idea of incorporating, you know, job concentration as a consideration. Whether they would even listen to us or not is another thing, but I'm not sure why there's a hesitancy to actually propose, you know, that they consider an alternative. And then just to comment on the funding, which came up a few times. Yes, I mean, we can get funds for building, which would be through impact fees, which we need to revisit. And yes, I think business taxes also are a realistic option there. I think finally we need to recognize we're in a recession and that that's going to impact probably building across the board. But that's kind of an externality at this point. So I guess appreciate where the substitute motion is coming from. Again, I strongly feel we should ask for this consideration of ways to limit job concentration. So I will not be supporting the substitute motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Koo.
So I appreciate that the council members want to be nicely nice on this and kind of move forward without actually identifying and honing in on some of the problems of this plan. There's issues with data, and there's the funding part of it. We are short on staff. And as Councilmember Niss says, unless we have office space and build more, there's really no money towards housing, so it continues to exacerbate the problem. We have now land that is so expensive that it will probably cost over 500,000 per unit to build. And, you know, this is, this is just not doable. And it would be, it would be actually prudent in order to move forward to ask for actually improving our intra-regional imbalances and actually ask them to look into the projections that they have, to look into dispersion, and this letter does nothing of that, nothing, as proposed by staff. It's, it's, you know, if you don't say the things that you need to say and constantly be so politically correct that you say nothing, then we're constantly hit by those plans. And I do want to say that, you know, the mayor had mentioned all these other cities that are building. They haven't limited their job growth. They haven't done what we have done. And in addition to all of that, has the voters in this town actually bought into this process? That, that we go ahead and morph into this town that we're trying to address housing, but it doesn't fully address housing only. It also encourages office space growth. I will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, thank you. So I sat in on the, or I attended the Plan Bay Area webinar for Santa Clara County on Thursday last week, and you know, there was a series, a point where, there were several points where people were, the web audience was invited to answer questions and send in comments and stuff like that. And the principal guy who was Dave Bowden from, Dave Bowden from MTC, at some point said, man, I'm getting a lot of questions, a lot of comments from Santa Clara County about, you know, slowing down job growth and pushing other places in favor of housing to balance those things. He said, that's, I don't hear that from any other county, but I'm getting a lot of that from Santa Clara County. And I think most people in Palo Alto are aligned, or a majority are aligned with the idea that, you know, job growth and housing growth ought to be considered, and they both need to be levers as we try to solve this problem. And I don't actually for a minute think A-BAG is going to do much different depending on what letter we send them. They got a number that they got to parse out, and they're going to do it, right? But, but this notion of, you know, we really need to get our arms around this jobs thing as well, if we're ever going to get out from under this rock, and especially the affordable housing rock, right? Without sort of, you know, doing unnatural things that create more demand for it than they actually supply, right? You know, we got to, we got to get that idea sort of more socialized in the world. And I think it's an important one, and I don't understand why we wouldn't take this opportunity to take a little leadership on that, because I think most Palo Alton support it, but so be it.
Thank you. Other comments on this substitute motion? Just a couple of my own. So on the job concentration issue, I would tentatively agree with my colleagues that most Palo Altons would rather on the margins see new housing versus new office. I think that's generally agreed upon in our community. You know, this council has, this council and previous council have created a lot of limits on new job growth, and we are one of the slowest growing commercial areas in Santa Clara County and, you know, the lower South Bay region in general. I wouldn't say the voters have bought into it. We haven't really put that to a ballot. There's a bit of a difference there. And in terms of the question of dispersion, like, how are we going to disperse jobs, right? And then there's maybe some opportunity in that right now with regards to COVID or remote work. But then there's also the flip side, is like, what does that mean to our economy and the services we provide folks? And we are certainly facing that this year as we see large drops in our revenues driven by visitors and people who work here, things like that. As for the many alternatives, folks have said there are not alternatives in this. If you really go and read the Plan Bay Area and RINA forecasts, there are dozens of alternatives. That's planning. They have many, many alternatives. This is one check-in point where we can provide some feedback. We may not like any of the alternatives. That's totally legitimate. But staff's letter is choosing the lowest of the entire range. And you all know me, I would love to go higher. I don't think that's where this community or this council is. And so I'm willing to go along with the substitute motion for that. As for problems with the plan, like, you know, comments like we're being nicely nice, we are all taking this role professionally and trying to do our absolute best here for our community. And I would wish we could all treat each other with that level of respect. I don't think the problem is that the plan is misguided. I think it's that we haven't implemented it. And maybe in some degree, that's because we don't have the right help. Maybe it's because we don't have the right consensus here on council to do so. But that's how I see it, and I hope we can all give each other that credit and do. Any other comments before we vote on the substitute? Okay. So let's go to vote on the substitute motion. Is it really blurry for anybody else, the screaming service?
I don't know why.
It is blurry. It wasn't earlier, but it is now. There we go. Better, Jessica.
Okay, so we're voting on the substitute motion with some incorporations from Councilmember Cormac, accepted by Councilmember Niss. First up is Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
No.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
No.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
No.
And me is a yes. That passes on a four to three vote with Vice Mayor DuBois, Councilmember Phil Seth, and Councilmember Koo dissenting. Thank you all for your comments and questions. Thank you to all the members of the public who joined as well. And thank you to our staff for your work on this. We'll get this letter out as soon as we can, because I know the deadline is tight. I'm going to suggest we take a 10-minute break, given we've been here for two hours and 45 minutes, and also my pizza is getting cold, so I'm going to have a slice. So maybe let's take 10 minutes and be back here at 7:55. All right, thank you all.
It just says, it's not, it says the host has stopped it, so I can't start it.
Adrian, while we're waiting. Don't you usually have the coverly photo that has puppies in it?
I've got that one if you want somewhere.
No, no, that's all right.
It might be a little distracting.
Well, my dog's already been distracting tonight, so.
Well, mine gets sent away on these evenings. Jane takes her over to my parents' house and. Has dinner there, so.
The problem is that council meetings coincide with deliveries.
Yep.
Perhaps our colleagues are out eating on the summer streets.
Or making peanut butter chocolate chip cookies like I just did.
Sounds good. Actually wonder, I mean, one of the interesting things about the summer streets is like the designated pickup spots. That was, that was a smart move. I'm gonna give our colleagues just another minute or so and then we'll get started. Should we maybe just get started? Okay. Let's please move on to item number six. An update on the summer streets program and a few resolution, resolutions extending the expiration dates of other resolutions.
All right. Once again, Ms. Tanner will report for staff.
Good. So I will bring up my presentation. Great. Everyone can see that?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. So this evening I will be presenting an update on our summer streets program and some recommendations for updating. And amending the resolution that support the programs. So it says background, City Council passed a resolution on June 23rd that authorized temporary street closures. It also authorized the temporary parklet pilot program. Council also passed an interim urgency ordinance temporarily allowing expansion of outdoor dining and retail on both public and private property. It waived fees for permit review and waived design review. And allowed on sale consumption of alcohol in outdoor dining areas as well as unlit and cogswell plazas. Council also asked staff to look at lower cost parklet options and the ordinance and resolution both passed unanimously. Staff recommendation tonight is to receive a report regarding the summer streets program, which was initiated on June 23rd. To adopt the following amendments to Resolution 9909. Two, one, extend the temporary street closures to California Avenue, University Avenue and other downtown blocks to December 31st, 2020. To extend the closure on University Avenue by one block to include the block between Emerson Street and High Street. To have the expiration date for the temporary parklet program become September 7th of 2021, which is Labor Day of next year. And four is to allow activities in addition to outdoor dining and retail to occur on temporary closed streets. That'd be, for example, a fitness class or something that isn't dining or retail to occur on a closed street. And then also council may decide to offer further comment and direction on the program. So first I'll begin with the update and report on the program. So some of our progress and activities that we've undertaken since June 23rd, which really is just a matter of weeks. In the past, it seems far away. We've been doing weekly Zoom calls with California Avenue merchants and downtown merchants. We've had bi-weekly Zoom meetings with the community, offering opportunity for key members to give feedback on what's working, what's not working and ask questions. We've had really daily and including the weekend staff contacts with stakeholders and I really want to credit. Kara Apple and Rob George who've been leading our outreach to businesses and just been doing a fantastic job. Really being there to walk people through permit processes, help them navigate. What they may do with their space and really think through how to help their business adapt as best as we can. And that's again with phone, email and socially distanced and of course, visits with face coverings. We've reviewed and issued permits and again, big shout out to Public Works who has just been really. Very lightning fast in reviewing permits, working with applicants at their situations, looking at their locations, what they need and how to make things work in a way that's safe. Inspection, including inspecting the construction of the parklets and making sure that they're safe. We've closed streets to traffic and updated traffic plans accordingly. We have online survey going for both patrons who are visitors to these summer streets areas as well as businesses can respond, letting us know how things are working for them. We've developed and issued guidelines as new uses reopen. So thinking about how outdoor fitness might be occurring. And looking even with some folks who are interested in doing the hair cutting outside, how might that work? What are the things we need to consider to allow that to occur in a way that doesn't conflict with other uses? We have ongoing communications signage and advertising. Thank you to Megan Horgan Taylor for fantastic signage. And great web communication that her team is overseeing. And we have weekly pedestrian cyclist and dinner count diner count. So you can see there. One of our counters volunteers, Justine, who's out there with me that evening. On University Avenue, counting the number of folks who are there dining, who's there walking, who's riding their bike in the evening. We also have weekly parking impact counts in parking areas nearby to California Avenue and University Avenue. And we even did a traffic count in downtown for a week to understand if traffic was picking up. In terms of, you know, the returning of some of the traffic that we normally have, you know, in a given week. In terms of survey responses, we had, this is as of July 23rd when I was writing the staff report. We had 203 survey responses from patrons and community members who went on to online on the Survey Monkey and answered our survey. Most of those respondents, 92% were local. They live in Palo Alto. 70% had dined outdoors and 30% had not. If the 30% who had not dined might just be visitors to Cal Ave or to University Avenue, but maybe didn't actually sit down and patronize a restaurant and eat. Their, 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 at the closed street or at the tables provided by the restaurant. Popular locations, 40% of the survey respondents had dined in Cal Ave, 20% at university and 40% had dined at both. And weekends and evening were popular. Friday and Saturday in the evening in particular were the most popular times to visit Cal Ave or University Avenue. Active transportation was very popular. 36% walked to and 15% biked to their summer street, which is really excellent. And 95% of the drivers said they had a great parking experience with 5% saying that they had a fair experience. So. I don't know when we might get those numbers again, but those are really, really positive. And 95% also said they felt safe. And 95% said that they would return and continue to patronize. So especially in the era of this pandemic. Having 95% of the diners or the visitors feel safe in, in visiting these areas is really important for the community and for the businesses as well. Other patron feedback include positive responses like, we love it. It was a great idea. It feels like Europe. And there were many requests to make this permanent or perhaps an annual summer activity that the city does. There were some concerns raised over social distancing, mask wearing and just the general wisdom of dining outdoors during the pandemic. And then there were that 5% of people who maybe did not feel safe and who kind of. They maybe came to get takeout, but they didn't feel safe themselves sitting down and dining. But even those who didn't sit down to dine enjoyed visiting the area and people watching and having a bit of what we might call normalcy during this time. Some of the takeaways from California Avenue, and just to remind you kind of the footprint of California Avenue, the street was closed from El Camino Real to Birch Street. It was briefly closed on Cal Ave from Birch to Park, but it reopened. It wasn't really heavily utilized. And we realized that businesses there could accomplish what they needed with parklets or other sidewalk dining. There were 11 restaurants permitted for outdoor dining and evening there is busier than lunch. Weekends, again, the busiest time. The businesses who'd responded again in, end of, mid, end of July, about 20. They estimate that 25 to 60% of their pre-pandemic revenue was coming in and the average was about 32%. And neighborhood street parking had not been impacted in the neighboring streets. For University Avenue, it's closed from High to Cowper. That was adjusted on just last Friday. The block of university from High to Emerson was open to traffic. And a portion of Ramona was closed, a portion from Hamilton to about mid-block just before the entrance to the underground parking garage. That's there. So just kind of at the end of NOLA, that's where the closure stops. About 15 restaurants have been permitted for outdoor dining again, evening is, and weekends are the busiest time. The range of responses in terms of pre-pandemic revenue was, you know, minus 16 to up to 80% with an average of being about 35%. Of pre-pandemic revenue being earned and cross, cross street or side street businesses reported 22 to 60%. Of their pre-pandemic revenue with average being about 22%. And neighboring, neighboring street parking is mostly unimpacted except for there was one section of Webster that had above 75%. Which means that more than 75% of the on-street parking spaces were taken up. And were not available. And so we want to keep it below 75% to have a good churn. Both for residents, but also visitors could find parking easily and to make sure that residents aren't negatively impacted by not being able to find a place to have on-street parking. The parklet program was a new program also that City Council authorized. Overall, the program is very successful. 22 parklet applications have been received and six parklets are constructed and in use. And you can see an image here of the parklet at the Creamery. The city hired an architect to create standard plans to help to defray some of the costs businesses might incur. If they go with the standard plans, it really also is again, easy and quick for. Public Works to approve it and for their contractor to take the plans and adapt them to the specific conditions at their site. The Director of Public Works updated the standards and other requirements for parklets to allow for at-grade parklets. And so an at-grade parklet allows businesses to have a parklet on the surface of the roadway, which is of a lower cost than having a platform parklet. Some find that it might not be as nice perhaps as a platform parklet, but certainly a great way to enjoy dining on the street and for businesses to defray some of those costs. And the parklets often accommodate less seating than indoors and less seating than a closed street. So don't want to paint a picture that for all restaurants. They are. At the capacity that they previously had with the parklet, but it certainly is more than many can fit just on the sidewalk. Especially in downtown where the sidewalks are fairly narrow. Additional programs are private parking lots. We have two private parking lots where they're using that for dining and retail. We also have adapted some public parking lots for some dining and retail. So you can see here this picture of Rosen Crown. Which has a small section of parking that is used for outdoor dining and that's a city-owned parking lot. So we've developed rules. To help to facilitate that type of process in places where it makes sense. And then also we're looking again at recreational personal services, developing the rules and guidelines that can be published. That can be used to help facilitate those activities outside, both in public parking lots, but also in private parking lots as well. So just a little bit about the resolution that is before you for consideration. We are asking to extend the street closures to the end of this year, December 31st, 2020. And I know that is going certainly into our fall and our winter time. So we may need to change the branding. Of our summer streets program, but certainly we tend to have pretty late summers here in the Bay Area with some of our hottest weather being in September and October. So it might be a good time for restaurants to still offer outdoor dining. And even as we think about winter, to be able to come up with ways to safely modify the experience, allow for outdoor dining, perhaps. Lighting, we can look into heat lamps and make sure that folks know the regulations if they want to have those types of additions to their parklet, which are the street dining. And they can do that safely. And so we would come back, staff would come back to council in early December to consider, you know, where do we go from here? But certainly buying time through the fall and into the winter and the holiday shopping season to allow some more flexibility with the street closures. We're also asking to add one block. Now this, again, things happen very, very quickly as we know. With the pandemic. And so even since the time the staff report was published, this block of university from High to Emerson was opened to traffic. But it's still in the resolution. I think it allows again, the flexibility that if there were a need to expand that area to the closure, staff would have the flexibility to do that. With, working with the city manager and of course, working with the businesses who are. Working with the businesses who are located there to just have that flexibility. Again, currently it's, it's not in effect at this moment as of last Friday. Extend temporary parklets to next year, to Labor Day of next year. This really is kind of looking ahead and kind of trying to our best to look at the trends, both of. What do we think might recently happen in terms of the pandemic? When might we see vaccines or return to real normal? And it seems like it could still be some time, unfortunately. In addition, the proper parklets, if you will, the platform ones, they are quite expensive, you know, with a minimum being like 7,500 to. You know, $10,000 and up. And so having a knowledge that this investment will be there for a year will give more stability to those businesses to make that investment, to have that outdoor dining area. And as we think about going through the next season through fall, winter, spring and into summer. The parklet, platform parklet might give that business more flexibility to have some limited outdoor dining in, let's say, the winter months when maybe they don't need the whole street. But a parklet is a good way to continue to help have patrons enjoy themselves safely. And we would recommend that staff would recommend that the at-grade parklet program, those permits would expire at the end of this year. Though those folks could apply for a new permit and could continue to do the at-grade parklet, but they really don't have the same cost. They need to amortize over the same period of time as the platform parklets. And then lastly, additional activities in closed street, we just want to clarify that additional activities such as recreation are allowed to take place in closed streets. Again, working to ensure that there's not a conflict. We don't want to have someone working out heavily, let's say, next to a group of people who are dining. And so that comes down to things like what time would an exercise class occur, let's say? Or what part of the street might it occur? Again, making sure that we're really helping to maximize safety and minimize any conflicts between businesses. So lastly, just looking ahead, considerations for the future programming. These are some items that council may wish to apply on, again, other items as well. There are some items that we can address via local action, planning and programming, and that staff can continue to work on and return to council with. One which we mentioned a little bit is winter weather, how to adapt these programs for, you know, rainier, colder months, times when the sun is setting fairly early. Addressing additional topics for the business roundtable. And so while these programs focus heavily on restaurants and retail. And other uses, really thinking about what are other measures that businesses brought up that could help to relieve some of the pressure that they're under. Programming to aid additional business or industries, different types of businesses. And sustainability of dedicated staff time and city resources. So how can we make sure we have the right staffing assigned in the right way to help to execute these programs? And we may need to distribute some city staff time to focus, for example, on other industries. And make sure that we're, we're kind of spreading our public resources and our focus to the different industries that are impacted by COVID. And of course, there are some macro factors though, that are also impacting us. The three-day watch list that Santa Clara County is on drastically impacts what businesses can operate and under what rules they can or cannot operate. In addition to overall affecting the willingness of folks to go out to shop, to dine and to patronize local businesses. Returning to workplaces or extended work from home, if extended work from home. Sorry, if work from home is extended, for example, Facebook recently extended it till mid-year of 2021. Then we will continue to see diminished customer base here in Palo Alto. We don't have the daily visitors. You know, Stanford is, I think, planning to start, we'll continue to watch what they decide to do as their start date nears, nears. But certainly the student population is important part of the customer base. As well as all the visitors who would come here flying from around the world for their, their business. And so not having that is certainly something that impacts us. It may not be something we can directly affect. And of course, the overall contours of the pandemic are going to continue to impact this program and others. So with that, I just returning here to the staff recommendation to receive the report and update to adopt the resolution with the amendments as discussed. And to provide further comment and direction on the program. Thank you very much.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, before turning back to you and other questions and comments, just a few. Footnotes to follow up on this Tanner's presentation. Few topics that have come up recently regarding ongoing surveying of downtown businesses in particular. Parking and how parking supply and perhaps the cost associated with allocation of public space to that use. And then finally come, come back to the, the topic of branding. So first on the survey, we have, as Ms. Tanner pointed out, on an ongoing basis, been conducting surveys to get community feedback. And you saw some of the results just over the course of the last week, based on last week's touch base with the businesses downtown. We had a request to actually have businesses weigh in individually on whether they supported or did not support the continued closure of university and now Ramona. And so we did do some targeted outreach to get among those businesses that were interested in self-identifying themselves and their locations. Whether they were supportive or not supportive of continuing the university and Ramona closure. And I'll let you know, perhaps not surprisingly, it's pretty evenly split. Among businesses, we are primarily responses from restaurants. But also a number of retail businesses and again, are pretty close to 50/50, although slightly leaning toward the keep it, keep the closures going. So I think that that's a useful data point for the council. It was not intended to be anything more than that. And again, it's something that we suspect will evolve and, and hopefully we can demonstrate through whatever further actions the council authorizes. That will continue to, to build some support and certainly have had appreciation from the business community overall. And, and particularly recognizing that there are trade-offs in the downtown area. On the parking topic, as Ms. Tanner, I think, pointed out, you know, again, as a part of our monitoring, we're also tracking. Spaces and spaces allocated to parklets or the closures are not available to the public. So that information we know is of interest to our neighborhood in the surrounding areas. So that we have a sense of, you know, what has been taken out of the inventory of parking available. So we are tracking that there at some point where there has been some discussion of the cost associated with it. As noted, we do not charge for that space on, in normal times, and this is anything but normal times. For construction, if a construction project, we're taking parking out of use, that the, the. Standard rate is $25 per day per space. And so that could give you a sense of the value of that space allocation. But again, these are anything but normal times. And at some point, should this program continue, I suspect the council will want to have some discussions of how to cover costs. If this were an extended circumstance in which parklets were to be. An allocation of public space for the extended future. Again, that's not something we're proposing now, but acknowledging that there are costs and there are models for recouping costs for that allocation of public space. So just to note that. And then finally, just on the topic of branding, as Ms. Tanner pointed out, summer streets is no longer going to be operable as a, as a brand. That is, is one I believe is traceable back to Councilmember Niss as an early suggestion of what to call this thing. When summer was barely summer. And so I think it has been an extremely successful name for it, but I will, Megan will hate me for this, but I'll throw open the invitation. For ideas on what we will call the fall-winter version. And potentially, well, we'll see how long this lasts, but certainly having activated outdoor spaces is in everyone's interest. So hopefully we'll come up with a branding tag that works for all. So with that, Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And so just to hit your thinking caps for a good name for our program, if you're so interested, interested to my colleagues. Councilmember Niss, I see your hand. Is it a quick question or should we go to the public?
I think go to the public.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's please go to our members of the public who wish to speak on this item. And if the clerk would please help me with that.
Any member of the public that wishes to speak on the city streets item, please raise your hand. At this time, we have, it looks like seven or eight members. Our first member is Cedric de la Bougerrière. And you have two minutes, Cedric.
Hello, thank you, council and staff. Thank you for acting quickly to enact the summer streets program. The program is successful. The comments are overwhelmingly supportive, including many asking for it to be made permanent. It seems to me that the opposition is mostly from businesses, is mostly from those who are not on a closed street. Who report their business reduced by people going to the closed section. So the solution is not to end the program, but rather to expand it to the side streets and other areas of the city. The pandemic is here to stay for the foreseeable future. So I encourage you to extend the program beyond 2020, December 2020, which is just around the corner. By extending it at least another year, it will enable restaurants to plan and invest for the longer term. What can restaurants, businesses in the city do to facilitate outdoor dining and shopping, et cetera? Into the colder and winter, winter months. Maybe we need high awnings or perhaps awnings stressed, stretched between buildings high above the diners. So there is protection from the elements while not creating closed spaces for germs to concentrate. Or possibly blowers of warm air that both heat and purify air or other solutions to make this work safely in the winter. I would encourage music to be kept at a low volume so that people are not forced to talk loudly and closely to be heard over the din. I support the concept of buffer space between diners and walkers and bikers. And clearly does delineated area for bike pad traffic wide enough to allow social distancing in these modes. And then finally, some restaurants are at 20% of pre-COVID, COVID business levels, but still 100% of their rent and other expenses. So what additional steps can the city take to increase their revenue or reduce costs? Perhaps we need rental forgiveness and eviction protections extended to locally owned businesses. Coupled with the program to reduce or defer property taxes and mortgage payments for landlords. Or maybe grants to enable businesses to make investments in the outdoor dining or subsidized mass production of the elevated parklets, et cetera. Thank you very much.
And our next speaker is John Schenk. John, you have two minutes.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Fine and council members. I'm, I, I'm sorry, but the staff report was quite rosy. The gentleman who just spoke, again, quite rosy. I think if we, if one only looks at the, the fun dinnertime activity for restaurants. Closing this, closing University Avenue has been wonderful. But the reality is, and staff knows this, we heard it this to this week, we heard it last week in the Zoom meetings. That the other retailers, non-restaurant retailers are absolutely suffering because of the closure. And it's, it's very difficult to, you know, really be playing Sophie's Choice here with which retailers get the support. I think the, the prospect of kind of playing whack-a-mole with street closures as restaurants are struggling and voice their struggle. And then the city thinks, oh, well, we can close another street and close another street. And we know already the costs and. You know, but when we do get into fall and winter and it's not as wonderful outside. You know, evening, outdoor dining is not going to happen. And the retailers, we would hope would backfill and be a, an attraction. For the public, for shoppers, get some sales tax revenues, they'll be dead by then, they're going to be gone. And then where will we be? The, the real focus should be figuring, figuring out how to maybe redesign the street. Narrow drive aisles and expand parklets so that we still have the, the cars that can come to visit the other retailers. And support all the retailers with some added retail space, but not making it a zero-sum game for just restaurants. The other thing I'd love to see us focus on is the retail zoning, the downtown zoning ordinance. As we're going to have a lot of vacancy in the near future and we need to expand our very narrow definition. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Our next speaker is Todd Burke. Todd, go ahead.
I'm trying to unmute. There, there we go. Hopefully it'll stay unmuted. Hi there, Todd Burke here. I live on California Avenue. And so far, the project on California Avenue seems to have, and I'm actually standing on Cal Ave right now. It's gone extremely well. I appreciate the city's ability to do this quickly. And provide a bit of an outdoor experience for residents in the neighborhood. I know Rob George and the other folks have done a fantastic job. Helping out and facilitating. But I think the, there are a number of different. Things that need to get done to help other businesses that maybe aren't on the main drag. I, I know. For example, I want to see Reposado somehow figure out a way to be opened and a few of the other restaurants on the side streets. That are, they're struggling and I, I really think that it would be great if we could figure out a, a bit more all encompassing plan. To assist. So I just wanted to say thanks. My neighbors really appreciate it. And you know, whatever else we can do. So thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Our next speaker is Rob Fisher. Rob, go ahead. You have two minutes. Rob, you may need to unmute from your end.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Wrong, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, good evening. I am a restaurant owner. I own three restaurants in town. None of them on University Avenue. I am fortunate enough to have one parklet on Emerson Street, but I have two other restaurants, one of them which has 150 seats. And I can barely get 20 seats outside on the sidewalk as it is. The numbers for a lot of us don't add up. When you help, just call it 15 restaurants. And you have 350 in town, when you divide 15 by 350, the percentage is awfully low. I took the opportunity to go around and do a petition drive. And I sent it to the city clerk and also the city manager. I don't know if it made it to the city council or not. But also agree with John Schenk that a lot of the retailers are just dying. I had an opportunity to talk to a number of them and have them sign the petition. Also some restaurants and a lot of restaurants on the side streets. And there's got to be a way to make this more fair to everybody. You know, you close half of Ramona and you have rest, one restaurant has 54 seats, another restaurant has 72 seats outside. And I can barely get 20. And you know, the parklet seems to be the fairest thing for everybody. You can open the streets back up, everybody wins. But this whole thing and to, to say that you, now you want to extend it to the end of the year, it's just, you're just going to put us out of business. I mean, that's the bottom line. We really need to, to figure out how to level this playing field. It's crippling. It's just crippling for, for, for me personally. And I know it is for other retailers and other, some other restaurants as well. You know, you can let a car be parked on the middle of Hamilton for a month, but you can't open the street up for a restaurant.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Eisenberg.
Hi. Hi, sorry about that. So I am calling first of all to say. Appreciation for how amazing the city streets program has been. I just want to say that it is so nice not to have cars on university or on California Avenue. The air is better, I can hear myself think. And it's, I don't fear that I'm going to be hit by a car any second, my dog and I, as we walk down the street. But the problem here is that there are certain callers that are coming in and calling in and not identifying for whom they're speaking. With all due respect, John Schenk, last time he called in, he identified himself as a big landlord. To businesses on University Avenue, he didn't do that this time, but I assume that's still his role. Last time he called to speak on behalf of his, of his restaurant tenant, saying that they weren't going to like this. But all of the restaurants actually do like it. Now he's speaking on behalf of the retail establishments, but he doesn't have one. I think it's really important that you all look at the source of the speaker and in this case. Always, the only criticism we have heard at all of this amazing, successful program is that it's not big enough. The other criticism we've heard is, which is one I completely agree with, in addition to the complaint that it's not big enough, is that it's. Is that it's extremely expensive for the retail and restaurants who don't have the benefit of the closed streets to build their own parklets. They point out that it costs a lot of money. I strongly believe that the city should be investing in these parklets for the retail and for the restaurants. And as to the landlords, like any who might call in. If they really want to make life easier for their tenants, their restaurants and retail. Might I suggest that they lower their rent? Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Rebecca. Our next speaker is John McDowell. John, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. I'm a resident in the downtown area. I've lived here for 10 years and I've just wanted to start by thanking the city and the city council for what I think has been a phenomenal job, really incorporating a lot of divergent concerns into the staff proposal. Um, I know that that wasn't an easy job from all of the interviews that I've done with, with residents and also with businesses in the area. Um, and I think the staff proposal is, is a really good start to doing what we can to deal with this really challenging times for everyone. I think that everyone understands that this COVID situation isn't going away. You know, anytime nearly, nearly as fast as we would like it. And the reality is that, um, we can't actually safely eat indoors. We can't, we, we can barely shop indoors. And having an opportunity for us to be able to feel a little bit more safe in our city is super important to all of us. So I really wanted to thank everyone involved and ask for the continued support of city council behind expanding access for all of our businesses. One, one thing I, I think I would just briefly throw in some comment on is I'm very confused by some of the comments that are made by some of the previous speakers. Someone mentioned that retailers don't support this, that, that's confusing to me, given how widespread I've heard support from retailers on University Avenue. I've heard it from a number Palo Alto Bicycles is extremely supportive of the program. Forever Flawless and it, there's a good list of, you know, five to 10 that are, that are very pro the street closure on University Avenue. So I think that that data is somewhat un- unclearly sourced. Um, and I think, you know, the other argument that I just wanted to comment quickly on is this idea that we should shut down street closures for University Avenue to quote, level the play, playing field. And I, I really think that what Palo Alto needs right now is an idea of expanding to do whatever we can for all businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our next speaker is Ross Mayfield. Ross, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Ross Mayfield. I'm a Palo Alto resident and native. Um, I've had the benefit of being active on this issue in particular since the crisis has started. Uh, I'm not alone. There's a petition on change.org where there's 2,600 people who have voiced support for the program, not just residents, uh, but also business owners. I've been actively taking a survey of businesses to kind of track how revenue has progressed. And there's a couple of findings that stand out. The number one to me is right now we're at, uh, the average restaurant or retailer has 60% of their customers being Palo Alto residents. Reportedly, prior to COVID, it was 30 to 50. Right now, there's a lot of concern that I truly feel not, I mean, look, the program is a success definitively for California Avenue. For the folks on University Avenue and beyond that for restaurants who have invested to expand their table space outdoors. Some of them face different constraints than others, but there's a direct correlation with how many tabletops are out there. Uh, are the ones that are able to drive more revenue and in particular, the ones who hustled during the crisis and actually stayed open to let people know they were open, making the rapid shifts that they have to for things like takeout. And then rapidly pushing out into the street, even if it's just into the sidewalk, if that's the opportunity. I believe in entrepreneurs, if you give them space and you give them time, they're going to make the right investments for their business. That's going to end up being not just good for the business, but will help save their downtowns. I, I do hear however, that unfortunately, a lot of people are engaged in kind of a zero sum thinking, a fear that somehow if somebody else is getting more street space, that means it's taking away from me. I don't believe that's the case. I would encourage the council to think of a longer term period to enable more investment and promote more to drive more people to come to Palo Alto downtowns as a destination before they go away.
Thank you, Ross. Our next speaker is David Epstein.
Yeah, hi. Um, thank you again for the counsel that, uh, I appreciate the, the work that you've done so far. I want to support some of the, the, the previous speakers that, uh, really have, have kind of said that this is not a zero sum game, that, that the goal should be clearly to increase traffic in the downtown area by opening up streets again to cars. All you're going to do is reduce the traffic again, and that's not going to help any side streets as well. So like Ross just said, um, you, you don't want, you don't win by, by making the, uh, you know, the old joke of, uh, I have a broken arm, please God, make my arm like the other one and you break the other one. And that's not the, that's not the way to do this thing. This should be increasing for everyone. And the way you increase it for everyone is to, to get these, uh, keep the, the University Avenue closed and increase the traffic, um, but the, the person traffic and the bicycle traffic in there. The other thing I would like to ask is that, um, uh, that, that the city consider the one-way streets for Hamilton and, um, and Litten. And the reason for that is to increase the parking because as we do drive traffic for people to come and stay, uh, what you don't want to do is have parking get impacted in any way. And I heard a couple of comments about the 25% open should be kept open. Let's get ahead of the game instead of being behind it and, uh, and being reactive. Let's be proactive. Make those one way, which increases the parking by doing, um, slanted parking or diagonal parking on those things. And I've put, I've put a presentation together before, and I know that some others have put that before. Uh, that'll also help, um, on, in front of City Hall where the Black Lives Matter is. Both those lanes could be in one direction and increase in the traffic. So please, uh, keep this going, um, and, uh, drive more traffic. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker is Yvonne Sadowski. Yvonne, go ahead.
Hey, good evening, everyone. This is Korka Sadowski. I'm using Yvonne's computer. I'm a resident and a registered voter here in, in Palo Alto. And I was, I was born in Europe and, um, lived here for, I've lived in Palo Alto for seven years now, but I want to tell you what, what's happening here makes a lot of sense. You know, there was a comment saying it looks like Europe. I totally agree with that. I, I, I think that's really what's beautiful about, about the program happening here. So, so yeah, I hear a lot of conversations around businesses and restaurant and retail and more space, less space. That's great. And, and it is indeed very important, but I, I think what this program is all about is, is to put people back in the center of the city. It's about, it's about people. The city is about the people. The street is about the people. Not cars, no businesses, no retail, you know. It's about the people. The street belongs to us. We have a beautiful, incredible weather. We have all the attributes that we need to make this a true success, true success. I live in Barcelona, in, in a lot of different places. We can, we can make that even nicer than over there. So that's all I have to tell you. I, I think, you know, we need to own, we need to own this, this thing. We need to take the pavement off, add some trees in the middle of the street. Let's own this thing. We can do, we can start with a couple of streets. And that would be very nice. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for this beautiful program. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Our next speaker is Jordan Nari. Jordan, go ahead.
I appreciate you very much for the time. I represent Rangoon and Burb Marubi and Walburgers here in Palo Alto. So far, I mean, I, I completely understand with everybody who's off University Avenue and their perspective. And, um, you know, I think Rob said something that kind of hit home where, you know, it's putting, putting us out of business, but honestly, I feel like we're all going out of business anyways. I mean, it's been really challenging. You know, given, given this opportunity has been really great. You know, we've seen 30% to 40% max sales increase from when shelter in place started. But I mean, at the end of the day, it's not always going to be good enough, you know, uh, considering the high rent and everything we are going on around us. So I mean, we, we definitely appreciate the opportunity. We're happy to. The biggest thing for us is we've been able to give people a great experience and is I love talking to the tables at night and hearing about how they're, um, they're out finally and they feel good and they feel alive. So that's what we, we got in our industry for. So that, for that opportunity, we are grateful. Um, you know, if, if we could extend it, it, it could help and hopefully it keeps growing and it could spread around Palo Alto to the off streets and you know, Reposado can serve their great food out and to more tables, that'd be great. So the more you guys could do to help us, we'd appreciate it. So we could serve the people of our community. So that's it. You have my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jordan. Our next speaker is Evan Hughes. Evan, go ahead.
I'm Evan Hughes from the Cool Planet Working Group at the First Presbyterian Church of Palo Alto at CalPur and Lincoln. Our group urges the continued, uh, closure and the enhanced bicycle parking in order to encourage pedestrian and bike traffic and discourage automobile driving. The reason is of course to avoid fossil fuel emissions that, that warm the planet. Our purpose is education and action on preventing catastrophic climate change. So that's why we have a perspective on this. We believe that these places for dining, shopping and, and doing business will be more attractive to Palo Alto residents will help build, build community and therefore residents will be do more of the shopping and dining downtown or California Avenue in town instead of at more distant locations. So basically, we want to avoid climate change and pedestrians and bike friendly measures such as this with fewer cars are what we're supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Our next speaker is Michael Eckwell. Michael, go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you very much. First, I just wanted to thank, uh, the city council. Uh, the city manager, the staff has been doing a great job, uh, with the city streets program, summer streets. Uh, this is just basically, I think all of our colleagues would tell you, it's just been a lifeline for our businesses. So, uh, we support the continuation of the program. As you know, obviously as long as the, the shelter in place is maintained, uh, we need that outdoor dining. But we also need to do something in terms of longevity of the program. So we just saw and I think that if you surveyed every other restaurant, um, in the area, uh, last week when it was cool on, I think Tuesday and Wednesday. Uh, our sales were definitely affected. And, uh, what we're trying to do right now is basically survive. So some type of program that would actually let, allow us to do, uh, parklets or a more extended type structure using electricity, using some type of heating outdoors is going to be necessary as the, the weather changes. So, uh, that is incredibly important to us. We'll chime in tomorrow at the meeting with the city manager's office. Uh, two other quick issues that we would like to bring to your attention is number one. Uh, the tax concern with, uh, changing commercial properties. Uh, I know that this is kind of not a popular topic right now, but this would crush our business. And you know, we've just coming up on celebrating our 23rd anniversary and hope to make it a little bit beyond that. So if, uh, if that went into place, I mean, we would be looking at, you know, probably our property taxes going up 10 times in a triple net situat- situation. So thanks very much. Please extend the program and we appreciate the support of the city and the community.
Thank you, Michael. And our next speaker is Taverna. Taverna, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Thanasi Pasqualidis and my business partner, Hakam Bala.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity.
Uh, we own Taverna Restaurant here downtown Palo Alto. Can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, we own Taverna in downtown Palo Alto here right across from Whole Foods. First and foremost, we'd like to say thank you very much, uh, for the opportunity to speak, uh, for listening to our needs. Uh, when we did request, and we were some of the first two requests, these parklets, uh, extensions. We were listened to and Public Works and the building department did listen to our needs and we were granted a parklet. Uh, when we took over four parking spaces that really, really, uh, transitioned our to-go operation into a full-fledged outdoor dining experience that, that has enhanced, uh, the downtown community and a great experience for, uh, for our guests. Uh, it's enabled us to reemploy the majority of our staff, uh, to enable us to continue revenue streams and to, uh, and to give back to our community. I would like to emphasize the fact that winter is coming. Uh, we need to really get together and think about exactly what's going to happen as soon as this winter changes. Last Wednesday night was our first cold evening and it tremendously impacted our bottom line. Tremendously impacted the ability of our employment opportunities. And if that continues, or if it ever continues, uh, we need to be prepared proactively to figure out exactly what we're going to do. I do have a plan of continuing our to-go operations. Uh, we're taking one of our kitchens and, and focusing solely on partnerships with DoorDash, Caviar, our own online platform, which I would encourage other restaurateurs to do the same. Uh, that does increase and create revenue streams to employ. Uh, once again, this is not enough time. We need rapid approvals, please. Please listen to our needs, rapid approvals. Winter's coming. We need a roof on our parklet. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Judy Kleinberg.
Thank you. Thank you. The Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce supports the staff recommendation to extend the street closures program through December this year and the parklet program through Labor Day of next year. With the predictions of the recession continuing through at least the end of this year, it makes sense to continue to help businesses attract customers. And especially to compete with online buying. Key to the success of this program has been parklets that are essential to the financial ability of restaurants to reopen during the prohibition of indoor dining. Extending the permit period will make the parklet construction expense more financially feasible for more restaurants. The chamber is concerned about the viability of side street businesses, especially restaurants that have asked the city to enact strategies that will help them attract customers to their businesses. So we support the city's efforts to extend the street closures in ways that help those side businesses. We're gratified that some of our suggestions, such as designated drop-off pickup areas have been instituted. And we want to reiterate our request for sidewalk signage and related marketing that would inform incentivize pedestrians to leave the main avenue and patronize side street businesses. Before the holiday buying season begins in a couple of months, we ask that the city turn its attention now to the retail sector and create specific strategies to support retail businesses which were already suffering due to online purchasing before COVID ever happened. The experiment of street closures and pedestrian zones may not be perfect, and there are respected business leaders who are strongly in opposition to the closure of university at least. But so far, we haven't heard any better strategy and the city and resident created surveys both seem to reinforce the residents enthusiasm for the program. What the city is doing and listening to concerns and making modifications is an acknowledgement of the benefit of boosting the community spirit and building community as well as business success. Strategies that support more businesses should tip the scales in favor of positive outcomes for the greatest number of businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Our next speaker is Stefan Heck. Stefan, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you, mayor and council members. And thank you to the city staff for the thorough analysis in your report. You spent the time to gather feedback and facts to support residents, retailers and restaurants. I want to talk a little bit about the counter arguments you've heard tonight. Essentially three. One is it's not fair to those not on university. It's essentially an argument that says inaction is better than saving as many restaurants as we can. It also forgets that there's 60,000 Palo Alto residents. It also forgets that there's sixty thousand Palo Alto residents who need a safe space to walk, to eat, to shop, while we still have aerosols that are spreading COVID in any kind of confined space. Second argument is essentially doom and gloom. Retailers will die, so please don't do anything to change. I don't want to minimize at all that businesses will close. Our economy just shrank by twenty percent. There will be massive adjustments. We're all seeing it in our lives and our businesses. I'm a CEO here in Palo Alto. I talked to my fellow CEOs, dozens of them, and we coordinate on our strategy for reopening our offices. The reality is we can't bring any of our employees back until we have a vaccine. And you see the university making similar decisions, bringing back only half its students. Most of us will not reoccupy our offices until next June is the expectation today. Nobody really knows when the vaccine will be here. So if we're going to have downtown survive, it's not going to be based on office workers or tourists. It's going to be based on making it attractive to locals to, to eat there, to shop there and to enable everybody to have outdoor space and parklets, whether on university or off. The last argument you've heard is that we need more cars. So those cars can shop for accessories downtown. It's a bit of an outdated model, seems to stem from nineteen fifty's. Cars don't shop anymore. Phones do. People book online, they pick a destination online and they shop online. So let's hear a plan that actually works. We need to market Palo Alto more online so that everybody, retailers, restaurants, everybody downtown and off the main streets can benefit.
Thank you, Stefan. And our final speaker is Mark Cockhab. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name.
That's all right.
I believe you need to unmute.
Hi.
There you go.
There we go. This is actually Megan Cockhab. Mark unfortunately is not here right now. Um, as final speaker, uh, I would like to thank council. I would like to thank all the wonderful people who have been working very hard to put together the summer streets. This is something that they pulled together very, very quickly. As a business owner on a side street, I can tell you more than Mr. Mayfield or Mr. Epstein or Mr. Nari what it is like to own a business that is suffering. Um, I understand that closing university is wonderful for pedestrians and bike riders and the neighbors like to walk their dogs. And it's great for those businesses on University Avenue. But it's not great for us. Um, we are down at least twenty-five to thirty percent than when we opened our original first couple of weeks for outdoor dining. Um, I do keep hearing parklets, parklets. We need to get our parklets going. We were one of the first people to do parklets. And I do truly feel that if all businesses were given a parklet, even if it's going to be a plank style or if it's going to be a step down, if everybody was allowed one and we all went that route, we get good heating, we get good covers on them and we do it properly, this will bring people to town. Um, having people out in the middle of University Avenue when it's cold without covers, without any of that, that's not going to be it. We need to be a cohesive unit. All of us get parklets, get them looking beautiful, get some music downtown, get it fun, get it organized instead of looking hodgepodge. I'm not saying that the city meant to help some and hurt others, but that's kind of what's going on right now. And I know all of us aren't going to survive, but we have to do our best and we have to take care of each other. And we all need to be safe. And I think that parklets are the answer to downtown Palo Alto's problems.
Yeah, and that was our final speaker.
Okay, um, thank you so much. Thank you to all our speakers. Uh, I think I speak for all of us when I say it's, it's great and novel to hear from the business community and such large numbers. We, we really appreciate that. Um, so we now return to council. Uh, let's do a round of comments and questions. Then we can maybe do motions if, if we need to after that. Councilmember Niss.
So and actually, I would make the motion if this was the time to do it, but I'd be delighted to when the time does come. So there are a number of comments that were made by people who just spoke, um, especially the last woman who said, what else can the city be doing? And I hope that is something we are thinking about. For me, it's such irony, after years of discussing what it would be like to have either Calab or University Ave closed that the reason it got closed was this incredible virus that we're all dealing with. It's just amazing. And we don't even get to experiment in many ways because the virus, our reason for being closed or open, depending on how you look at it, is, is indeed something that we don't have a choice about. So we are, we are stuck with a situation that I think is, um, very admirable, but also, so this is going to be long-term. Somebody mentioned some time ago that, and I have been in on most of the calls that Calab and University Avenue have done once a week in the afternoons. But as somebody mentioned, we're a town of sixty-seven thousand. We used to swell to a hundred and fifty thousand during the day. We cannot sustain what is happening, even though some of it is very good on a long term. When Google announces you don't have to go back to work until next summer, a lot of those people, Google people, Facebook people and so forth, ate in the downtown. They were a number of the people who really helped maintain the downtown. They, they, they've gone at this point. Um, another thing and, and an answer I'd like from one of you is, have we looked at other cities to see what they're doing? Is there something we can emulate? Is there something we can, we can learn from? Mountain View is very lively in their downtown area, which is just one particular area in, in general. Um, Sunnyvale has done their best with Murphy Street. And, um, Redwood City has, has been hopping lately as well. Um, our city attorney could speak to that. So are there other things we could be doing? So I walked University Avenue this morning and there are some restaurants that have really gone all out. And so as you look down the street, you spot them. And they are some of the restaurants that are doing well. So I'm pretty sure they paid to put up their lights and put out their green carpeting, their awnings and so forth. But perhaps we need to have an overall look at our, at our now closed streets and say, what can we do as a city to make this work even better for them? Because it's without question, when it's working well, it's, it's a great idea. So what I would say is let's look further at how we make this inviting. I know when Calab first started and, and I had my first lunch in the middle of the street, I felt kind of vulnerable sitting there. Um, so as we add more plants, as we add some flowers, as we add that kind of sort of dressing to a street, it begins to look far more appealing and you'll continue to go there on a regular basis. We've got a great challenge. We've also so far, I think, had a good, a good outcome, a good product. Stefan, I heard you talk about, um, you know, people love to get out and, and walk down the street. So, you know, this is sort of like, we got a lemon and the virus, we're making lemonade by closing our streets, making it appealing. Um, and I, I think, you know, congratulations to staff. I know how hard you've worked and you kept at it throughout the summer. And what we're going to call it from now on, I don't know. We've, we've got to come up with a great new name. So maybe we should have a contest and have people in the community come with some, some, some thoughts and some guesses. Thank you, Adrian.
Thanks, Councilmember Niss. Next, I have Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. Um, yeah, I echo all of, uh, my colleague, uh, Councilmember Niss's, um, comments. Um, I want to just say a few things about, um, the report we received. Um, ask a few questions and then I just have one or two suggestions. Uh, I greatly appreciate the, um, the effort to gather data and provide it as a table so, um, we can see all those numbers. Thank you. Thank you for doing that, including the utilization on parking. Uh, appreciate that. The stakeholder engagement has really been extraordinary. Um, I took a break from the bi-weekly Zoom calls over the July break because had a lot of other things going on, but, um, uh, it, it really has been an extraordinary outreach and I think that's reflected in the new connections that are formed between staff and the business. Um, I found it interesting, um, that thirty-seven percent of the people said they walked to California Avenue or University Avenue. I don't think that's our normal percentage for how people get to, um, a restaurant um, or retail. So that suggests that, um, we might have opportunities in other regions or we might, you know, need to think about how to encourage people to ride their bikes or wearing their masks or whatever. Um, but that, that, that particular data point stuck, stuck out for me. Um, in terms of the timeframe, I, I really don't think there can be much debate that it needs to go through next summer. Um, people have brought up the reasons already, you know, when we might get a vaccine, large employers, um, changing when people will come back to work. Um, Stanford and also PAUSD frankly, and how their operations will work. Um, and then on, um, questions, um, there was some reference both in the, in the staff report and then tonight, um, to rent, um, commercial rent. Is Project Sentinel residential only?
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Um, the, we do refer, we have had some, some questions from some, um, commercial tenants about how to have mediation with their landlord and have referred them to Project Sentinel, of course, if both parties are willing to participate.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Tanner. I'm happy to hear that. Um, and I think that's a, that's a fruitful area. Um, I know there have been a wide range of experiences with various landlords and, um, you know, I think, uh, I think mediation is always, always a good first step. Um, and then finally, I think whether it's, um, plants or even, shall we say, small trees, um, in, uh, containers or a music program, um, again, that would be, you know, appropriate volume, um, or a rotating art collection, some way to activate those spaces that is, um, both natural and creative, uh, would add, I think, to our collective experience, which isn't just about eating and drinking and shopping, um, but which is about, you know, our opportunity to gather, which is, is so limited. Um, so those would be in my, I can't remember what your, the third category, like, uh, comments about, uh, things we might want to do moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, I see Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yes. Echo previous two comments. I will repeat them. Uh, some quick questions. Um, the staff presentation said that there were two applications for parklets on private parking lots. But I, I know I've seen probably seven or eight parklets in town and country itself. Um, and they're very low cost or simply plastic traffic barriers. So are, are those unpermitted or are those part of the program?
Yeah, at this time that the staff report was written, we were working with them to make sure they had the plans submitted to make sure that the traffic flow was still being maintained. So we're working with that, that landlord on them. They were some of the first to throw up those barriers even before, um, council took action. So just making sure that it's all kind of properly permitted and, and, and that, um, there's no, uh, risks to those folks who are dining or shopping there. So we've been with that landlord.
Do you know what those cost? I mean, it looks like it's easily under a thousand dollars a parklet.
Cost of those parklets, yeah, it's probably very low. Um, it would depend partly for the water filled barriers if they had those already because of construction or if they rented those, um, and, and kind of the long-term rental cost might be the highest piece of those parklets.
Um, instead of specific dates, did, did staff consider just tying this to conditions like basically allowing parklets while we're under emergency declaration, for example? Seems very hard to pick specific dates.
Yeah, we did pick that. I think that's still challenging for a business to know if they should or shouldn't make a large investment because then the date is, is uncertain. Um, so if, then whether we tie it to the local county or the state emergency declaration, um, I think that for most businesses, a level of certainty to say, okay, have X dollar investment over X time, you know, hear what I think the return will be and, and can I swing that, um, investment?
The, the other thing is I asked, I went back, went back and found it. So this is more for Molly, but the contract is pretty silent about the removal of the parklets. It says there's no vested rights, but I, you know, we kind of rushed this out. I just want to make sure as we move forward, we're, we're thinking a little bit more forward. So, you know, is there any obligation to return the street to its prior condition? You know, who's responsible if we need to do a utility repair that's like under a parklet? You know, is the city liable for that cost? Is there any cap on that cost? Um, and who's responsible for removing a parklet kind of at the end of the program? You know, are these, are these things that we've thought about?
I'm going to let Rachel take the first shot at that. She's very familiar with the details. Um, and any unanswered questions, we'll, we'll figure those out and get back to you.
Yeah.
Great. Um, so in regards to, and I'll, I'll kill Holly Boyd as well as she is overseeing the issuance of these permits. Um, there is language in the standards and, um, and other requirements that they have to be, the parklets have to be removed. Any holes drilled into the sidewalk or relates to the curb or to the street for some of the things like the soft tip posts and stuff have to be repaired with epoxy, um, that the city can give thirty days notice and the parklets need to be removed. Um, and I'll ask Ms. Boyd if she can fill in on other aspects of it, but I will say you know, there probably could be some refinements and making sure we're clear, especially if we look to like a year-long permit of just exactly what might happen over that year, to your point, in terms of repairs and other types of things. Generally, we don't allow parklets over, um, known access points to utilities. Um, obviously there are utilities running under areas and so, um, even if the parklet's not over an access point, there could be a need for repair, um, which we would hopefully able to either delay until after the parklet program expires or the pandemic is over hopefully. Um, or if needed, we would have to work out how to get that work done if it is, you know, absolutely needed to happen, um, you know, during the, the time when the parklet is there. Um, Ms. Boyd, did you want to add anything to how the parklet removal and permit things, um, work in the chart?
Sure. Uh, this is Holly Boyd, Assistant Director for Public Works. Uh, yes, the encroachment permit was meant to be application, very simple document. It does reference section twelve, twelve, zero, one, zero of the municipal code, which, um, goes into more detail about parklets must be removed at request of city manager. If, uh, they don't, if they aren't removed, they, uh, the city will remove them and then, uh, bill the restaurant or applicant, whoever, uh, the cost for the removal. And as Rachel, uh, said, um, most, none of the parklets are allowed to cover up a utility vault. Um, just because we know we need access to those, especially the utility department. Most of the ones we find in the kind of the parking spaces are typically communication ones, but still, you know, we have a lot of, um, AT&amp;T, uh, private, uh, utilities that need to get in there as well. So as a requirement of our encroachment permit, they're not allowed to install a, a parklet over a utility vault.
Okay, thank you. Very thorough answers. So, yeah, maybe, maybe a chance to look at some refinements for looking at extending. I see the Assistant City Manager, just one quick thought on naming. I did see some of the survey responses. I do think like as you drive down El Camino, it just says Calab is closed. Uh, so maybe something simple like open for business would help. It's just, you know, it is a little confusing, you know, is it open or is it closed?
I've noted the exact same thing. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Um, Councilmember Snaka.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you staff for your, for your report and your work on this. And thank you to all the, all the people that called in. Uh, I have a few questions. So I know that, um, the city recently put a notice on a bunch of, uh, business doors, um, kind of like a survey. And, uh, I was just wondering, is that what's actually in our report or is that something separate?
That is separate and I mentioned earlier, uh, that this was the informal vote or polling of the actual open businesses that wanted to, um, identify themselves. So that information, um, just came together this afternoon. So happy to share it with the council again. It's just a snapshot in time.
Okay. Are you able to share it now or no?
Uh, uh, no, I think that would be a little challenging to try and pull together right now, but, um, just, is there a particular data point you're interested in?
Well, I, you know, I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to help some of these businesses survive, right? Because it's really tough as everyone, as everyone's been talking about. And so, you know, kind of what I'm interested in is like, so before and after, how are things? I imagine for like restaurants where the streets now, uh, closed to cars in front of them, this is probably better, I would assume. And maybe for the ones that, that, um, didn't have the benefit of having that, probably. And maybe for the ones that, that didn't have the benefit of having that, probably it probably didn't help them, I would imagine, but I don't know. I'm, I'm interested in like cell data. I know that some of the, some members of the public tried collecting some of this data. I think you guys also tried collecting some of it. But, you know, kind of what I'm looking for is, you know, how has this helped, right? And what's the spread of helping? And how many, I mean, how many of these surveys or votes did you get back?
Right. I, well, first, I don't think we collected any of that information in this round. And unfortunately, I don't have the numbers handy here, but the, I think anecdotally, which is really all we do have to base on, has been very mixed. And so to your point, you know, I do think we've had some businesses that have seen it very successful. And quite frankly, those are the ones that have had their activity reinforced and as a result have expanded outdoors. So it's pretty evident which ones are, are really have been able to capitalize on the situation.
So are these like retailers or are these just restaurants?
Primarily restaurants, yes. On the retail side, you know, we've had, I call it very mixed results. To say it was supportive, I, I would suggest it's hard to draw, I'll say, predominantly one way or the other. It's really been mixed in terms of generally supported or concerned. But really not even among those with concerns, not very specific issues. Again, you're directly related to the closure or really the, the environment, the retail environment overall, just a very broad mix of issues.
And, and for the restaurants that are on a side street where they didn't get the benefit of a closure, what has the feedback been so far, at least for what you've collected?
Yeah, again, I think anecdotally that it has been mixed. I, I would say generally more negative than those on university itself. And let's see, happy to invite Ms. Tanner or any of the other team members who would like to comment on, on what that feedback has been.
Yeah, I think that based on the survey data that we did have when we published the staff report, side street businesses were doing worse off in the downtown area than the ones that are located on university. Overall, like generally speaking, if you look at the median. But, you know, there's only very few restaurants that are doing like superbly, where they're at, you know, above fifty percent of their pre-pandemic revenue. So there are a lot of restaurants that are in the, you know, thirty and forty or twenty percent range. And if you compare the side street businesses to the median for Calab, it's actually a little bit closer there. So even though Calab is very successful, I think a lot more density of restaurants in a smaller area. And I think when I visit there, it seems to be very popular. Still, when folks are looking at the dollars and cents, the revenues are still quite down. And in part because the evenings are very good on the, you know, Saturday night, Friday night, but weekday lunches, which there's no more, shouldn't say no more, there's limited workers weekdays and weekday evenings even, happy hours, things like that. There's diminished business there. And so it's hard to overcome that, that decline in the customer base, I think.
Okay, so for, for retail overall, it's at best a push, right? And this goes for both university and Calab. And then for restaurants, where they had the closure, it's generally been positive, right? And then for restaurants that are on side streets, is that also a push or is it negative?
I'm not, Councilmember, I'm not exactly sure what you mean by a push, but if it is.
Basically about the same or, or I guess, I guess what I'm trying to understand is.
If I, if I could be very clear, I don't think anyone, well, with rare exception, businesses are not saying that it's even, you know.
Well, no, I'm, I'm asking about pre, I mean, I'm asking is pre street closure to. That's why I'm not asking about, I don't think it's fair to compare against pre-COVID. I think that's too much to ask for. What I'm asking is, is this a net benefit overall? After the closure, right? That's what I'm asking. Not, I, I'm not asking about, because I don't think that's, that's a.
Gotcha.
Compare that. Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Well, and I think, and again, I'm, I'm speaking anecdotally here, so Rachel certainly and others can, can chime in with more facts, but I, I suspect it's fair to say that among the retailers, none of them would say it's a push, that retailers are at best getting by and perhaps supportive from a community perspective. But I don't know that retailers have seen the closures as positive in any circumstances that, that come to mind. Again, not for their individual businesses.
So the closure, closure definitely hasn't helped the retailers is what you're saying.
I, I'm not sure I would do, be able to draw causality there, but you know, again, I'm just trying to, to connect the circumstance or the feedback we've gotten to the, the situations that we're trying to evaluate. So, so that's it. Yes, I, I think that retailers, we have not seen retailers reporting that the closures have been positive for them. Now, I will share that today, we even had a discussion of to what extent it would be possible for retailers to modify their hours to match the hours that the restaurants are seeing a great deal of business. And we got some really informative and valuable feedback, which is essentially to say that when, when people are in, in the evenings in particular, out for a meal, that they're looking for entertainment, they're not looking for sales, at least in terms of the small group of retailers that we talked to today. And, and as such, when retailers have over the years experimented with extending their hours in order to be available when there's a evening peak of, of pedestrian activity, that it really hasn't reflected itself in sales. And so that was informative. And, you know, again, wouldn't presume for us to, to understand that, but it is a part of the dynamic.
And what about to, to the question about, so we, we did a closure of Calab and University, but for the side street restaurants. Are they doing the same as they did pre-street closure? Are they doing more? Are they doing less? Do you guys have a feel of that?
You know, I think anecdotally, again, that the reports downtown have been worse, that, that the reports that we've heard directly from restaurants on side streets have been that they, they feel that the closure has not helped them. And in some cases has hurt them. That said, you know, we have been continuing to experiment. And the Ramona closure this past weekend has received a positive response from the restaurants on Ramona. And the reopening of that short segment of university between High and Emerson, which allows now traffic to come up to Emerson. I think all the restaurants on Emerson reported that they have increased, they saw an increase in vehicle traffic as well as increase in parking on the parking lots in that area. So with only one weekend of experience, it's hard to draw a hard conclusion, but there was an increase in activity on those side streets this past weekend.
Five minutes.
Okay, I have more questions that I have to ask later. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ku.
Can I find out, so Ramona is closed between Hamilton and University?
For the half block between Ha- Hamilton and there's an entrance to the building and underground parking for the building at two fifty university, I believe it is. So it's that half block.
Okay. And what other streets in downtown side streets are closed? Are there any others?
Only university. There are no.
Only university and that small section of Ramona. And is there any side streets that are closed on California Avenue? I don't think so, right?
There are not.
Not, okay. Thank you. You know, some of the speakers said some of the seating is for restaurants for the street, some are seventy, some are. How do you determine capacity for these restaurants? How many to put out? How many spaces for them to use?
Thank you, Councilmember Ku. That's a great question. The restaurants are not allowed to put out any more seating than they are permitted to have in their restaurants. So that is the cap of the number of patrons they can have. And Public Works does work with them when they apply for their encroachment permit. So what's the layout? Where are they planning to put their tables and chairs? Both to make sure that everything is the right distance from each other for the social distancing purposes. And then also to ensure that, you know, for areas where there are multiple restaurants next door, that, you know, not one restaurant is taking over, you know, more space than, than would be fair to the other restaurants.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. So Mr. Fisher said that he had a petition that he submitted. Was that included or basically what was the question that was on that petition or what was the ask? Do you?
Actually, I just saw it during the meeting here. And so if it's useful, I do have this. Let's see. I think it's basically asking whether businesses were supportive. Let's see, so it's the statement of the petition and it has roughly ten or twelve, maybe ten to fifteen businesses listed. Since the closing of University Avenue for the Summer Streets Program has created a major hardship for restaurants and businesses. The hardest locations are on the side streets off of now closed university. While the idea was noble, helping a few, only to starve the others is a very dangerous position for the city to be taking. We are petitioning the city, the Palo Alto City Council to fully reopen the streets in downtown Palo Alto, not California Avenue, and return fairness and hope to all businesses at the end date of eight sixteen, twenty twenty.
Thank you so much, City Manager. I wanted to ask approximately, so there's a lot of great data here about the Summer Streets Program and how it works, but I was wondering, so approximately how much was waived in the fees and the, you know, encroachment permits and so forth that the city has kind of incurred? Or, I mean, that's certainly something that we, I, I would really like to know in these updates, you know, because obviously, you know, there's revenues or maybe even costs or expenses that we're foregoing. Do you have any idea on?
That's a great question. What I can say immediately, and I can maybe look it up in, in the between is that, you know, for all the permits that we listed, I think the twenty-two parklets, the, you know, fifteen and then eleven, you know, sidewalk enclosure permits, all those fees were waived. And I would say the parklet permit, you know, is, is would cost it at the summer, at the encroachment permit cost, but the parklet construction and inspection is much more than the typical review for tables and chairs on the sidewalk. And so I would have to look into that amount, but it is not insignificant. And I think, you know, pretty meaningful contribution the city has made to support those businesses.
Right. So if I might ask for our next update, perhaps that would be something to be included for us to know and itemized also, just so that, you know, we do know, we have an idea of what our contribution is to make these businesses successful. I don't know. I mean, is that something that requires a motion or is this something that staff can take back and add to this report out?
Yeah, it's certainly something that we can, we can add, I would say.
Okay, that's great. So besides the permits, are we paying for any of the flower pots or? I don't know what else is there that goes into making it look inviting and clean and I know there's the signage and also advertising, right?
Certainly, that, those are some of the things we have paid for. Any of the items such as, you know, flower pots, tables and chairs, any type of ground covering, those are all the restaurants that are putting in their time and energy. Some things the city has done, twinkle lights on the trees on Calab. We continue to do our street sweeping, which obviously is something that we did before. You know, staff to make sure that all the barricades are in place, were in place. I believe we rented a number of A-frames onto which we pasted and posted different signage. And so those rental costs are being incurred by the city as well as what we just discussed, which were the inspection fees. But a lot of the, I think, the placemaking aspects of the different locations, the restaurants have really done a great job themselves of enhancing how their, their locations look and feel.
And is there any governing in terms of how far they can go with all the enhancing? So is there, is there guidelines or some rules, you know, and how, how much they can put out there and?
Yeah, I would ask maybe Holly if you want to respond to that, to how we kind of limit things. I think certainly we have had some instances in our parklet program of people going beyond what is listed in the, what's allowable. And so we've been dealing with that. But I'm not sure, Holly, when it comes to flowers and other enhancements, how the encroachment permit governs that.
Right. So for the, the flowers and plants and enhancements, we aren't monitoring that as long as it fits within the kind of parameters, the layout of the parklet. We haven't been monitoring that. And as long as they meet the guidelines for accessibility on the sidewalk, we haven't really, Public Works hasn't been inputting on that when people do their parklets. Some issues that we have had is building over the landscaping strip and sidewalk, extending parklets and, and one case attaching to their existing structure, which is not allowed. We don't allow any building over the public sidewalk. The only case that we do allow it is in for scaffolding for construction. So that has been one of the limitations on some of the parklet installations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just as you make the transition, I do need to correct something I said. On the petition that was referenced earlier that I believe Rob Fisher circulated, I, that's what happens when I try to look at these things on the fly. I only saw the first page. It was multiple pages. So I think it was more on the order of thirty or forty signatures that were on the, that petition.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? I think Councilmember Phil Seth and myself are the only who haven't spoken on this round. Okay, couple of comments and question. So one, just again, thank you very much to staff. I, I really think this has been a tremendous and successful effort in Palo Alto. Something new and different and really suited to the challenges we have in this extraordinary year. And to staff, I, I hope to some degree, it's been a different, new fun project to work on. So really want to emphasize that. Can we go to slide six quickly?
Yes, let me just bring that up.
Great, thank you. So Councilmember Cormac mentioned one of the figures here about the act of transportation. So one, you know, kudos to staff for tracking this. I know we continue to do so. And a number of our citizen volunteers track similar and other economic metrics. I really think this is the program's success in a nutshell, right? Like, our residents are shopping at, at local restaurants and businesses. That was the point. We have gotten a lot of them to walk and bike. That is a good thing overall. Ninety-five percent of people had a great parking experience. I don't think we're going to see that on anything else in Palo Alto. And I know the city continues to monitor any potential residential parking impacts. So this slide for me is just really what it's about and why we should continue it. My colleagues have mentioned things such as music and art, planters and picnic tables, agreed with all that. If there are cheap, lightweight and, and kind of tactical things we can do to, to improve the experience, I would encourage us to do so. I think Councilmember Niss mentioned Castro Street and Mountain View. But Santa Cruz and Menlo Park has done a nice job too, a little bit more concrete barriers, flowers, pot, pot and plants, gives a nice ambiance. Of course, the streets are different. We need to do what's right for us. Do we have any data on any of the effects outside of downtown and Calab, like Midtown, Charleston, El Camino? Anywhere else in town looking at parklets or anything that kind of is in the theme or framework of this project?
Mayor Fine, we don't really have good data on that. And that would probably be an area where I would hope if we can spend some more time doing some outreach to those businesses, it would certainly be worth it to understand how they're adapting and varying.
What, what would it take to do that, actually?
The usual things, I think, time and money probably. But I, I think, you know, one of the challenges that this, not so much the programs presented, it's just the constantly changing nature of the pandemic. It does seem hard to kind of even just get our arms around Calab and downtown. That said, I think one of the themes we are hearing tonight is how to look up from those two streets and look both to other industries besides restaurants and look beyond to the other businesses in the city. And certainly something we, we, we should, we should focus on, I think.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I agree. And it's kind of gets into my next point, which is even if, you know, these projects on university and Calab are. even if, you know, these projects on University and Calav are safe, people want to return, they feel fun, it's a good vibe, that doesn't mean they're economically viable. And we've had a number of people talk about how there are certainly winners in this program, and a few businesses which, which may be losing out a little bit. And I think our next step is, as we hopefully continue these programs, how do we mitigate for some of those effects that may be hurting some of our retail businesses, some of the side streets, some of the areas in South Palo Alto that also support commercial activity? I think it was one of the speakers who mentioned, like, this isn't only about, you know, nice streets and, you know, European feel and biking there. It's also that, like, you know, we in Palo Alto all need to go and get food in a place to feel safe. So we should make sure that's geographically distributed. Quick question, somebody mentioned Hamilton and Litton. I know it's been floated for a long time, making that kind of a circulator with, you know, Hamilton going from, I guess, Alma to Middlefield, and Litton going from Middlefield to Alma. Is that realistic in the works and the plans, any, anything there?
I would say, unless it's happening, not to my knowledge, there's no active or work that's currently happening on that. I think in, in general, we would consider that to be a very major project in terms of doing it in a manner that is safe for the traveling public. And as such, you know, and given the nature of how tactical and reactive, quite frankly, this effort has been to date, hasn't really been looked at. This is certainly something that we'd want to talk to our transportation staff about, as to how best to even consider options in that regard.
Okay, thank you. And then a few more questions about supporting some of the retailer and restaurant businesses. One is, do we charge utility minimum fees for businesses that are closed? Like, some of the salons on University have been closed for, you know, months now. Are we charging them like a minimum hookup fee?
There are minimum, or what do we call it? Fixed charges is the term of our, for water and I believe gas. And so there are some basic fees that then usage is calculated on top of those fixed fees.
Okay, and do we have any estimate, like, how much those fixed charges are? Is it like $100 a month, or is it like $500 a month?
We did look at it, be happy to get that information for the council. I would say, relatively speaking, it's, it's, it's all relative again, but it's a small number, I believe, at most 100 or somewhere thereabouts.
Okay, and then the next question is, I've heard one idea floated a couple of times. Mr. City Manager, you and I have spoken about this, about a, call it a COVID or pandemic surcharge for businesses citywide to have the ability to tack on top of their bills, and they would be able to keep that revenue. So, you know, you go out, you buy your $10 pizza, you put a $10 or 10% COVID surcharge, you charge an extra dollar and you get to keep it. What does that look like and what would that be in terms of implementing it here in Palo Alto?
Yes, perhaps just to bring the council and others into the conversation, this is something that a few businesses had suggested very early on in our business roundtable outreach, that a surcharge, again, that's kept by the business, it is uniform to the extent that the city endorses such a surcharge. But again, it's retained, the city doesn't collect, there's no remittance to the city and distribution would be a way of creating kind of a level, again, playing field or a level expectation that this is a charge that being in Palo Alto that all consumers should expect to see. City Attorney and I did have a chance to chat about it briefly, and I think to the extent that it is a an endorsement by the city as opposed to a regulatory charge, I believe that's the appropriate distinction, then that's something that could be done relatively easily. And perhaps I ask Molly to chime in from there.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, yes, that's well put, and if the city wants to initiate an effort to describe that kind of an extra charge and endorse it and urge supportive local businesses, passing a resolution, that kind of thing is something that, that we could look at doing. It would then be local businesses who would go ahead and decide that they wanted to implement that for them, for their business and their customers. Other types of more regulatory requirements are more complicated, and those would require a longer conversation, both with our businesses and residents as well as with the council.
Great, thank you, and I see the Assistant City Manager. Just the line of my questioning for my colleagues is, there's only so much we can do with streets and kind of open space, and are there some ways that we can't necessarily address rents or minimum wage that we can get some amount of money back into the pockets of our, our business owners in Palo Alto? So I would be interested in that. Okay, I see three hands, so I'm going to suggest we have another round of comments and questions. I will let everybody know it's nine forty, and so we are hour and a half behind schedule, which is pretty much par for the course. So if we can keep these briefish comments and questions, and then we'll have a motion after that. Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your comments, I think, you know, for tonight, I'd like to just make some quick comments, like to separate the discussion between the street closures and the park, parklet construction. Overall, I think the street closures have been working well. It's been a great way to support kind of a select group of our local businesses. And so I think we're, several of us touched on, like, how do we be sensitive about helping all equally, it is a time to start thinking about nonprofits, retailers, senior isolation, and the other problems that we can potentially use outdoor space for. So I'd really like to see us start to branch out as, as we've got this program rolling, and thinking about other creative uses for city-owned outdoor space. I do think we need to continue monitoring traffic, as Mayor said, some, some residents are also, you know, tracking things. I think we're seeing fluctuations. It looks like we need to get Hamilton flowing well again, and if there's potentially some implications there with the mural. And so as we move forward in our efforts against racism, you know, I think we probably need to move beyond the mural, mural and onto other things. So, you know, I do want to point out, we're using public right of way, which is a taxpayer asset, and we are supporting a relatively small number of businesses. I think part of what I heard is that while people like it and it's helping, you know, it's still a small percentage of their previous business, and it's likely not, some of these businesses aren't going to survive. You know, I think Councilmember or Niss mentioned, you know, that that daytime population, without that large number of commuters, you know, our business environment has really changed, and we're going to see that. You know, you know, for my questions, you know, I do want to make sure that we have clear permits and that the city is really covering itself as we go. If we're going to extend these for a full year through Labor Day of next year, let's just make sure legally that we've taken the time to make sure that those things are solid. You know, I really do think we need to prepare for both best and worst case scenarios. And if a vaccine were to appear, hopefully, you know, are we creating some serious contention where retailers want, want the space, or they want the streets back open? So hopefully that's a problem we have if we get a vaccine early. One, one thing I thought about was, again, this idea of fixed states, do we, do we consider saying that the parklet is no cost while we're under emergency, but then we charge some value for it? If we, if we set it for a full year, but the emergency is not a year long. We could give certainty if people want to go for that period of time. But, you know, if a space is $25 a day or whatever the value is, maybe we trigger charging the value for the space on whether we're under an emergency or not. The other thing I really want is to emphasize again, well, another thing is, again, balancing intrusion in the neighborhoods. It's kind of symbolic, but decreasing the commercial RPP permits for each parklet created, it's not really equal, but I think it makes the point that we don't want to force parking into the neighborhoods. Finally, I just want to emphasize, I really think we need to continue to look at low-cost options. I think what Town and Country did is really illustrative, there's some high-end restaurants, some low-end restaurants, very low-cost approach. There was a company, VCG, that emailed the council, I called them, they're a Sacramento company. They are specializing in parklet construction, and they're serving clients around the Bay Area, so they're starting to standardize the manufacturing, they're driving costs down. They're focusing on a $4,000 attractive ADA compliant parklet. They said their goal is to support restaurants through a whole range, and they're talking about a total bill of $25 for two people to eat dinner. So, you know, we have to realize that it's not required to have these ultra-expensive parklets, which is the reason we're being given for extending to advertise these costs. And I think we do want to try to support a whole range of businesses, so I really would like to see us explore some of these lower-cost parklets, have those options approved, ready to go. So those are my thoughts, I mean, I think I'm generally going to be supportive of the motion tonight. I am not at this point in time really supportive of a permanent program, and I just, again, want to make sure that the city is protecting itself, maintaining its rights to reclaim this public property, and that we continue to drive down the cost so that restaurants outside of these two main areas could consider these options as well.
Thank you, Councilmember, well, I foresee Ms. Tanner.
Yes, I just wanted to respond to the Vice Mayor's question or discussion about the low-cost parklet. We did develop a, a set of guidelines for at-grade parklets, which essentially require, you know, some type of enclosure, you may, if you want to see one, Tuba. Near City Hall has one, they put up kind of some white picket fencing around their parking area. I believe they have some green turf down and tables and chairs in some of the angle parking spaces. So there's no platform there, and, you know, a little bit lower cost and easier to implement than the, the platform parklet option.
Thank you. Councilmember Niss.
So, as I mentioned a whole lot earlier, Mayor Fine, I would like to make a recommendation and move the staff report, which includes, number one, receive the report, number two, listed from A to Z, I'll read it if you'd like me to.
Hold on one minute, Councilmember Niss, we're still on comments and questions, but I will come back to you.
I'm sorry.
I think Councilmembers Tanaka and Koo still want to speak.
Be a culpa, okay.
No worries. Councilmember Tanaka.
Thank you. So just wanted to kind of finish up, so I had just a few more questions. So, um, one of the speakers mentioned that he felt that a low percentage of restaurants are actually being helped. And I guess I'd love to get the City Manager's take, is that, do you feel that's true, or do you think it's, it's more restaurants have been helped with disclosure?
Well, let's see, I have to admit, I don't have a feel for the entire universe of, let's say, restaurants even, citywide. I do think, you know, what we are doing is reflecting where we have a critical mass of restaurants that does allow, I won't use that term, a location that people can go to that is easily predictable. And so that's really been a key foundation on the street closure thing viable.
Okay. So, you know, so we're looking to close some of the side streets, we closed half a street so far, one of the side streets. And I thought what the mayor was saying, and also I think one of the public speakers, David Epstein, talked about, you know, perhaps one way. And so I, I guess, I realized, and you answered the mayor's question, that it's going to be very complicated to do that, traffic-wise. But I wonder if it might make sense to, for staff to kind of really think about, you know, because if you, if you make it one way directly, you could go down a one lane, and maybe one lane down the center, and then you can allow the restaurants, where there is what you call a critical mass of restaurants, to expand to the center lane, right? So we can't close on all the streets, because otherwise people can park, but, you know, perhaps, perhaps for streets that have some sort of critical mass, like you said, they could be considered to be one way. So I thought what the mayor talked about and what, what the public speaker talked was actually kind of interesting. I've actually heard it from some of the other restaurant owners and retailers I've talked to, so anyways, just wanted to, I realized this is not something we could do today, because this is going to be very complicated. And I think actually it's really important that we do this quick, like, whatever we do, we do it quickly, because as we've heard, a lot of people are really hurting, and they're hanging by their skin or teeth, so. You know, one, one, one thing to consider is, I know that on Birch, you guys tried it, right, on Calav? I'm not, not one way, but you guys tried closing it, but there was, anyways, maybe that's one area to be a candidate to consider, but I don't know, I think this, I think the traffic appears are more complicated, and you have to kind of figure out how, how would it really work? But, you know, I think, you know, for me, I'd like to see more, more restaurants and retailers helped. And, you know, it's hard, because there's a lot of, a lot of issues going on, a lot of structural issues going on. One of the other structural issues that I, I, I think we need to think about carefully is expanded uses, right? So I know that our downtown retail zoning ordinance, you know, has a fairly narrow definition of retail, and this may be a little bit more longer term, but, you know, a lot of people are, are being funded by PPP money, or, you know, like, perhaps rental deferrals, right? But that's only going to go on for so long, and we have the winter months that are coming up, right? So I do wonder, you know, I, and then this is probably a bigger discussion, is how do, maybe it makes sense for us for the downtown retail, for there to be expanded uses or expanded definition of what retail is. Because I think what's worse is we start having a bunch of holes, right, in our retail landscape, and that creates a lot of dead zones. And that, that creates, you know, there's a creative sense of place, it doesn't, it's not good for the community. So I think we have to think about, how are these holes that might result, get plugged, right? And so one other question I want to ask you is, an idea that's been floated out there is like the idea of having like picnic tables, where it's not tied to a restaurant, but, you know, maybe anyone can take, take out and go to that table, and so it's more of a communal, you know, table, right, that anyone from any restaurant could go to. Has, has staff considered that, and so where are you guys at on that?
Let's see, Rachel, feel free to, to jump in. I would note that that exists at Litton Plaza, to the extent that that's a common location. In general, I, I would lend the perspective that having the individual restaurants take responsibility for the tables and chairs and hygiene associated with that does benefit us all and not have that being a responsibility of the city. So with that, Ms. Tanner, anything to add?
Yeah, I would agree with that, I think the cleaning of the tables, which also directly is related to folks' level of comfort and safety sitting at the table is really important, and so, you know, I don't know that we would be able to maintain, you know, wiping that off in between each guest, for example, which is what the restaurants are supposed to be doing in, in between each diner, and so hopefully sometime in the future, that's something that we could do, you know, we'd have the luxury of things being better, but I just don't know how that would work out practically.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of how do we help people that don't have the luxury of having a parklet or any, or a large parklet in front of their, their place? So that's, that's what I'm just trying to think about. And you heard, I just want to talk about, you know, more sign, I think several people talked about more signage, more marketing, right? And, you know, we, we have some, a little bit of money set aside for COVID. Why not use some of that funding to really help boost, like, and I agree, I think the Vice Mayor or someone said that, oh, you know, it's just, it says the street's closed, so is it closed or is it open, right? So I think, you know, so there's some, like, marketing messaging that could be refined. But has, have you guys looked at, looking at some of that COVID funding we set aside, because it was kind of meant for this, right? To actually help us weather this severe storm that we're in? To do some marketing, right, to actually get, you know, drive traffic and make it, you know, create that sense of place, create the, have, you know, more potted trees or something like that, right, that, that kind of create, create, increase more withdrawal and, and, and traffic to that area.
I definitely think that's something that, you know, Megan Horgan Taylor is a tremendous and the newspapers, online, as well as signage, and so I know there's been efforts to get some additional banners and signage that are underway to address that, that issue of when you're on El Camino, driving by, you're like, oh, it's closed, what's going on? But the message is kind of, you know, reversing that it's, it's closed traffic but open to business. But the message is kind of, you know, reversing that it's, it's closed traffic, but open to business. So how to make sure that message goes and. You know, something that we can hopefully put some thinking together with businesses is, you know, upcoming holiday shopping season is important for retailers. And so how do we think about that as a time for them to shine and what kind of local um, marketing and encouragement can we do with our community to, to encourage people to? Um, get out and shop and, you know, or visit the website of their local business and, and go pick it up curbside. So I think there are some opportunities, um, even as weather changes for restaurant tours and outdoor dining, um, it may open up opportunities for others.
Five minutes.
Okay, um, I have a few more, but I don't know if there's another round, uh, there.
And council member Koo wants to speak, and then, then we should probably open it up to motions. Okay. Council member Koo.
Thank you. I just have a couple more questions. Um, one is, um. Has, has any of the other, um, in other areas of town, not just university and Calav? Is there, can, has there been, has there been any restaurants or businesses that's approached the city? About moving out into their parking lot or something like that, like in Charleston Plaza or Midtown? Um, south of Al Camino. Has any of those approached?
Yeah, we have had, um, council member, we've had two businesses who have applied for using their parking lot for outdoor dining. Um, and so those have been approved and they have their, you know, tables and chairs in there, of course, in the parking lot. Um, I would also note, um, the Stanford Shopping Center, because of its setup, businesses have been able to operate there. Um, in a different manner, not necessarily needing the parking spaces, but there is activity happening, um, at the shopping center. And um, as we noted earlier, Time Country has been also bailing themselves of outdoor, um, dining and retail. So, uh, as my earlier point, we hopefully we can get out to some more folks to make sure they know what the opportunities are and to see. What they're doing, if they're relying on pickup business, you know, how are they kind of faring during this time?
And you're still going to be working with um, some of the retailers and some of the other restaurant owners on the side streets. That's not. I mean, you still be working to find a way in order to help them. Five or have some business, right? Um, come up with different ways. So, um, then the other thing on the um, on the recommendations, item number C. Is to extend the expiration date to um, 2021 September. How, so how much of the reporting time, how mu- how, how soon would you be reporting to us? Or how often would you be reporting to council uh, as to how that program is going? I mean, uh, just to, so that I can expect.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, well, we certainly would plan, if the motion is passed, the resolution is going to be back in December. At, I mean, that'd be the latest. I'm sure we'll have updates in between, but come back with December, December for what do we do going forward? Um, with some of the programs, that will be probably an opportunity for a bigger update of data. And then one of the things we certainly want to do between, let's say, January and September of next year would be to discuss formalizing the parklet program for ongoing. Or if it's just going to be temporary. And so there could be some interim check-in points throughout that. Um, you know, winter and spring of next year around, how is it going? What are we seeing? Is it something we want to continue long-term or will it conclude, you know, in September of 2021?
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks, council member. Uh, okay, um, let's open it up to comments, questions and motions. Uh, and it's just shy of 10 o'clock. Uh, council member Ness.
So I will go back a page or two here and make the staff recommendation, which will be number one.
I'll second that.
Number two and number three. I think number two is self-explanatory. We are going to extend the temporary street closures. Um, and we are going to extend the temp- the temporary one on universities to include the block between Emerson and I. Extend the expiration date. And lastly, allow activities in addition to outdoor dining and retail to occur on temporarily closed streets. So what I would like to do is add some comments to um. What is number three, which is to provide comment and further direction on the program. So, um, first, what I would suggest is that. And I'm not sure what to call it, other than perhaps a series of field trips or calls to other cities. Which you may have already done, but if you haven't, do that so that we're, um, you know, we're benefiting from what's going on in other cities. Secondly, do we have, looking at, at city manager for this, do we have an Ombudsman program in place? Do, do our stores and restaurants and so forth know whom to call?
If they haven't, uh, then by all means, Kara Apple, who is now on special assignment to my office, is our, uh, point person, along with Rob George. Is our, uh.
Okay.
People.
Does she have cards that she passes out? Um, we ate last night, yeah, on University Avenue. And I could tell the woman who owned the restaurant didn't know really who to get ahold of at, at the city.
Well, we can remedy that.
Okay, through cards or some visits or whatever that may be. I, I hope that we are just as visible as we can be and, and supporting the restaurants and the retailers as we go forward. And as someone said, we, it's hard to believe we could be getting close to Christmas, but, or the holidays, but um, we actually are. And thirdly, what I would suggest is that we maybe, you know, make a part of this really enjoyable. And have some type, some type of contest for what we're going to name our long-term. Closures, openings, whichever way we may want to call them. So I quickly looked at Google. And there are a number of other, a number of other names out there. Um, Seattle's is called Stay Healthy Streets. Um, Berkeley has one called Burke Safe Streets. Oakland has Slow Streets. So they're all over the country, but what they all emphasize is safety and exercise as well as. As um, providing a, a different experience for the retailers and, and for the restaurants on that street. So I hope we can look at something like that and say, you know, this may go on for some time. Um, as I said previously, we've talked about doing this for many years, experimenting with it. Um, Seattle, by the way, has 20 closed streets. And as I recall, New York has had a regular program, and I think they call theirs. Um, it's was just on the weekends. It was called Sunday Streets. So lots of examples out there, just, you know, something somewhat lighthearted in all the serious business that we do. So, thank you, Mayor Fine.
Thank you, council member Ness. Um, I have two brief amendments, but just talking through this, uh, I think it's. Eminently the correct thing for us to do to extend this. Um, all of you have raised good questions, potential add-ons to this program, which I hope staff has heard loud and clear. I don't like any of the names you suggested, council member Ness.
Uh, you can come up with your own.
Maybe Open Streets or like the People's Streets. I don't know, something, but contest is not a bad idea. Um, so the two amendments I would like to make, and I'll make them as friendly, but if you don't accept them. Uh, so one is that we, I may need help from staff on this, is endorse the idea of a pers- of a COVID percentage. Percentage surcharge for local businesses, businesses. And so that is the brief idea we discussed, uh, where businesses will be able to put, uh. Some extra amount on their bills and residents and visitors would be able to pay for it. Um, I think that is a way to get cash in their pockets, and I think, uh, given the tenor and generosity of our community, I think a lot of Palo Altons would be happy to pay. An extra two, five, 10% at our local businesses to keep them afloat. And the second is, um, direct staff to come back with a retail support plan focused on vacancies and expanding permitted uses.
So, um, I'm very enthused about direct staff to return with the retail support plan. I think that's really important. Um, endorse the idea of a COVID percent surcharge for local businesses. For a while, we had a surcharge that was going on for healthcare. Is that one still being used?
Not aware of that.
Was that, are you? Does anyone else recall that, or was?
No, it was helped. It was helped. And I, I remember that it maybe only existed for a brief period of time. But as you recall, it's not on there now, correct?
I believe that's correct.
It was in response to minimum wage that, um, they started putting on a 4% healthcare. Essentially addition for their employees. So if.
Council member Ness, I, I'm not a, I don't, I'm not aware that that occurred in Palo Alto, although it may. It, it certainly did occur widely in San Francisco where businesses were required to. Um, to pay for living wage and, and a living healthcare, um, supportive healthcare program for all their employees. And many businesses chose voluntarily to identify that as a line on the bill. It, uh, as a way of educating consumers about the reason behind price increases. But that's really different because that was a required program. It was a regulatory requirement of the, of the city of San Francisco to those businesses. And this, so this would be a little bit different.
So regardless, that apparently is, is not continued on. If it did exist, or perhaps I saw it in some other city, but I believed it was here. So in that case, um. Adrian, how do you want to come up with the idea of what the surcharge is? Is it 1%, 5%? What, what are you thinking?
Probably going to take Mr. City Manager.
Yes, if I might suggest that that also be a direct staff to return. Uh, component, and we'll do some outreach as well as, uh, develop some options for you.
I, I hope that takes care of it, council member Ness. I, I'm not sure of the exact level.
As, um, the city manager suggested, which is essentially come back as it says with options.
Okay, um, would you accept these two?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I just think this is kind of expanding our local business support efforts. I talked through the COVID support percentage surcharge. Um, and as for retail support, we, we've heard pretty loud and clear that our program so far seemed pretty effective at supporting dine-in and take-out restaurants. Um, I want to make sure that we continue to support our local retailers as well, who may not be able to serve their clients on the street. But, but figuring out how do we keep those vacancies down and allow them to, uh, expand and change their businesses as needed.
And do we need to add a G that specifies some contact person, whether it's an Ombudsman or something like that, or do you feel that's covered?
I feel it's covered. I think we can do that. Just with staff and if, if we write the city manager again and just ask for something there.
But let's be sure it happens.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, thank you, council member Ness. Uh, I see Vice Mayor DeBois and then Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, excuse me, I'm going to be supportive of the measure. I wonder if we're maybe being a little overly prescriptive, um, on E and F. Um, I wonder like on F, if just directing staff to return with a retail support plan. You know, let them come up with, um, what that could, what different degrees of, of opportunity there. You know, uh, it's just struck me, and again, the COVID percentage, I think, I need to learn quite a bit more about that. Uh, so comfortable with staff exploring it. Uh, I think your, your intent though is really to branch out beyond the restaurants. It just that really asked staff to maybe look around at what other cities are doing and come back with some options. Um. So, yeah, so I want it to be broad enough, just not overly prescriptive.
So, so letter E, I think is quite broad. Um, we'll see some options from staff. I agree. I need to learn more as well. Letter F, um, those are just the two things I'm hearing from, from residents and businesses. One is a, a number of vacancies in downtown Calav and, and, and thereabouts. Um, and what I'm hearing from a lot of, of property owners of those vacant, uh, retails. Sites is, uh, expanding the uses, uh, would really help them put a business in that, in that spot.
And she also tended to support operating retail operations.
Sure, I mean, I, I think that could be part of it. So maybe it's like vacancies, expanded permitted uses and currently existing retail. Um, I guess I'm just worried about quote unquote, the ragged edge, but yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Uh, council member Tanaka.
Um, so, uh, let's see. Uh, so I think item F definitely makes a lot of sense. So thank you, thank you for including that. Um, one thing I was wondering if the maker and second would consider is, is actually something, uh, the mayor suggested earlier, which is, um. You know, the idea of maybe, maybe making some of the streets one way, especially one where streets that actually have a large density of. Of restaurants, like for instance, maybe at, you know, Hamilton or City Hall as an example. Um, I realized, you know, the city manager already said it's going to come, it's kind of complicated to make that work. Um, but is it possible for us to, uh, have staff explore that option so that, um, you know, some of the side street restaurants could have perhaps bigger parklets? I mean, I'm looking at the maker and seconder, so I don't know if you guys.
You put it in, sorry, just like a succinct proposal, I.
Yeah, so basically, um, uh, direct staff to explore, uh, the potential of making some streets one way with the high density of, of restaurants.
So, so if you, let me respond to that. Um, as I mentioned, I have been listening to the, they have been once a week, half hour. Chances usually 45 minutes to explore this. And I, this has been done so well so far, Greg. I don't think that we need to add it because they have been exploring that, that potential. Almost weekly.
Okay.
We try that. And I, 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 I'll look at it again, but I'm pretty sure that we really have covered this.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe, I mean, that makes it so specific because I, I, again, the one way is maybe not the best idea, but something where it's more of a. Uh, right now we've been kind of, uh, which is not bad, doing test and learn, kind of experimenting, kind of a bit ad hoc. But perhaps think about the overall traffic pattern a little bit more systematically. Um, so that perhaps there are more restaurants in downtown that could be helped versus, you know, just, just the ones in university. So that's, that's ideas to, to see if, if we look at this a little bit more holistically, is there, is there a possibility of doing that?
I, I wouldn't, I, I'm not enthused about adding that, but, um, perhaps the mayor wants to comment.
Well, I, I'm somewhat persuaded by what the city manager mentioned earlier, that making some of these streets one way is actually really quite. A big endeavor, uh, closing a street to auto traffic and making it safe for pedestrians and bicycles is one thing. Um, but making streets one way is really a heavy lift. So I'm not. Really persuaded this is the thing to do this year.
Okay, um, so let me go to the next one then. Um, next one is something that, uh, one of the members of the public. Has talked about, I think even some people here, which is, can we allocate some of the, let me ask you, and maybe ask that's a city measure for this first. Right now, where are you guys getting the money to do the marketing? And if you actually had more money for the marketing to actually promote the streets? What could you do with it?
Um, let's see, for, I, I will have to ask Ms. uh, Horgan Taylor to respond on the current funding source because I'm, I'm quite frankly, I haven't been tracking it that closely. The, um, uh, I know that it has been largely catch as catch can, and we will need to do a new push. Uh, once we have settled on the new branding, uh, for the upcoming fall season. So clearly there will need to be some expenditure and, uh, so I think we can, um, incorporate the. Wording into the next push. I will, I will note, council member Tanaka, the irony of you being so supportive of marketing expenditure. And I really appreciate that. And, uh, with staff.
Not for utility bills, but for marketing of the street, yes, but not for utility.
Understand. Uh, so with that, uh, Ms. Oregon Taylor, if she's available for us, could speak to, uh, funding and, and what that landscape looks like. Or perhaps not, maybe catching her off guard. Council member, how about we keep going and?
I guess the reason why I wanted to dissuggest this is to see if we could get this in the motion to help. I think we've all talked about this. If we put a little bit more wood behind the arrow, could this program be even more? And we actually allocated money for things like this.
I think, well, certainly speaking on behalf of staff, that we will, um, certainly put together a robust program. And if there's any special appropriation or allocation necessary, um, that we'll be happy to come back to council.
Okay, um, the, the other thing is, um. You know, I think a lot of the, uh, especially the restaurants, they have relatively high utility, but commercial rates a lot higher than residential. but commercial rates a lot higher than residential. And while we have deferrals, you know, a lot of the PPP money is running out, as most of you guys know. And so, and I know some restaurants have been asking about utility forgiveness, utility bill forgiveness. And so I was wondering if the maker and second would be willing to consider some sort of utility forgiveness program that would be funded by the COVID fund that we put together.
So I'm certainly willing to consider it, but I wouldn't consider the source until we get to that COVID.
It doesn't have to be that that's the source, but it's just a way to kind of help these guys out.
Put something in there like, and Councilmember Niss, you should weigh in, you know, consider utility relief program. I'm happy to do that. I don't think we should assign it to the COVID relief fund right now, not knowing everything that can go in there. I don't want us picking and choosing an item each week for that.
There will be an issue, though, with using utility funds for that.
Oh, because of the transfer?
Yes. Um, because, yes, because customers, the bills are based on the cost of serving the customers, and we don't shift those costs between different groups of customers.
Okay, so, but we can consider utility relief in some forms. We're just shifting it to-
General fund.
Okay. Councilmember Niss, will you accept, consider utility relief?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's-
For businesses.
Enough for me. If I knew exactly how we would provide it, are we saying from the general fund?
No, I think there's something for staff to come back and, you know, see what makes sense.
Why don't we just say, direct staff to consider the option of some type of utility relief? I don't think we'll know what it is, but we can take a look at it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And I think a lot of the restaurants in the area would really appreciate that. And let's see, so by the way, the other thing I forgot to mention is to create more of a place of space in terms of, so besides money for marketing, but perhaps something to consider is like, I think, Councilmember Ku talked about like trees or something, right? So that it like may, like recall the trees and boxes, movable trees, I don't know, but, but I think that's the other thing that would help is to help make a program more successful is to make it versus just the, you know, the sawhorses with a sign taped on there, right? Maybe something a little bit, a little bit more that creates a better place of space, I think would also be good. So that's something else I think we could consider. So, you know, so I have a couple other comments here. One of which is, I've heard from a lot of restaurant owners that the minimum wage is really tough, right? And so I do wonder if there's something that we should think about, is some sort of temporary relief, just to allow them to survive. Because I know that that's, it's really hard for them to really hard for them to be able to stay in business. So that's something, maybe I'm not going to make a motion for that, but that's something to think about. The other comment I wanted to make is-
Let me respond to the one about minimum wage. That is, that's an area I've been very concerned with. And the difficulty, as you probably remember, is it's a state law, not a local law. And we, when we discussed this previously, which is now several years ago, that was our biggest problem, was that it was not only at the state level, but it was very strongly supported by the unions. So I think those of us who had realized that was a problem didn't see an avenue at that point that would have been successful.
Well, I'm just giving you feedback that I heard from various restaurant owners.
Yes.
I don't necessarily have, I don't necessarily have a solution for it. One other thing I was thinking about, and I think the mayor's idea is kind of in the right direction in terms of, or his heart certainly is in the right direction on the COVID percentage charge. But the one thing I worry about, especially for restaurants is because a lot of what restaurants make on, especially the waiters, are tips. And what I wonder, and what I worry about is, if we do this, would it just come out in tips? And would they actually get more? So I think, I think the idea of, of, you know, for the city manager to go talk to the various businesses, see if it makes sense, and if whether they actually think they'll actually get more money, I think, is definitely the right move. Okay, last comment here is, I just got a idea from someone who emailed me what to call the street, and I don't know if you guys like it or not, but it's Palo Alto Live Street Program. Just throwing it out there, maybe you guys will come up something better, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you so much, Mayor Fine and Councilmember Niss. I'm particularly excited to see D. Ms. Tanner mentioned it briefly. Nobody was really talked about it very much, but there are a lot of activities, as I said, besides eating and shopping. And I know that members of the community are looking forward to those happening. So that's great. E, definitely need to understand more if this is optional or required in the flow of the funds, et cetera, et cetera. F is very important, you know. Two years ago, I remember talking about how, you know, the shift we're seeing in the city and the state and the country across the, particularly less so across the world, from buying things to buying services. And the pandemic and economic disruption is accelerating that. And so I think F is very important as we think about the fact that people are and will be buying fewer things in person. What will bring people to spaces? What are the services, frankly, that they need? So I'm very excited about F. G is confusing to me. I feel like we already did this. We already asked staff to come back and give us the descriptions. I took a brief moment, but wasn't able to find. I know the Utility Advisories Commission had a list of things with the fixed charges, et cetera. I'm pretty sure staff already came back and told us about the programs that there are. Am I remembering that correctly? City manager is nodding.
We, yes, we did some, we did some reporting on the low income or rate relief programs that are currently in place. I think what the mayor was suggesting was a question of, well, a very specific one around for closed businesses, if they're still being charged, what that amount is, and you know, what options might be there.
Okay, that's very different, though, than targeting specific things to an industry, which is what I think Councilmember Tanaka is expecting, and that's not something I'm necessarily comfortable with. So this feels very broad to me. It assumes that we're going to provide utility relief, so I'd rather understand, you know, the problem before we leap to fix it.
Would, so looking at letter G, I agree, it's pretty broad. It doesn't even mention for whom. Councilmember Tanaka, Councilmember Niss, would it be okay to have like direct staff to return to council with
Yes.
utility relief for closed businesses, something like that, closed retail businesses? And then returning to council. I mean, it's not necessarily something councils stacked on.
Because I think that was the intent.
How about also for restaurants?
Well, that was not my intent. My intent was pretty specific for like retail shops that are closed because of COVID, and yet are still paying that hookup fee.
Great. I can support G. Thank you so much. And I'm just going to close by saying that, you know, staff has really done some extraordinary work here. And I'll echo what the mayor said, that I hope at least some of it has felt, you know, that it's making a difference. It certainly is making a difference, you know, to the people who live here and have the opportunity to do more than stay inside their homes. And it's certainly providing a lifeline for some of our businesses.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Mr. Vice Mayor, I see your hand, but I assume that's from earlier. Okay, thank you. With that, it's ten twenty. We have this motion. Once again, thank you to staff, public commenters, my colleagues. Let's please vote on the motion in front of you. Councilmember Ku.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Sylsith.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to raise my hand and was not able to do it fast enough. But no, just real briefly, I think we got two choices here. This has been, you know, it's been, you know, very helpful to a certain slice of businesses and it saves some businesses. We got two choices, which is, one is to extend it and look, or to keep going and extend, try to extend it to other things like retail and side streets and so forth, which is what we're doing here. The other is to throw it away and start over with something else. And I think this is the right direction. And so that makes sense, I think. As one of the public speakers said, you know, we're probably in this for another year until everybody's vaccinated. So, so yeah, so this should keep going. Yes.
Thank you. Here, here. Councilmember Fine is a yes. Councilmember Niss?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, staff, for your hard work on this one. Our next item for the evening is item number eight, which we had moved up to after six. This is twenty-three fifty-three Webster. Two points of order. Before we get there, one is, does council want to continue tonight at ten twenty-five? I see some of us yawning.
I'd love to.
Yes, nodding mostly. Okay, so we'll continue. We may-
I think we should see how much public comment we have. I mean, this could be very late.
Could be. And we may not get to the EV ordinance. I'm going to suggest we take a quick five-minute break, though. That street item was quite long.
Could I make a suggestion? Could we do what you've done some nights, which is listen to all the public comment, but take up a solution next week?
Let's see where we get. If, you know, we have an hour of public comment and we are all brain dead, absolutely. If we have thirty minutes and we think we've got something quick, let's go for it and get this project off the city's books, whichever way it goes. Okay, let's get back here at ten thirty, please. Thank you, everyone. Okay, I only see three of us. Mr. City Manager, is there any way we couldn't potentially let the staff or the EV item off the meeting? You're on mute.
Thank you. Certainly happy to do that. As it happens, primary staff is Rachel Tanner. But that said, we've got some others that are here in support, so let's go ahead and let them go.
I think so. I doubt we're getting to the EV item tonight.
Mr. Mayor, do you think it makes any sense to just do the EV item and push off the longer item?
I look to you all.
Oh, oh, wait, sorry. I only misheard the first part.
I think I suggested that we just do the EV item and we don't do the Webster Street House.
Good idea.
We're open to motions. If there's something you guys specifically would like to do.
I'll make that motion. Just, I think it's too late to really hear the whole item. We would either hear the public and stop. We could compete, complete the EV item and just, I think, push off the the quasi-intuition item. So I'll make that motion that we hear the EV item tonight.
Okay, I see a bit of a stare from the city attorney, so.
Yeah, so just to note that I believe this is a public hearing that needs to be continued to a date certain, so that it won't need to, another round of neighborhood noticing. Am I correct, Ms. Tanner?
Okay, so Mr. Vice Mayor, you are moving to delay item eight, the public hearing on twenty-three fifty-three Webster, to a date certain. Do you have a date in mind?
Yes, next to- Yes, next week.
Can the clerk remind us what's on next week?
In the beginning of the meeting, you have the two hours for the auditor. And then we have, let me look at the agenda.
Then we've got the carbon neutral and ADUs. Probably going to be another night similar to this that goes till 11:30 or so. Okay. So the vice mayor's made a motion to move item eight, 2353 Webster Street, to next week to continue a public hearing. Is there a second for that?
A second.
Okay, seconded by council member Niss. Would anybody like to speak to this? Okay, so let me just get my voting card ready. Okay, so moving 2353 Webster, councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac.
No.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, you broke up there for a moment?
That was a yes.
All vote no. Councilmember Niss?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I, we have now moved item number eight, 2353 Webster, to next week. On behalf of the council, I just apologize to all of you who have stayed on this call for so long, to the applicant and appellate as well for the delay. I know you were all hoping to get to this, and we will get to it next week and notify you as soon as we can about the timing for that item.
Mayor Fine?
Yes.
And because it's being continued from this week, it should be the first item on action next week.
All right, we'll do that around 7:30 or so next week. Okay, Ms. Tanner, EV charging, you are the woman of the show tonight. If you could help explain to us this EVSE installation and compliance with some accessibility laws.
That's indeed. So is my screen sharing?
You are in presentation mode or presenter mood.
Set good now?
Perfect.
Excellent, thank you. And I want to know, we've got Sam Gutierrez here, who has just done a fantastic job shepherding this project really through. He's one of our current planners and really this is his extension into more policy planning. Kind of addressing problems that he has to deal with as a current planner, things that wouldn't fit into the, the spaces that people had. And especially when it comes to EV charger, something that we really want to see proliferate here in Palo Alto. And so thinking through, how do we help those folks, particularly those who have existing parking facilities, accommodate electric vehicle charging? And of course, as you know, with planning, once you start pulling one thread, you start to pull out some other issues. And so he was able to work and kind of unwind that. So we have Sam, who's with us, who will be available for questions. So with that, I will briefly go through the presentation. It's relatively straightforward, but of course, happy to answer any questions that the council has. So we'll review just the proposed code updates, the timeline and summary of the seven changes that are proposed and that are in the recommendation. So first is that we want to reduce the standard vehicle parking stall dimensions to allow installation of EV supply equipment, which is both the charger itself, but also the other equipment that's related to electric vehicle charging. We want to reestablish the opportunity for folks to have bike parking replace required vehicle parking, which was previously in the code but had been removed. We want to establish language that governs motorcycle parking and defines that. Provide local standards for lot restriping and maintenance, bring local code language in compliance with the state requirements, and particularly with the ADA, Americans with Disability Act. Enable parking retrofits for accessible parking and EVSE utility equipment and adjust codes associated with the proposed changes to provide internal consistency and clarity within our code. So in terms of timeline, this was first explored in March of 2019, including discussions with the PTC. And then was percolating a lot last year. In this January, we went back to the PTC with some draft code changes and got feedback at a study session and then brought those proposed changes to the PTC in May 2020. And then now we're here before you with the proposed changes. So heading into the first item, we have reduction in stall size for electric vehicle supply equipment. So you can see here on the diagram that's on the right, the proposal is to allow the electric vehicle charging equipment to encroach into the parking space. And so you can see, hopefully you can see my cursor, this lightning bolt chargers here. And it's encroaching a little bit into each of these four spaces. Previously, we had suggested to either adjust the lot size or the, the parking stall size, or possibly even have to remove a parking stall in order to have an area that is accommodating the equipment. But if the equipment is small enough, it can actually encroach into the parking space while still leaving an area where a vehicle could park. Perhaps every size of vehicle can't park there, but most vehicles could still be able to use that standard parking space. And so this would allow for more EVSE equipment without decreasing the overall amount of parking spaces provided in a parking lot. And again, this is looking at lots that are retrofitting, that are existing lots for existing buildings, where the building really isn't changing its use or needing to do major renovations. And so they're trying to add EV chargers to their existing parking spaces. Number two is the bike parking substitution for car space. So this would allow more bicycle parking. It would allow up to eight short term or four long term bicycle parking spaces to replace one car parking space. And the substitution would be for those bike spaces that are above and beyond the required bicycle parking. The maximum substitution is two parking spaces or 10% of existing spaces. And so this would allow those places that maybe they get a lot of bike traffic, but they just cannot fit more bike parking in their parking lots or on their property or, you know, in right of way or other places where bike parking might typically go. And so this is allowing to encourage our mode shift to, you know, walking and biking and enhancing that opportunity. Three is motorcycle parking. Currently, our code doesn't define what motorcycle parking is. And so by establishing what motorcycle parking is and how it can be used, parking space, parking lots, or even garages could use kind of leftover space, if you will. So you can see in this image up in the upper right, how a motorcycle is parked in space that couldn't really accommodate a car because it's not the size needed for a standard parking space versus this image here, where one motorcycle is taking up an entire parking space. These spaces would not count towards their required vehicle parking, but they could, again, allow more spaces to be used for motorcycles so that they're not taking up an existing vehicle parking space. Number four is regards to lot restriping and maintenance. Often what can happen when someone is trying to restrike their parking lot or do some maintenance, they may need to adjust their parking stalls to the current code standards of the dimensions of the parking space. They may need to add in tree canopy or other things. They may need to add in a trash enclosure if they're going from one use that, you know, let's say it's a retail shop, they're going to a restaurant, and so they need a larger trash bin. And so they need to have a larger trash enclosure to have that trash. But there's all kinds of things that once you start restriping existing parking lot, you may need to add and reconfigure your parking lot. And that can actually cause the need for you to adjust the number of parking spaces that are in that, in that parking lot. And so this would allow for minor adjustments and reductions in the number of parking stalls that are in a parking lot. But again, to be able to accommodate the multiple things that may need to be upgraded there. How this kind of relates to EV charging is you can imagine that there might be a need to, you know, do all the things at once. You're adding EV chargers. So maybe you're adding a transformer. You also need to add your trash enclosure. You're adding some landscaping. You're dealing with stormwater. And so this would allow for a director's adjustment to have a case by case review of those projects and to make some of those minor adjustments and still have the facility and the use be compliant with the code for that, that use that's attached to that parking lot. Number five is state law compliance for accessible parking and EVSE. And so this would update our state law for, our, our local laws for consistency with state law. A couple of them that are an AV 1100. And so one of those laws says that an EVSE or an EVSE-ready parking space counts as a standard parking space. This is already the practice in Palo Alto, but it became a state law so that every city, you can't, some cities were saying, oh, that's the EV parking space. It doesn't count towards your required parking because it's for an electric vehicle. We didn't have that problem, but we'll make sure our code is consistent. And also for accessible spaces, an accessible, this is a table, it's an ADA accessible parking space would count for, that is EVSE or EVSE-ready, would count twice towards the parking requirements. And so you might think, how does that work? It's counting twice. So you can imagine you have an ADA space that is a man accessible space. And so you have the space for the vehicle and then you have the area that's next to the vehicle to open the door and allow the user of the band to exit that ADA parking space. And so it really dimensionally takes up about two parking spaces. And so by counting that as, instead of saying that's one space, you know, let's say someone needs 10 parking spaces. They've got to add an ADA space because it's required. Well, now suddenly they only have nine spaces. If we count that ADA space as two parking spaces, still, they still have their 10 spaces. So it's a practice that we actually had engaged here, but we really hadn't actually codified it. And so this helps us be compliant with state law and have a good practice so that we can be consistent with how we count our ADA spaces and helping for local businesses and others to become compliant with accessibility requirements. Number six, local code compliance with accessible requirements and retrofitting EVSE. So again, very similar to the related item. If there are accessible parking upgrades, it formalizes the required accessible parking upgrades and minor parking space loss, again, allowed in order to have the accessibility and to comply with the ADA, which we need to do as federal law. And allows for mining, minor parking stall loss for EVSE utilities equipment. So again, you can see in the lower right picture here, this is the transformer type of equipment that you might need or other type of larger utilities equipment related to the EV charger. It isn't just the charging station that we talked about, number one, that might be in the parking stall, but other equipment. And so figuring out where that could be located on site, it may not be able to be in an area that's unused. And so this again gives the flexibility to be able to adapt to that. Again, we try to all costs to maintain parking, but this gives flexibility for those, again, existing spaces that are being retrofitted. And lastly, code cleanup. As you can imagine, with the proposed changes, we want to make sure we have internal consistency within our code that we are creating our definitions and that we are updating the language so that it can apply to the downtown as well. And it provides one set of code regulations regarding the downtown. There was actually kind of an area where the code for downtown was in two places. And it was essentially the same, but that was confusing, depending on what part of the code a user might be reading. They may catch it or not catch it. And so we want to just bring that into one place, say it well once, and have that be unified. And again, it ensures consistency between different parts of our municipal code regarding these regulations. So our recommendation is to adopt the proposed ordinance, which is attachment A, amending title 18, chapters 18.52 and 18.54 of the Palo Alto Municipal Code. And then I don't know if she's still here, but we did also have Doria Suma, a planning commissioner, who was here on the Zoom, if you have any questions for the planning commission. And that is the end of the presentation.
Great. Thank you both so much for your work on this and for the detailed presentation. Let's go to members of the public who may wish to speak on this.
Any members of the public that wish to speak to this item, please raise your hand or dial star nine on your phone. Mayor Fine, there's no raised hand, so the public hearing opens and closes at 10:46 PM.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Minor, and thank you, Commissioner Suma, for joining us and sticking with us this late. So let's please return to council. I'm going to open it up, given the hour of comments, questions, and motions. Probably great to start with comments and questions, but if you want to make a motion, go for it. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, thanks very much. So just one question. We're talking about parking lots here. So is, does this cover parking lots in apartment buildings?
Yes, it's a good cover. It covers existing parking lots, but it should include residences.
So my understanding of this issue is if, if you own an apartment building and it's got an apartment and it's got parking lot, up until now, if you wanted to put EV chargers in for the parking spaces, you would have to actually lose some parking spaces in order to do that. And this makes you not have to do that. Is that correct?
Yeah, can I answer that, Sam?
Sure, sure, absolutely. So the issues that we encountered with this were actually a combination of potentially losing parking space if they had a parking space to lose, because the code did not allow you to lose your minimum required. So if they were at the minimum required, it was just, you couldn't do it unless you had some type of area, in particular to your example for multifamily, like if they had an underground garage. There's often a support post somewhere, a support pillar, a concrete pillar in that garage. And that actually had a wider area where then they could actually put an EV charger, because the support pillar itself for the garage acted as a collision protection as well. But of course, that wasn't every parking stall. That would be, you know, every fifth or 10th stall, depending on the design. So it was very problematic. It would limit them to essentially putting a wall outlet where then they could plug in the low voltage charger to their EV vehicle, which of course, wouldn't necessarily give them a full charge in a, you know, short amount of time. Where our code updates here allow for a level two or a level three charger, which are more of the rapid, high energy chargers to more quickly and efficiently charge an electric vehicle to 50 or 100%.
Right, which is what you really need. Okay.
Correct.
So, yeah, so thanks very much. Thanks to Seth for, for doing the work and bringing this forward. I think this is one of a number of steps that we have to, to, to get through, you know, if we're going to make it possible to do large scale deployment of EV chargers in multi-unit buildings, which is what our 40% of Palo Alto lives. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Phil Seth. I have two quick questions, but then please hit your hands if you, any you'd like to make. One, do our EV charging, do we, we have any control or interest in advertising on some of these EV charging devices? I've seen a number of companies that have, you know, like a little screen and it plays an ad for you and steals 30 seconds of your life. Do we have any interest in that? Was there any look at that? I'm just wondering.
Well, I, I suppose primarily these, these regulations would be addressing the private installation of a charger. I suppose if a business wanted to have, or owner installer of a charger wanted an ad to play on it, I imagine that would be allowed if it's on private property. I'm not really sure how that would be governed. But if you're speaking of public chargers and public property, I might have to look more into what we are thinking of as a city in terms of city-sponsored chargers.
I'm not, I don't have a position on it. I mean, I think in a private lot, you know, you should probably be able to do what you want in a public facility. We may have a different interest there, but just a question. And then the other one is, I noticed in the report, long versus short term bike parking. I didn't even know we made that distinction. And can you explain it to me?
Yeah, great. Sam, do you want to answer that question?
Sure. So short term parking are what you see typically near the entrances of buildings, businesses. You know, those are the bike racks, if you will, that you see spread around downtown. They could be the inverted U or the lightning bolt racks, which are common all over Stanford University, for example. So that's short term that you would kind of have for a retail type business. You know, you're not staying at a location for hours on end like you would if you worked there. So the long term parking for bicycles is the bicycle lockers. And that would be able to fit your bicycle plus your helmet and other gear. You know, we see them at the Caltrain Station and usually behind businesses where the employee entrances, because those are more geared towards workers who are going to be at a, you know, their job for eight, 10 hours or whatever it may be. And they're not going to see their bicycle, so they want to secure space to lock up their bicycle while they work and not worry about it, whereas the short term, you're going to get back to it or it's going to be within, you know, your, your eyesight as you visit whatever retailer or restaurant.
Okay, thank you. Totally explains my questions. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just being sure, but muted. I had kind of the same question that Eric started with, like, what does this apply to? So it applies to all private lots. Does it also apply to public lots? Both?
Yes, it would apply to, to public lots. So let's say we needed to install some chargers at, you know, a community facility of some kind that had associated parking requirement or where we needed to fit it into those stalls and we could have that 18 inches of space to put that charging equipment in that parking space without having to say, oh, this isn't a parking space, you know, anymore.
Right. And then there, there are a couple of clauses appears several places about, talks about substitution of spots, either for bicycle parking or for accessibility. of spots, either for bicycle parking or for accessibility. So if a, if a building is required to have a certain number of parking spots, and then they convert a bunch of spots to other uses, how do we track that?
So part of what we have built in, I believe, and Mr. Gutierrez can correct me if I'm wrong, is some upper bounds. So it isn't necessarily that it can just be, you know, the entire parking lot is changed over. So we did want to kind of create the situation where there are some limitations so that if there is some reduction in parking, I mean, it wouldn't be so great that now we've, you know, really significantly parking impacted the surrounding, the surrounding uses. But all of these have to be approved. Folks aren't just, you know, just doing it. They're coming in, applying.
But are we, are we tracking, like, we approve a hotel and we say you have to have so many parking spots, and then they can convert, you know, 10% of them to bike spots? I'm just wondering, like, we come back to that building years later, and we say, you don't have enough parking. You know, are we, how, how we do, how do we track all this?
Yeah, we would track that in our SLA platform, where we track the building's history and the permitting and what is allowed and what has been permitted. So, you know, this approval would be in that, that history of, you know, how many spaces did it need, how many were reduced, you know, so on and so forth.
And, I mean, this would be pretty ministerial, right? If somebody wants to convert a spot, we're not going to like, see if they're overflowing with other cars or anything. We're just going to approve it.
Our ministerial approvals for the most part, or director's decisions in some cases, but we certainly, you know, sometimes, some of them might require a site visit by the planner to go out and look and really understand, you know, what is happening. And that's really, if you have a lot that has a combination of things going on where they're restriping and they're adding EV and they're doing multiple things where we really need to get a sense of what's going on at the site.
But the assumption is the building owner kind of knows what's best for their building, right? I mean, if they, I guess, I guess another thing I was just thinking about, if, if a particular tenant has a lot of bicyclists, they convert them over, and then the occupancy changes, can, can they just be restripped? Do they have to come back to the city?
They could, the, the new owner or new tenant could, could, you know, remove the bike parking and have that become vehicle parking again, certainly.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilmember Tanaka.
So two quick questions here. So first one, is there anything in the provisions around trying to, you know, I know you guys are putting provisions for electric cars, but are there any provisions for like electric bikes, scooters, electric motorcycles? They're all, I mean, electric bikes especially is taking off like a rocket. I mean, a lot of people getting them. In fact, I'm thinking about getting an electric bike too. So is there anything in the provisions around that? And so what are they?
We don't have any provisions right now that are regarding charging stations for electric bikes or electric skateboards. Certainly something that if, you know, there are folks who are interested, we could, you know, work with businesses to figure out how that would look, and if we needed a regulatory solution to that, you could bring that forward.
Well, I don't think you have to worry about skateboards, but I was thinking more like electric bikes, because some of them are pretty heavy and it's hard to move it indoor. But I mean, that and also, electric motorcycles are also starting to take off as well. And so, and so if, if you're going to put the infrastructure in for electric cars, why, and why don't do it for the bikes where we're at it, right?
Yeah, that's a great suggestion, and particularly for employers who have secure bike parking perhaps indoors that their folks are taking their bikes, it'd be a great opportunity for the electric bike charging.
The second thing is, is, like, I've, I've gotten three bikes stolen here in our city, and you know, bike, you know, you're next door and bike theft stolen, like one of those things. Now, of course, a lot of them are residential, a lot of them are you know, Caltrain stations and other places, but is there anything that we could do to try to improve bike, right, bike theft and that issue and how to, how to solve it?
Not, other than my experience, like through you lots, other than, than that, I'm not sure if there's a longer term or larger strategy to decrease bike theft here in Palo Alto. I'd have to ask our police department about that.
Okay, I, I noticed that the police chief is on, I don't know if you could say anything about that, but I, I know this is like, we're relatively safe city, but there's a lot of bike theft, and it really sucks. I mean, I think that's got a bike stolen. It's just terrible. Maybe he's not there. Okay, don't worry about that. That's fine. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Koo.
Thank you. So as you were presenting, Rachel, I was also noticing that certain parking spots is, we're going to be losing towards the equipment itself. Like you said, that there was that big electric component. And then also some parking spots are going to be used for bicycle parking. So do you know approximately for each of the garages here in downtown and California Avenue, would we be losing spots on? Or, I mean, do you have those figures so that at least we can anticipate what is going to be going towards something else and no longer a parking space?
When you say in downtown and elsewhere, are you referring to the public parking garages?
Yes, part, public, the cities.
I don't know that we have any plans, and I'm not aware of any plans from Public Works or Office of Transportation to, to apply our city-owned facilities. And certainly, I think part of, of the idea is that, once you start combining the different layers, then you really need to come in for a director's adjustment so that we can look at the totality of things. We certainly don't want someone saying, oh, I need this charger, and then now I'm adding bike. We would like people to do it holistically, right? And think about their parking lot so we can really understand what they're planning. And so we could understand something like, well, what's the total loss of parking? And is there a different way to configure it that, you know, doesn't lose any parking? That would be our preference.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you so much, Mayor Fine. I echo Councilmember Phil Seth's comments about the important intent of this. I thank the staff for being so comprehensive in the list of updates and for providing the transcript of the PTC. I found it very helpful, and I think they covered some of the questions that that people had. And if the mayor's open to it, I'm happy to move approval of the staff recommendation.
Great, thank you. So there's a motion to approve the staff recommendation by Councilmember Cormac. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Phil Seth. Councilmember Cormac.
I don't need to speak further.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Me neither. It's a good block and tackle staff work.
Yep, well said. Vice Mayor DuBois, I still see your hand up.
All right, not going to, not going to take it down.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands, I'm going to suggest we vote on the motion. I think since Councilmember Koo led us last time, so now the Councilmember Tanaka, and apologize, apologies if I've mixed that up. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss. You're on mute, I believe.
Yes.
Thank you. And Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thanks, staff, for the, the great presentation, and thank you, my colleagues, for the comments. So with that, we're done with our action calendar. Item number eight has been moved to next week. Councilmember, questions, comments, and announcements? Hit your hands. Okay, with that, I believe we can adjourn our meeting at 11:02. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.